Let's do it. I want to convene a special meeting here at the boardroom, and at this time, I want to turn it over to our vice chair.
If you would, please join me on the Pledge of Allegiance and wherever God willing, we'd bless us. We greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most glorious and almighty God, we truly thank you for this day. And Lord God, as Sampson County moves forward, we thank you that you give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding. Thank you for the working together. And then, Lord, thank you for the people. Oh, Lord, we know that we can only please one, and that's you. So give us the strength, and then bless each leader, and bless us to have ears and eyes to hear what direction you would have us to do. Sampson County is what we love, so let us show that love by working together in unity. Bless us this day, Lord, in all that is done, all that is said, that we give you the glory and the honor, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you all. Welcome everyone out this morning. And just so you know, we're going to leave y'all here right now in just a second to go do some personnel business. And so I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Everyone's in favor? We're now in closed session for personnel reasons. I will take a motion to bring us out of closed session.
So moved.
Second.
And second. All in favor? Motion carries. We're now out of closed session back in regular. I will now ask to have the agenda approved that I just abruptly went by, which is my fault.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. All right. Now, going into what we addressed in closed session, I will now entertain a motion for what we told them.
I make a motion this morning, Chairman, that we hired a contract of Mr. Allen Van for the position of Sampson County manager with a starting date of July 2nd, 2025.
Have a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. You're done. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We go into brief recess before.
Oh, you want to wait a minute?
What do you do? Mr. Chairman, would you please sign?
Yes, I will. I will be honored to sign. I knew it had to be a certain color. Do your thing.
Mr. Chairman, as soon as the clerk attests, the contract will be official. Mr. Van will get a copy, and the commissioners will have a copy. We also have a copy available for the news media, and that makes it official.
Would you like to wait before we go into recess to do all that, or?
You're okay right now, sir. As long as you sign.
A motion to take a recess to introduce to our staff.
Okay. Have a second.
Second.
Now, have I'm in favor? All right. We're at recess.
Congratulations, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. We are back out of recess and back to business.
Our auditors have not arrived yet, so with your permission, if the board would consider going into your budget amendments, Ms. Burton has some budget amendments to share with the board. Just because we're wrapping up the end of the year and things are coming in, so before you have your next board meeting, we would like to just put some things before you.
That's fine. We'll move forward to item three.
Okay. I did email these. I'm not sure if you all have your laptops or anything with your I guess. This morning, the budget amendments mostly deal with additional funding that's come in before the end of the fiscal year that we have to budget in order to be able to use it. There is $11,875 coming from the State Department, Department of Public Safety for some of our JCPC programs. There is the Homeland Security Grant that elections spoke with you about meeting on Monday. That money's got to be budgeted so that she can get the equipment. There is $7,600 worth of donations to the library for Monarch Bioenergy. That needs to be budgeted. There is a Choosing Home Grant for the Aging Department for repairs and service to senior homes, an amount of $12,527 that needs to be budgeted. There is a grant for $7,500, another $7,500 for Monarch Bioenergy that goes to the Recreation Department. That needs to be budgeted. There's $25,000 in additional tax revenue for the supplemental school tax that needs to be budgeted. There is a budget amendment from Transportation where they have additional revenues that came in under two of their programs, ed-tap rider fees and rural grant rider fees. They need to budget those additional revenues to gas, oil, and tires and part-time salaries. And then the final one is a budget amendment for Sampson Community College. We need to pull prior year allocations for capital outlay forward so that they can use it to spend on a project that they haven't planned on. And I'll let y'all look at those, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
For the college, that's an increase?
That is money that had been set aside in capital outlay for the community college in previous years. When they don't use that, it builds up, and so they're requesting that money to work on the project that they're doing right now.
Oh, that new building they're doing?
How much was that? What's the amount?
The amount is $593,762.
And that's basically money that they can build up in time, so it's their money anyway. All we're doing is saying, here it is, get it.
All right. At this time, we have any more questions for Ms. Burton?
Make a motion. We approve the budget amendments.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, by the way, motion so carries. Thank you very much for that presentation, and we'll move that forward. I guess we're still moving pretty quick into the auditor room area.
One thing I could do, Mr. Chairman, normally before the board begins a budget workshop, I could talk a little bit about what the day is at the point, and so I could cover that. I believe the auditor will be here about 10:00 AM, so we could go ahead and get that out of the way. Also, we do have the sheriff's office is here, but that might take a little while, and I don't know if you want to start that before the auditor gets over or not. So if I could, with your permission, members of the board, I'll just kind of talk about the day and how this will go.
Okay. That's good.
So we have a schedule that's before you, and we have different departments that are coming in over the next three days. The department heads have been told to come with something called new cover sheets. So in your budget book, at the start of each department originally, the departments had new cover sheets, and it would say how much is, how many programs are mandated versus discretionary. It talked a little bit about the departments and the challenges, but all of that was based on their very initial budget requests. It wasn't how we ended up after four rounds of cuts. So especially the large departments are going to come with additional information. So as they come in, departments, they understand that the board may have questions of the departments. In fact, I tried to encourage the department heads, since they had done zero-based budgeting, to be prepared for a number of different questions, such as what do you plan to accomplish this year? If the board has a specific question about something in the proposed budget, biggest problems you would have this year, given the proposed budget, how much more, if any, could be cut from the budget? Are your services mandated? If they're not mandated, why should we continue? What's the impact if we cut them? How many people are you serving? Is it possible to cut any more employees? What about overtime? Are you having difficulty hiring employees? What classes of employees are you having difficulty hiring? And do we have opportunities that we need to prepare for? So you have a book full of numbers, but it's been a long time since the board has sat down face-to-face with department heads and actually gotten into the meat of what might be happening or the challenges that are faced in the department. And it's a fair question, given the current financial condition of the county, what else can be done? What else can you do? What's the impact of that? That sort of thing. So all of those are typical questions. They have copies of their final budget as well, so they have the same thing that's in your book. They all have a copy of the budget message. They've gotten a budget presentation. In fact, not only did the department heads get the budget presentation, because many of them were at the last board meeting, but I held two employee-only town hall meetings. In the first one, there were 39 employees. In the second one, there were 34 employees. And that was before we had town hall meetings out in the public that some of the commissioners attended. So those employees have a better understanding of what's happening with the county, and hopefully they are spreading the message inside county government about some of the challenges that are being faced this year. So normally what would happen is, at least this is what happened in the past, is the department head would come forward. We've left several seats here and can bring up more for the department heads, and the department heads would come forward, and you just have a conversation. It is less formal. After this morning's announcement and the requisite picture-taking, for the rest of this time, I encourage you to please dress comfortably. You do not have to wear a tie and a coat. Just be comfortable. We will have lunches. I think we have subs. We're going to share a sub tray today that's been brought in, because you only have about 30 minutes for lunch. So we've got from 12:00 to 12:30 is lunch today. Veteran Services is coming about 12:30. So for the benefit of the audience, 9:00 AM audit presentation, well, that was switched. So we have the closed session, and then the audit presentation in a few minutes. Then Sheriff's Office and Detention, Information Technology. We have a lunch. Veteran Services, DSS, and the Health Department, followed by Senior Services and Recreation, and then at the end of the day, a recap. So we've got a couple of staff people who are in the room, and they're here to help and also to record. So we have Melissa, Ms. Burton, our finance officer. She has her computer up, and she'll have, as we talk about each department, a copy of the actual live budget on her computer. So if the commissioners or if the department head identify a change that needs to be made, then we can make that change live, and she would be able to track that. In addition, if the board has another decision that they make, I've asked Ms. Dillman, our HR director, separate from Melissa, because I really want Melissa just to focus on numbers and the budget lines, but I would like another person, who would be Nancy, to please focus on any other decisions that the board makes in the course of a day. So if you decide to do anything different, or something new, or have a question that we need to follow up on, Nancy will be taking a live journal of that. And of course, our clerk, Ms. Fulton, new name bash too, our clerk, Ms. Fulton, will be taking the actual minutes of the day. At 4:00 or as soon thereafter as we can, at the end of the day, basically, when you've done everything else, at the end of the day, we would have a daily recap. So that daily recap, I would just ask Melissa and Nancy to go back over with you any changes that you've made in the day to the budget. And then our job between now and, you know, daily, is any changes that you make, we need to make those changes real time in the budget and make sure that we capture all of that. In the end, after you finish however many days it is of budget workshops, we will produce a new budget ordinance based on the changes that the county commissioners have done. And that new budget ordinance is actually what you would vote on in the end, that is the budget. So you would adopt a budget ordinance and the associated fee schedule, rate and fee schedule. And, you know, those kinds of motions would be happening only after your public hearing. So your public hearing is this coming Monday evening at 6:00 PM. After the public hearing, the budget is available to be voted upon. You can, after that public hearing, you could immediately take a vote on the budget, or you could choose to have another budget workshop. I mean, you can keep on going. Ideally, you would absolutely stop before July 1. And so we need to have a point at which we're able to produce a budget ordinance and the associated rate and fee schedule, and then you'd be able to vote on that. So already, I can tell you, there have been some minor changes. The budget, when it's under production, we always find a few things, and some things are to the good, so we do have a few items that are costing a little bit more, but Melissa's tracking those. And we also have some savings that we found, just because, you know, something may have been keyed twice or something like that. So so far, anything that we've found that cost more has been offset by something we found, like there's supposed to be a truck that was cut from the building inspection budget, by the way, as an example. Well, we meant to cut it. It didn't get cut. We found it, and we cut it. Well, that's $35,000. Well, then we found we needed to pay more federal taxes on some employees in Board of Elections. So we found that, and that's going to cost some money, but it's covered by the truck that we found that we cut. So right now, there's just tiny little fluctuations, but everything is still balanced out. If we have larger decisions made, then you would have a choice. So if you have larger decisions made, and it lowers the budget, then no problem. If you have larger decisions made, say you want hypothetically, say that you want to fund Sampson Community College another $500,000 hypothetically. Okay? Sampson County, Sampson Community College needs $500,000 more dollars. What do you do? Then you only have a few choices. So you can either go into this budget and find $500,000 in cuts. You can go into fund balance for $500,000, or you could raise taxes, property taxes, for $500,000. So on the big scale, that will require big expenditure cut or revenue decisions. On the small scale, the things that are just errors, so far, just errors or typos or double keys, we've been able to find all that. So let me pause. Any questions about the process or anything like that? Okay, well, I talked as long as I could, hoping that the auditor would come to the back door while I was doing that. But I'm sure they'll be here soon. It's 9:50 AM.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as a point of personal privilege, since we've already officially hired the next permanent manager, I would like to take the opportunity to publicly thank Mr. Hudson for his work as intern and the job that he's done for us and is continuing to do for us, and his promise of having a smooth handoff in the transition to Mr. Van's. The citizens of Sampson County should be grateful for what Mr. Hudson has done for the county.
I agree.
And I know the board feels the same way. And while we're waiting, I mean, if we could, we'd go ahead and move into the sheriff's presentation. He can cover one department and maybe the detention department, and then if the auditor shows up and the sheriff can finish the detention presentation, then we'll do the audit, and then he can go back to the sheriff's department.
Chair? I figured you would get Nancy over there.
Mr. Chairman.
Where you want us to sit? Anywhere here, sir.
Hold on one. Yes, ma'am.
Can I say something? Mr. Chair, bring me to the point. I had my speech written and in my head what I was going to say, but he didn't say everything that I was going to say. He said his part. I just want to, on behalf of commissioners and on behalf of leaders, feel the same way I do. We just want to thank Mr. Hudson at this time for helping us move forward, because when he came in, we didn't know which way we was going to go, but he led us in the right direction, and I'm just so glad of that. And he didn't do it by himself. We got all these county employees that helped him, probably spent sleepless nights worrying about what they were going to do the next day, because, I mean, who could create a boot like that? Who could do that? But somebody that's smart and intelligent and knew it already. So I just want to thank him for leading that force for us here in Sampson County, and it's going to make us want to do a better job. You know, if we're in the past, we may not have done the best that we could, but now it's letting us know that as board members and elected officials that we need to do the best that we can. And I thank everybody. Everybody knows who you were that worked hard to get all this. And I'm happy, glad, so we can move forward. I just want us to move forward because we deserve that. Here in Sampson County, we deserve to move forward, and I'm just glad that we have that opportunity now. Thank you, everybody, for whatever part you plead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move forward with the presentation, starting with the sheriff's office in detention. So roll, boys.
Where were you?
I knew that was covered.
We, as you know, we do it all, the expected and the unexpected. And as recent as yesterday morning, you said that we hadn't any specific events that could take place here at the office. Who would have ever thought or imagined that an individual would show up in the parking lot, step out of his automobile with a long gun, AR-15? This stuff happens, and I don't know that we can ever be prepared enough to deal with every single thing at the moment. Of course, everything comes all of a sudden, and we always have to expect the unexpected.
That's right.
We, of course, work 24/7, as I'm sure Mr. Hudson has for the last five and a half months, you know, five and a half months. And let me ditto, later what you said, that man truly has worked, without question, and I'm appreciative of that. He took it to do a job. He did a job and has completed the job, and certainly is deserving and very much, all of us should give all due consideration and thought to what all he has put into this, because I'm sure that he, like, you know, most county managers, were confronted with the kind of obstacles and issues that he had to deal with this six months, and I appreciate it, yes, I really do. And it was a pleasure to go to a meeting that took place on Monday night, I think it was Monday night, in Newton Road, and him represent this county, particularly you as a board, you know, as he did that night. That's indicative of all of us folks, okay? We all represent each other, no matter what position, being elected, appointed, or whatever. We represent this county, be it good or bad. And we want everybody to be proud and thankful for what we do, the decisions that we make, and the efforts that we put into everything. It's so important. We're ambassadors anywhere we go in this state, not just here, but everywhere else. And that's looked at, that viewed, and it be good or bad, that perception and attitude goes a long ways. But anyway, we're here to present the thank you, Jeff, for all that you've done. What you want us, any specific questions, whatever you may have in mind, if you want to know the exact numbers of employees that we have.
Yes, yes.
Different divisions that we have, I'm happy to go through each of those with you. As I said earlier, you know, we're 24/7, holidays, you name it, even though we're going to propose some additional holidays, Jeff, or days off, you know, we'll still be working. We don't stop. We didn't stop during COVID. We had no choice. We had to keep operating. But as far as the personnel in the agency, of course, there's me, the sheriff, then I have 98 sworn deputies. Forty-eight of those 98 are detention staff, and we have five civilian clerical staff. We're broken up into multiple divisions personnel-wise. We have our patrol division that has a total of 35 deputies. Twenty-eight are assigned to four rotating patrol squads. Those four squads are broken up geographically in the county. Some areas are much larger than others based on population and the number of folks that are in those areas. Of course, 24/7, as I said earlier, we do have four deputies that are funded by the Town of Roseboro contract that we have with them. So that's not county dollars. That's funding coming from another municipality. We established that contract in 2014, and they reimbursed the county for everything, the equipment, vehicles, fringe benefits, and that contract, of course, is negotiated by the county and the Town of Roseboro. Most patrol shifts will have six to seven patrol deputies at all times. These are 12-hour shifts from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night, then 7:00 at night to 7:00 in the morning. We have five deputies that are assigned to the criminal interdiction team, and they're specifically trained to target, you know, high-level criminal activity in certain areas. If we have a lot of break-ins in certain areas, then, of course, we can send them there to patrol in those communities and townships, try to pick up information, be surprised and check for it. One information will be passed along to those individuals, or additional information that you need to keep an eye on, particular aisles or that particular area, potentially where drug activity and all may be going on. And then as it relates to patrol, we have one captain and one lieutenant who oversees the entire division. Then we have our criminal investigation. These are our detectives who handle felonies, the homicides, the sexual assaults, the burglaries, fraud, and juvenile crime, which is a big issue today.
How many detectives?
Eleven.
Eleven detectives.
And of course, led, we have a captain and a lieutenant.
Including eleven.
Huh?
It's in that eleven.
In that eleven, yeah.
You don't, no.
Okay. Then we have the special investigations, which is the narcotics division. We have 10 investigators there. They do all the undercover drug operations, drug buys. They assist federal drug task force. We have TFOs with ATF, US Postal Service, DEA. I now have one with the FBI that deals with evidence, that kind of stuff. Is there any other federal agencies?
Homeland Security.
Homeland Security. So we, you know, we're blessed in this county to have the assistance and the help of all federal agencies and the law enforcement arena. Dare say only a few counties in this state have that, particularly one of our size, probably a rarity. But we're blessed to have their help in just about anything. If I ask them to help, they'll help us. But we're blessed to have their help in just about anything. If I ask them to help, they'll help us. Um, and they were very instrumental, um, in helping us make the arrest of the five individuals that were murdered on Golden Highway back in October of '23. And just as recent as, um, three weeks ago, um, we had their dive team down, um, and located parts of the weapon and everything that was used in that homicide. So you would be impressed with how that group works, really impressed. Um, as far as, um, support staff, um, we have the civil division that's made up, um, with seven deputies. They handle civil process, all civil papers, attorneys that file, you know, whatever. Um, lawsuits, um, child support, custody evictions, um, domestic violence, and all civil processes for clown. Um, we have to do all civil work for the whole county. Um, even though Clinton has their, their municipal department, New Grove has theirs. We are responsible for serving all civil processes, and there's a bunch of those. Um, animal patrol, I have three deputies there. I took control, took the responsibility of animal patrol in 2010. Those three individuals were once under the animal shelter, um, but I agreed to, to take that program on, um, but we were able to certify them dual. So they're not only, you know, certified, um, as it relates to animal control issues, but they're also certified law enforcement. So they have the same powers, you know, so we use them for a dual purpose. Um, court security, we have eight deputies that, um, provide that security, as well as two individuals that are contracted, um, that man the scanner at the big courthouse. Um, we have three, three separate courtrooms, which creates a, um, a lot of difficulty at times, um, because it's, and that's one of the, part of the reason why we have so many, um, security personnel, um, to, to protect those individuals in the courtrooms. Um, they're spread out over three locations. That's unfortunate, but it is. Um, school resource officers. Excuse me. We have 17 of those. When I came into office in, uh, 2002, we had four. Um, we maintained that number until 2020. Um, it was increased by three. Um, funding, of course, was provided through the state legislature and grants and all. Um, and then in 2020, three additional were added. And then, of course, um, in 2023, seven were added, um, by the school board through the same type funding that took place with the earlier six that we had. So that brings our total, um, to 17 SROs. That's one officer per school in the county. Um, primarily grant-funded, um, but the county is responsible for the fringe benefits and the vehicles. On all of those, but, well, those first four are funded to, to some degree. I'm not exactly sure. Melissa, how many of those, what that amount is, it used to be 164,000. That may be more or less now, I'm not sure what that is. Um, the support service division is led two by one captain and two lieutenants. And they also oversee the federal transport program and part-time federal transport officer. And of course, all that money that's expended to, to these transport officers, that's reimbursed and refunded back to the county, um, by way of the, um, US Marshal's Office. So all of that, you know, is not at the county's expense. Now, we, and when I say transport, we are housing federal inmates. And if they're needed in court somewhere, uh, then we have to transport them to the court. Uh, these are retired officers, um, that are paid, paid pretty well by the federal government to transport. And of course, they have to sit there and wait with them until court is finished. Or if they're not, um, allowed to return, typically there'll be someone somewhere else that we will bring back to replace. Um, that number's fluid. I can't tell you from day to day exactly how many we will have, um, that we're housing for federal government. But we do have, uh, or are committed to 40 beds. However, we're not, um, housing and have the availability to put 40 every day, um, because our census is high at the jail. Um, I didn't check to see what the number was this morning. Um, but, um, it's rare we fall very much below the 254 beds that we have allocated or available, um, for inmates. It's fluid, it's just about every day. Um, as far as the administrative division, this is individuals. They're at the office, uh, other than management people, um, we've got four deputies there. Um, they do an array of things, different functions, one of which is, of course, oversee the, the, uh, the Sheriff's Office and Detention Center budgets, um, which is a biggie. Handles all the hiring, internal affairs, mandated state staff training. They manage the equipment procurement, record management, logistics. Uh, they make sure that we're in compliance with policy, risk management, and liability mitigation. Coordinate public relations and community engagement. Maintains the sex offender registry. We've probably got about 160, 180 sexual offenders that are registered in this county, which is a lot, folks, um, for considering the population of this county. Um, of course, they handle all walk-in complaints and general office responsibilities. Um, it's supervised by one captain and one lieutenant. Those are in the office and budgets and all of that. Then, of course, I have a chief deputy, and he's responsible for coordinating overseeing the agency operations and division. Um, there's been some talk in the past, you know, about too many management people, administrative people. Um, our office has a total of 13 captains and lieutenants, uh, across all those divisions, as I've just mentioned to you, um, that oversee and manage the force of workforce, 152 employees. Uh, that includes the sworn deputies, detention officers, and civilian staff. If you look at the percentage of managers, um, in the total operation, you're looking approximately 9% of the, um, of the employees there. I think by way of comparison, the police department has three lieutenants that supervise 32 total employees, resulting in about 10% of the management ratio. Um, of course, as I said earlier, we deal with everything. Not only what comes in our way of telephone, um, through 911, but, uh, whoever comes up, I deal with everybody's problem. I'm the go-to person at some point. Nobody can't get help somewhere else, they can. Um, my staff has to be trained nonstop, all, uh, certified officers. What's the number by the office?
Twenty-four. Twenty-four is a minimum, but we always do at least 36 to 40 is what it shakes out to be.
Uh, but I meant re-certification.
Yeah, that's the annual service.
Um, and it gets more and more is added to us from training and standards as far as certifications are concerned. Um, to give you an idea, as to calls for service and all, and I think Jeff showed that, um, in his presentation, um, last year we had 22,742 calls for service. Um, we had 4,087 civil process papers, the civil paperwork, child support. Um, we booked in, uh, 2,976 inmates. If you look at over the past three years, that's a pretty good average, about 3,000 a year. Um, animal control, we probably average 28 to 3, 3,000 calls per year on animal control. And we've got a lot of devia dogs and cats out there, folks. Everybody seems fit to feed them. Instead of not feeding them and then going away, they feed them and they come. I think we've even had that problem here at the county office. Um, to give you some idea of revenue-wise as to what we generate, um, with the civil process fee, it's, um, last year it was 51,000. Any civil process paper that comes to our office, attorneys and whoever files those papers has to pay $35 per paper. Uh, resource office, officers' grants totaled about $900,000. That was money that the state paid the county. The Roseboro contract is $293,568. Um, concealed weapon permits amounted to about $74,000. Uh, social service reimbursement was about $250,000. When I say social service reimbursement, the two child support officers that we have, um, a portion of that, the camp, we're, we're reimbursed by the federal government for failing of their salaries. Um, the detention center generated $1.6 million last year. Um, cumulative, uh, revenue that the jail has generated since 2008 has been $26,58,018. So, um, the jail's been a, a big plus. Um, I made the comment whenever we were looking at building a new facility. Um, if you build it, they'll come. That's, that's held true. And if we had more bed, bed space available, which we don't today, as we once had, um, you know, we could be bringing a lot more money. But the struggle that we've had at the jail is that we have, unfortunately, you know, had a lot of vacancies. Um, we've not let the vacancies, you know, stop us or prevent us from, from getting paid customers. Uh, we've kept that jail full. Our census has been as high as 305 people. Uh, and we have to be very cautious, you know, going well over our numbers. Of course, the state could shut us down, but we've dealt with it. Um, as far as preparing for this budget and ways or efforts, you know, to cut corners, uh, to try to feel part of the pain that was asked, um, that got carried by other departments. Uh, we did eliminate two detention officers. They may come, I have, may have to have those back. However, you know, we're able to get by, and I say get by because we've been getting by, um, almost since the existence of the facility itself with vacancies. So, um, and of course, we're allocated overtime money that does help, um, for us to bring off-duty deputies or detention staff when they're off-duty to come back, um, to work. Um, so actually, as it stands today, I initially said we had 48 positions in the detention center. We now have 46 positions with those two alts. Um.
Sheriff, can you just hold on a second? Jeff, on the budget printout, it says total positions, uh, full-time equivalents 50. Is that just a misprint where the budget was, uh, printed and is on page 175?
One of those, one of those positions that may show up on the books is one that's, um, dedicated to, to house security.
That's on the detention, so detention.
Yeah, it actually would carry a detention, and I don't know if Jeff knew that. Um, it may actually carry a detention position number, um, however it's utilized in court.
Yeah, that, that's, um, your cover sheets that you submitted.
Okay, so that is the 50 is correct.
Marcus.
Yeah, it should be 152 total.
No, you saw my detention.
Yeah.
On the detention on page 175 of the budget work, worksheet, it says 50 full-time equivalents. 2025, 2026, it's still 50, total is, difference is zero.
Oh, I'll tell you, I have the roster here.
And Commissioner, remember, this was, this was before cuts.
That was before cuts.
All the new sheets in your book were initial requests before we did any cuts.
Okay, I got you. So 48 now or 46?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
Should be forty.
Well, we took two detention officers, and so Jeff, pass that to Marcus.
I have 46 after the two cuts, and then one that is on the books, in the detention roster, but actually is assigned to the sheriff's side. So it would actually be, uh, 47.
Okay, great.
Now Nancy may want to check that with the position number to verify later, but that's what I have.
And if I understand correctly, when you hired to fill vacancies, you process and onboard them with the HR department does them. You have, you have your own internal HR, basically.
That's right.
That's what I thought.
We have, we have regulations and stuff set by the state to get them mandated by the state.
Yeah.
Sheriff, I wanted to ask, those two detention that was cut off, was it retirement or they just let, let go?
So they were vacancies?
They were vacancies. So, um, they were vacancies at the time they were there. And I believe from last I heard from HR right now, you're fully staffed in detention.
No, no.
No, no.
No, no.
The detention officers, but they have some deputy positions vacant.
Okay.
Okay. How many deputy positions?
Well, they're, they're included in that number, so when you say detention slots, you know, it's how many slots we have in the detention center. Of some of those, you know, the overwhelming majority are just allocated to be certified detention officers only, but there are some what we call dual swarm, so they can be deputies. Um, in the, in the past, it's just kind of what application you get. You know, you may get a deputy sheriff's application, and you can put them in that deputy slot to work in the jail, but you may not have any different sheriff applications. You may only have someone that's detention-qualified, so you would, we had in the past, but then in a deputy sheriff's slot, but if we fail by the lower rate, if you have an detention officer, um, is kind of what we can get at the time, whatever the, um, market has offers.
Yeah.
Of course, in, in the clarify there, their, their dual swarm recalls, there are times where like, paper services have to be made that can't be made by a detention officer. Um, certain processes have to be done, can't be done by just a regular detention officer. The state won't allow it. So we have deputy sheriffs on hand to do that. If not, you would have four deputies off the road to come in and handle that.
So it's transport, you can't use a detention officer?
No, you can use a detention officer to transport in certain situations, um, and we do. Um, most of the time, though, you know, they need to be armed, you can't have an armed detention officer. Um, you know, we use them to transport back to court sometimes, for example. Um, there are certain applications where you need a deputy to transport. It just depends on the, the scenario, the inmate, who you're transporting for. Um, you know, whether it be the state or the feds or a local inmate. There's really a lot that goes into that.
Sheriff, when you were, uh, giving your, uh, presentation, you mentioned that you had 98 sworn deputies and then 48 detention. So, um, but the 98 sworn, that includes, that includes the Roseboro deputies, the SRO officers, and your drug interdiction and criminal investigators.
That's total sworn, sworn personnel, including some that may be in the jail.
No, that's 98 on the sheriff's side.
98 on the sheriff's side.
A separate part from 48 in jail, 46, whatever. Yeah, cuts.
Well, Sheriff.
What's that to be?
Yeah, uh, you know, the county is looking at the tax increase, everybody's aware of that. And, uh, a lot of people, we need to cut all we can, need to cut all we can. And I do realize you've already cut, you know, maybe significant cuts to both the departments. But I feel I have an obligation to the taxpayers to ask one last time, is there any way additional cuts could be made? Another 2%, 1%, in either the sheriff's side or the detention side? Something I intend to ask every department.
I, I understand, and I respect that. Right out of the chute, whenever Mr. Hudson asked, you know, presented the budget to all departments, you know, to report back to him what they would recommend for their budget this upcoming year, we immediately cut it from the very beginning. I knew it was going to be a tough budget year. So, right out of the chute, we cut our budget. Did eliminate two detention staff positions, but we did make a conscious effort at that point, and it seems like we cut like a half million dollars, you know, immediately to soften the load as best we could. We have a lot of variables out there as all other departments will have. And it's my hope that what we have submitted and what Mr. Hudson has put in there to be approved by the board, you know, that we'll be able to continue providing the services as we have in the past. I guess we might look a little bit closer, but off the cuff right now, I'd say not. But as whatever the wishes of the board is, you know, you're trying to accommodate that as best as we can. I too would not like to see taxes getting run, and you folks are in a very tough spot, no question. But the spot we're in, we just didn't get there this year. It's going to accumulate over the years.
We definitely want to. I was just going to say, we definitely want to make sure that we're providing the citizens what they expect of the sheriff's department.
Well, that's what I seek to say. You know, people's public safety is very important. And I know there was a comment made, you know, with the Garland Town Hall that Mr. Hudson had, you know, that the folks down there feel like they don't get any service. We have to provide the service all over this county. This is a huge county. And no particular part of this county is any more important than the other. We're going to do our best to make sure we cover it. But I'm not going to compromise the safety of the people in this county if it comes down to a dollar, okay? I'm not going to be part of the defendant police or anything like that. I think that that's a right that everybody should expect and have, is trying to be safe. And I take it for serious.
Does it hurt you? I assume it hurts. I mean, like if you look at New Haven County, they have several municipalities that have police departments. Sampson County really only has Clinton and Newton Road with all the other municipalities.
And we, and we do a lot in the New York. Keep in mind, they only have like two, I think, and then they have some auxiliary officers. But primarily, it's two, probably today it's just one because one of the guys that was there left and went back to the Dunn Police Department. We have to fill in whenever no one's there, even daytime if their, their department's not manned, we have to be there. I mean, we're not stationed there. However, we take their calls, you know? But it's, it is a big difference between these other counties that have municipal law enforcement agencies. We only have two in this county. That, of course, is the city of Clinton and Newton Road.
How come the other towns don't pay a contract like Roseburg, Sundberg, and Turkey, and Garland?
They don't, they don't have to. They've got us.
It would be helpful if they did, wouldn't it?
Well, it would be. We at one time did have a contract before. That was voted down by the people there. Now Garland has, you know, been providing monies for off-duty deputies to provide law enforcement there, that's on them. So we do that whenever asked. The demand for off-duty deputies is unreal. You can't find the number of people that won't hire off-duty deputies or parties, escorts, you name it, security at, at special events. Everybody wants a deputy there, and they just about have to have it now, when things on. Now that will factor into the budget if we get it on.
What are your, what would be your, like, your, the money in Sampson County was unlimited, and we didn't have a money problem, what would, what would be some of your wish items on your to-do list that we need, that you see we need that we can't afford?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, you know, this county is huge landmass-wise, okay? Well, we've got six per squad. We really probably need to have seven to eight per squad to adequately at all times cover this whole county. And, and the reason being is just because we've got six or seven deputies per squad, that doesn't mean they're all working during that shift. Some would be out sick, vacation, which would prevent squads from being fully staffed. Then factor in the vacancy here and there. We have to fill in, if we get low, I have to bring some in, you know, to pick up the slack if we're short. A utopia would be at least minimum eight, seven to eight per road squad. When I came in the office, I think there was four, five per road squad. And Mr. Sauer, he became county manager, he upped it one per squad. I didn't ask for it, he did it, which was surprising. Most of these numbers and all that I've given, you all have been pretty much the same from day one when I came into office. We've not added, even though it may appear that we've added a bunch of staff, we've not added that much. SROs, when you look at thirteen in over a three-year period, that's a pretty good lead. And then you add the courtroom security, which there was a public outcry from the judges and the attorneys, you know, that we have people there to protect them, which is statute-driven, unfortunately responsible for security of our courthouses. We've had no choice. It seems like whatever our growth is being, it's been accelerated by events or pressure, you know, placed on the commission, you know, to provide that. I think a lot of other things too, Sheriff. I know he could.
I just, I just applaud that you went to personnel and the safety of the county, I think. I said, I applaud you that you, your wish list goes to more personnel and providing the service for the county. I mean, that's, to me, that weighs in a lot.
Mr. Sheriff, that's important.
I know it is. I know, I know it's important to you, and I do appreciate that.
I think as the lady commented, you know, the lady was Jeff, and you wrote, she was commenting about how important, you know, the library was to her, her being a retired teacher, now part-time substitute, whatever, how important that library was. But she also said my public safety is important too.
I agree.
In today's world, that's on the minds of everyone. It's been a little admitted in the law. We have a lot of people who don't feel safe. I don't mean just sex safe, I mean in general, you know, people are generally fearful today. They're scared to go shopping, scared to do anything.
I agree.
Or fear of what may happen. And like yesterday, as I said, no idea, you know, that event would have taken place.
Sheriff, so I just want to thank you for all the services that you have given to this county. I have been asked by constituents a question that I could not answer, and I intend to ask some more department heads this question. Of the number of people that have gotten promotions in the past five years, how many qualified blacks will hire? That's what I want to know, because I want to be able to answer that question when my constituents ask me that number.
I understand, I get that. That's my problem is probably could be, and be said, you know, those departments, minorities are hard to, to find and to hire because they've got to be black certified. We do give our due diligence effort, you know, to make sure that we do hire minorities. I've got, you know, I've got a few minorities, not like I once had. Cap Hayes just retired, and we brought on Kenneth Davey, you know, sergeant there at the jail, and Kenneth is doing an excellent job. But I'm open to hiring anyone, I'm not focused on any one particular race, you know, I have a tremendous number of Hispanic deputies.
Yes, you do.
A lot of those. Where we have people that, you know, that express an interest in wanting to be hired, we do our due diligence, try to hire them. And the same is true now, as it relates to promotion. We have to, I'm a firm believer in rewarding those that have put in their time, okay? I think that's important.
That's important to our constituents and the people that live out in the county, that it's done equally so that blacks and people of color do get voted.
Well, one of the, one of the difficulties today in, if you go and look at the, the students that are in these black classes, it's, it's difficult to even feel the number, the bare minimum number that they need to operate that class. And there's few minorities, you know, enrolled in the program. Of course, law enforcement's not a glamorous profession, and of course, it's, it's one that's always in the spotlight. It's not that lucrative, you know, salary-wise either. So there's, there's many variables that play into, you know, particularly the minority aspect.
Well, Sheriff, we, I mean, I think I speak for the board, we do thank you. I know that we appreciate what the deputies do for us, and we do want to make sure that they have all they need to be safe so that they can do their job safe, to keep us safe. So, it's unfortunate, we're in a financial crunch, and we thank you for the cuts that you have offered up, so thank you for that.
Back, you got anything else from the board, Sheriff? Are you good, sir, across the way?
Yes, sir. I've asked, I've asked Paul to go out and make a copy for you, just as a quick reference, and here he is. So I'll take mine back. Paul, if you would hand those to the board.
Thank you.
It's, it's in your budget book, but just so that you can keep everything in the binder without pulling it out, I'd like to say, these are probably two cheat sheets that you should have handy today, just lay them on the table next to your book. And in case of, and what this is on page fifty-three, page fifty-four of your budget book, this is a listing of the major departments in the budget and whether they went up or down and by how much. So for the sheriff's office, for the detention center, last year he was at, for the detention center rather, not he, but was at six million, one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, thirty-seven dollars, and, and this year in the proposed budget, it's five million, eight-eleven, one-eighty-six. So that's a reduction of three-hundred-and-ten thousand, eight-fifty-one. And in the sheriff's office, it was twelve million, five-seventy-two, seven-seventy-seven, and it's gone to twelve million, two-ninety, eight-twenty-one, so that's a reduction of two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars. So altogether, the sheriff's office and detention center is about three-ten, and I lost it, two-eighty-one, so five-ninety-one, five-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand or so altogether down. And that, that would include, of course, the salaries from the two detention officers that were cut as well. So it is, it is a fact that both of those departments went down year over year. This, this will be handy as you look at other departments. The next department on the list, after we have a report from the auditor, who is in the audience now, is I T. And you'll notice I T went, went up a bit, but there's a reason for that. And that is an investment that we're making. So department heads will have the ability to talk to you about some of those things. So just your cheat sheets for you. That's all I've got, Mr. Sheriff.
Y'all good? If we're good, we're good. We're going, we're going to move on to the next agenda then, how's that? I do appreciate that, thank y'all. I hope, I hope that it, what you presented cleared a lot of stuff up for some votes too. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, are you ready? We'll go, we're going backwards a little bit. We, we kind of jumped by a little bit, now we're going back to our audit presentation on item two. So if Mr. Wake Green will come up, we'll put you in the hot seat unless you proceed to present.
I got one better. He's very well prepared to do the good job. Oh boy, here we go. Anyway, I guess Melissa's getting a copy of the audit. L G C accepted audit yesterday, it got accepted yesterday.
All right, okay, good.
I got my little presentation, kind of get the high spots. And with that being said, if you just flip over to the second page. You comply with the Department's O M B Uniform Guide on the State Similarity of Legal Implementation Act. The county administers, twenty-nine million, federal and state financial assistance and results of compliance testing on federal and state awards, have one instance of non-compliance, which resulted in one deficiency in term control of compliance. That's basically all, some reports not being filed, time limit. Other than that, that's things clean. The next page, the financial highlights. There are assets and the deferred outflows of resources that exceed their liabilities and deferred influx of resources, a hundred-and-twenty-three million and forty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The total net position, net income if you will, increased by eleven million, one-hundred-and-eight thousand. Now that's full accrual, that's on his G A D D thirty-four, the front two statements, which includes depreciation and debt payments, but that's really not how you keep your bills, that's the rest of them, cash based. Any questions on that one? If not, the next one. The general fund. Your revenues, ninety-three million, four-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. Your expenses, ninety-two thousand, one-eighty-four. So net income if you will, a million, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand. As you see, it's, it's almost four million last year and a couple of two, three million losses the year before, because your past year, a million, two-eighty-nine. Any questions on that one? If not, your fund balance available, cash in the bank after you pay your bills. Year-end, forty-one million, five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. Thirty-seven million, five-hundred, seventy-seven thousand last year. So it was around four, four million dollars prior year. As you see, it's steadily been going up the past five years. So if you take your forty-one netting about, about the prior year's expenses, you get the net, under percentage. Just one local government condition like this, go by. You have forty-five point one oh percent at year-end, you have forty-three point four-four last year. So you've got almost five months, five, five and a half month of cash in on hand at year-end. There's steadily been increase. Any questions on the general fund? You're under the shore district two. Revenue's three million, two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand. Expenses, two million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand. Net income if you will, four-hundred-and-ten thousand, twenty-one dollars. As you see, your revenues, expenses, steadily been going up the past five years, anyway, this year, four-hundred-and-ten thousand, off. Any questions on that one? The fund balance available. At year-end, eleven million, five-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight. It was six million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand last year. The cash, that's one, five million dollars prior year. The cash, that's one, five million dollars prior year. If you calculate the next one, the percentage, it's a four hundred and two point forty-six percent. So you've got four years worth of cash on hand at year-end. Water district two. As you see, it's steadily been, it was thirty-three, five years ago, not four hundred and two. Water district, in good shape, any questions on it? Water district one. Revenues, a million, six hundred twenty-five thousand. Expenses, nine hundred ninety-five thousand. Revenues over expenditure, six hundred twenty-nine thousand, five fifty-one. As you see, it's income and expenses, steadily been increasing the past five years, anyway, six hundred twenty-nine thousand out of profit for the year. The fund balance available, the next one. Two million, eight hundred eighty thousand, nine eleven. It was T D and two the year before, so it was over six hundred thousand prior year. Cash in the bank. The next one, the percent. Two hundred eighty-nine, about twenty-eight percent. So you're getting close to almost three years worth of cash in bank at year-end. As you see, it's steadily been increasing the past five years. So the water districts are in good shape, with your general fund at year-end. The next one, just cash, total cash, breaks out cash in the bank. Your federal funds, sixty-six million, one hundred forty-four thousand. The enterprise funds, fifteen million, two hundred ninety-five. Lot decreased, your federal funds, we replaced all the grants.
Yeah.
The next one, your long-term debt. It's a good amount, one hundred thirty-five million, three twenty-four. It was one hundred forty million last year, so you down, what, basically five, five, over five million dollars in debt. And fourteen million, five hundred twenty-seven thousand, you were fifteen million, three ten. Now, a lot of that is called a vacation, your elders retirement, that one, based on twelve thirty-one, twenty-two, what the state, what the market, you know, that one data.
Okay.
But anyway, that's steadily going, I mean, it's going down. The next one, your net tax levy for the current year, forty-four million, four hundred thirty-four thousand. It was forty-three million, eight seventy-nine last year, so it was about six hundred thousand in property taxes for the year. As you see, it has steadily been increasing. The next one, your valuation. Five B, three hundred eighty-five thousand, nine seventy-two. It was five B, three eighteen the year before, so it was around sixty million dollars to bill property taxes. As you see, it's steadily been going up there the past five years. Next one, your collection rate, ninety-seven point four-three percent. As you see, the past five years, you've been all in the middle, ninety-seven percent, that's kind of the standard in thirteen counties here, this side of ninety-five. Now, if you get, the other side of ninety-five, on the beach properties, up by ninety-nine point nine nine, they collect. But the thirteen counties down here in the southeast, ninety-seven, so that's about far off average.
Okay, that's good.
With that being said, that kind of hits off my high spots, but Melissa has something. Hey? The county's in good shape at year-end, or June thirty, twenty-four, is it in good shape?
Anyone on the board have any more questions? Thank you. But you said that it was approved this morning.
Yesterday, I got your sample from LGC yesterday morning.
That's what we're after.
We met her at mine, she's a big answer.
Yeah.
And I've got a couple for you, it's time. Melissa, I'm gonna get my, I'll play the box. All right, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept and approve the audit, subject to submission and approval by the local government. Is that the way we need to read that, sir?
Well, it's already been submitted and approved, so, Mr. Chairman, you couldn't say motion to accept and approve the audit as presented.
As presented, that's kind of what I would approve.
Accept as presented.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. All those in favor, raised hand. Motion so carries.
That's great.
All those approved. All right. If I'm reading it correctly, next up is information technology.
Yes, sir. And just a note, as Mr. Rayner comes up, that was for the audit ending June thirty of last year, so June thirty of twenty-four. And according to the balance sheet, which is further on in the audit, as of June thirty of twenty-twenty-four, the unassigned, Melissa was, that's twenty-one B and five eighty-six.
Unassigned.
Unassigned.
Twenty-one.
It's twenty-one. So the available fund balance is more than just the assigned fund balance, unassigned fund balance has not been assigned for some other purpose by the commissioners, so you're at twenty-one B. Commissioners, on your cheat sheets, you can pull up IT, and you'll see that IT had three hundred thousand increase, and that can be directly attributable to some recommendations that we received from the strike team that came in, IT strike team that came in. And beyond that, I'll let Chris take his budget, but I did want you to know that that was not Mr. Rayner sitting in the room over there saying, "I need another three hundred thousand dollars to spend, I just feel like doing it." That was a recommendation by outside parties that did an assessment on the county and made recommendations, which were included in your, in your proposed budget, and we talked about that before with commissioners in one of the briefs.
First of all, thank you, commissioners, for, that having the opportunity to actually talk with you about the upcoming budget, or the recommended budget that is presented. I'm pretty sure Mr. Hudson has actually went through and given you what we've decided to do as a team, and we're taking into account what you said in your meeting, that was, when you met, you wanted to ensure the security and safety of government IT system to protect the county workforce, citizens of Sampson County, and personnel, personal information and public data from cyber attacks. As you're well aware, that in this time and effort in this day, that it's a space where that's what people want. They want your information, and they do everything they can do to get your information, from impersonating other folks, so when you start seeing those strange emails that look like they came from Mr. Hudson, but they don't have his email address on, they're trying to get your credentials, and unfortunately, you guys become high-target assets. That is, everyone sitting across from me is a person that they want to hack your email, they want to get into your files and things. So what we did as, one of the things that we looked at in this year's budget, was to enhance the security, and as Mr. Hudson alluded to, we actually did some things with getting some outside sources to come in and speak with us. And in doing so, they came back with several key areas of things that we needed to do, that they saw were immediate, things that we needed to take place. First of all, one of the things they did tell us in the meeting that we had was, we have been in, we've done a good job as a group. We've been fortunate as a group, but we've done a good job. They wanted us to know that whatever we were doing, we were doing a good job, and that we're secure. They actually do monthly scans, or actually weekly scans on our network, to see if we're vulnerable to attacks. Those things are happening, but they're showing that our systems have been hardened, from the standpoint that we're, right now, we're not letting people in or out. So what they came up with was some recommendations for things that we can do, and the biggest one was that migrate servers and data away from our internet service provider. So, and Sheriff is here, so that's a good person. So back in twenty-fifteen, we had a catastrophic event with some equipment that just failed. It wasn't supposed to fail, it failed, the backup failed, and literally several departments in the county were down for days, the sheriff's office being one of them. And at that point in time, we migrated some equipment and stuff over to our internet service provider, which is Star Communications. They've been handling some of the backend server equipment for us for the last, since that twenty-fifteen. But in these days and times, we've got to make sure that they're capable to handle that, but we're capable of bringing it in-house. And so based on some of the newer technologies and things that we, we can do, we decided to bring it back in-house. We're going to actually house the equipment now over in our nine-one-one facility, over in the backend, which is a hardened, it's a hardened IT room for us to be able to place our stuff in. It's got all the things that we need, and so this year, we just had to make an initial investment in buying some equipment. I've actually talked with Star about us migrating away, and it's interesting, we talked about, although my budget increased, it's literally what it increased was, was the actual one-time cost of the equipment for this year. So that we have to think about it, we've got one-time cost of the equipment, which totaled around two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Based on, not sure which, which cover letter you guys still have in your system, but we've got a secondary cover letter where we've done all the cuts through this system with Mr. Hudson. So when he went back and said, "Listen, we need to cut more, we need to cut more," we came back, and so what you will see is that the budget that is being represented for, I'm not sure, like I said, which one you got in your very first.
They got the old one.
They got the old one, so you got the one that says the budget's like one point seven million, but actually, the budget is looking at one point five million, and you can take two hundred and fifty thousand of that and say, "That's a one-time cost that we're purchasing this year, after that, we won't need to look at it maybe another four or five years." With that being said, we've also looking at, so the budget theoretically didn't go up five hundred and ten thousand dollars, the budget actually went up two hundred and ten thousand dollars from what, what we were asked for last year. Now, with that, we're talking about another two hundred thousand that will not need to be come off in the budget next year, so we'll still be back to where we were. You also see that on your original sheet, we had a full-time equivalent of five people on staff. We did ask for additional person based on staffing needs. Now, listen, we're a county of roughly six hundred and fifty-some employees, correct? We have four people doing IT for the bulk of the county, with the exception of, there's three people in, at DSS. They don't really go outside of DSS, matter of fact, they don't go outside of DSS, that's the only place they work. But the other four of us, we do everything else inside the county. We've done some partnerships with Star to help with the sheriff's load, so that we can make sure that they were being taken care of based on us, because you got to think about, we're talking about four people, actually, you're really talking about three, because I'm sitting here today, so I can't stand, go out and help anybody right now at this point. So what you will see is that we literally now, the full-time equivalent for that office at this point is only four, because of some shit changes in the budget, and some requests that have been moved for people to be moved. So we're down to just four people in the office trying to manage laptops, desktops, cell phones, for all these agencies, and like Sheriff said, the county's a large place, you know, we've got to get to Garland, to the senior center and the library, Newton Grove, Roseburg, places like that. We've got deputies on the road that we need to talk to. We've got departments on this campus, we've got departments on campuses all across, you know, downtown, then we still have to do stuff with the courthouse and things like that. So, you know, we're stretched pretty thin in trying to make sure these things happen, so it's imperative that, one of the things we've done is that we move with the new system, that it will help us utilize our talents and abilities in remote areas. And what I'm saying, remote, is so I can sit here and get to you or get to anybody else, so that I'm not having to travel, and they're not having to wait. So those are, that's the key point with that. The other thing was, they talked about us, the second thing was, we migrated the servers, we're upgraded to a platform that we're already using, we've been using portions of it so far. They also talked about us looking at a way to work with those folks in DSS, that we may be able to utilize their services to help us out. These are already people that have worked for the county, they have a skill set whereby they can do certain things, and then they may be able to help us, free us up to go in other areas. Other things that we got to do is make sure that we're upgrading and keeping the upgraded list of all our systems. We, in times past, with other boards, I've had this conversation, we get into this thing that we have a cycle, we call "we buy to die," and that is, we get every bit of usefulness out of every piece of equipment that we have, and then when it dies, we're scrambling to replace it. So we got to get our mindset from some of that buy-to-die to where we're actually strategically thinking about planning how we're going to move to the next level. And so that's the key components of what we're looking to do in this budget. And listen, you have to, I hate to be the person that sits here and says, "Oh, right, I know that everybody else's budget went down and mine went up," because I understand how this works. I understand how the process and everything needs to go, so I'm not coming in here and saying, "Hey, don't cut this, don't cut this, there's a reason I need to keep this, we can cut it next year when we don't have to have it in certain areas." But there are certain pieces that we have to do, and one of the things is, you know, technology has been often an afterthought here in the county. We know we need it. We only cry when it doesn't work, but a lot of times, there have not been investments placed in. We've been good at making things work, we've been good at using whatever ability we have, scrapping things together, but I think in this instance, it's a great opportunity for us to move and put things in a different perspective. So when we're seeing this, we're looking to do exactly what you're saying. Listen, my goal is not to be on the news, okay? For no reason, my goal is not to be, and I don't want this other thing that I call RPE, which is a resume producing event, and I've had one in my career. Closely with that twenty-fifteen, I thought I was gone, but we worked through everything and got it back up and running. But, but my goal is not to be on the news, I don't want to be one of these counties that when you see something, there's like, "They got hacked." We've been fortunate to be able to partner with some other groups that do monitoring of our systems, that keep us in line. We've been able to leverage some third-party outside vendors, that's helped us move forward in the past, and we're still going to try and rely on some of that, because we just don't have the staff and manpower to handle it. So that's, as far as I, everything I have to say at this point. Any questions, any comments, any concerns, anything you want to know?
A little concerned about the increase in staff.
There isn't any.
It says one additional full-time equivalent.
That was before.
That's before.
All those sheets are before cuts. Actually, Commissioner, they went down one position, and on page fifty-five of your budget, you might have to turn there, but I have written, "Seven good ideas that this budget did not fund." The number one item was IT, virtual environment administrator. So one of the recommendations of the state IT strike force was for us to control our data and control our backup directly.
Yes.
And that virtual environment administrator, we use virtual servers, so having the physical machines knowing and paying for off-site backup, and you're, you're not using rubric, you're looking at using.
Cohesive.
Cohesive. So that, that will ensure your data is secure, and even if you have a local disaster, even a fire or anything like that, it's out there. This position would be helping with that. Earlier, I had it in the budget, and then in the end, it came back out of the budget because of where the budget was. So I, I do want you to know, on page fifty-five, and Sheriff's still in the room, item number two was defibrillator. Item number two was defibrillator, defibrillator, units for sheriff cars. So those, those things on page 55, but Chris's was, was number one on my list.
On page 161, I noticed your salaries have gone down. Current, current budget's 317,000 and some change. Administration recommendation is 281 and some change for the next budget. I have to ask, I intend to ask you from the bottom of my head, how can we, how can we possibly cut another one or two percent out of your budget?
One or two percent. If I do math that for a, what, $10,000, 10, one, one about.
15,000.
15, so.
20,000.
There may be some ways I can do that, but it's hard to do it upfront. And part of that depends on, so here's how our budget was. I started cutting things based on what we knew. So one of the things is we approve the budget. I can't order equipment until June 1, or July 1. So July 1, I've got the people noticed if we can order the equipment. And then what happens is once we start migrating away from Star, there's some extra money's there. I can probably gather 15,000 if I can get it done like in month two. So basically, if I can get it ordered in July, we get it installed by August. And then I'm going to cut services. And that, and that's stretching it. We literally, as, as Mr. Hudson said, we went through several, several iterations of how to cut the budget. And I have to look at, because I ended up paying for all the internet for all the county agencies, all the emails, county agencies. And when we started looking at different ways to put these things in, then this budget is probably one of the tightest budgets with at least, the least amount of, you know, we, we don't like to say we have fluff in the budget, but sometimes there's some stuff in places. First to get that 15,000, I may be able to find some, some areas and some services that we're not going to do. But, but it'll, it'll, it'll be real tight. And then I may have the money at the end of the year. You know, based on, all right, if these things took place and they're not doing X, Y, and Z's, we've got this in place. That's how I would do it.
Is there any way that you can train location heads, managers? Like you said, sometimes you have to run to places like Garland or Newton Grove or Roseburg to reboot a system. Is there any way that the person on site could be properly trained so that that would alleviate the need for you or your staff to have to run all over the county to reboot computers and software?
Well, actually, the, it's normally not a reboot when we go down there. It's, it's that it, it doesn't come up or don't show up. We've actually purchased software to help us do remote locations. So for instance, if you tell me that you can't get on your computer in your office, I send you to a website, you give me six digits. If you're getting up that way, I can do software remediation. Now the problem is if it's not software remediation, so say you're not online, you're not there. We try and run them through the first step. You know, is it plugged in? Is it turned on? Those things help us do that. But then there are just those times where you've got to go. You've got to move out and see. And so you can help people in areas, you can talk them through as much as possible. We do that a lot over the weekends and when we're on the call, talking to folks. Like I worked through something this Saturday or Friday night for about two hours with somebody. And matter of fact, in Sheriff's Office, they were trying to get some stuff done. But that, we cut out the, the age of what you were looking for like that. And we look to help as much as possible and empower as many people as possible to do certain things. So when we start looking at best ways to, to cut or train, there are certain things that we can help and just, we can help them over the following years, sir.
Look at the dangers that you're really into with that. I used to work with him a lot on that, the administrative passwords. The more people that you have with access to administrative passwords.
That becomes a problem.
And it comes down to human factor about doing last thing, remember something, write it down and stick it under a keyboard and then somebody.
So, so well, well, listen, I'll give you an example. We had, it wasn't us, it was another county near us. But actually, there was a local vendor in our county that got hacked because they had, they had the administrative password. And the threat entity had a key log on their system. And when they did, it got in, it messed up their system. So we, we try to minimize that. And I know people say, well, my computer's locked down. There is a reason we keep the computers locked down. It's for your safety. We'd rather fix your one computer than having to take the whole system down. Because it could be days and end times and like what Mr. Hudson was actually talking about. One of the key things is that in this budget, with the stuff we're looking at buying, the backups will be instantaneous. And so they're, they're set up in a way that they're out and they keep us from getting encrypted. Because one of the things that we learned during our assessment with the strike team was that, listen, the bad actors are now going out and looking for backups first. So they look for the backups. And they corrupt the backups and then they corrupt your data. And as you know, if we get ransomware somewhere in North Carolina, we're not allowed to pay. And cybersecurity insurance actually wants you to pay. But North Carolina says we can't pay or we're not supposed to pay. And so we're going to be in a world of hurt if you don't have the backup or those things. So that, that's what we're looking at.
Well, I have several more things and I let my fellow commissioners say something. You know, I asked you, is there's any way you could cut additional one or two percent if you can? Probably going to need that money next year. So save, save all you can where you can find it because we're going to need it.
And that was some of the helpful things that we did this year because we were able, there were some things that we needed upgraded. And we, because we hadn't spent some things yet, we were working on it to take it out of this budget. So we, listen, I, I'm, because I touch every department, I understand what's going on. So I go in every office and I hear what's going on here and there. And then I understand the dilemma that we're in on the backside. My goal is never to come in and be the person that says, hey, let's get, 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 get. It is, listen, what can we do to better it? What can we do to become more efficient? How can we move areas? Because I'm going to be over here because I'm going to have to go over here and work in this office. And here you can play about that or I'm going to have to go over to that office. So one of the things is, it's not that we're out to look at the best ways. And I'm a person that if, if it's in our budget, we can pay for. And you can ask, me and Sheriff have sat down and we've worked out some things. It's all the county's dollars. It's not just IT dollars, it's all the county dollars. So if we can make this work, we can do this. For instance, I've been putting this phone bill for some people in a different department because it was already there. Just keep it going. Why? It's still going to come out. If you don't have it, but you need it, you need it for your job, let's make sure it works.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Ryan, I can honestly say after working with you some 30 years, that he's not a big spender. I remember the times he would come to fix my computer and I'd say, throw this mess away and get me a break.
It worked.
Because I was tired of it. But he said, we just can't do that. We're going to have to work on this one until it gets fixed. So my suggestion to you would be that you work with the director of DSS and see if you can't utilize her work. Because she's got three IT and you've got three to do the whole county.
Yeah.
So.
Commissioner, one note on that. So we're actually having conversations between human resources and DSS human resources. Remember, if they're in DSS, we can use federal and state money to help pay their salaries. This fellow right here is 100% county. So we are looking at how we can, we can use their employees. It was a recommendation by the state strike team that those employees come over here. And, and it wasn't necessarily only so that he could have three more people. Because I don't know that all three may choose to make the switch. I mean, they may be very happy in DSS. But it, it is so that you only have one IT department making decisions about IT. So if we're talking about cybersecurity, if we're making, talking about decision-making, if you have two shops, they could be doing two different things as opposed to one shop making one decision. But it is possible for, for us to, through indirect cost, to be able to, I believe, move those people over and, and then still recoup money from state and federal. And that's actually something that both Melissa and Nancy have been working on. It's just, it's just not been able to happen between when we started talking about it and now. I, I do believe that you do need to do that. I also believe that, that you need to definitely continue on with cybersecurity. I was in an organization that has successful ransomware attack, attack. And every machine in the whole building became a brick. And I, the reason that money made it into this budget is, trust me, I never want to go through that again and you never want to go through it the first time. So, so that's that. But one, one other thing that I do want to emphasize is, you know, we do, I do suggest that you have, just like you have now, a 10-year capital improvement program for your buildings. I think you do need to have a replacement schedule for your PCs, your laptops. And over time, when you're able, build that into your budget. Because every laptop has a lifespan. And every PC has lifespan and servers and switches. So, so after you, you get to a point where you can, make sure that you're flipping those over on a regular basis according to the schedule so that you don't have to wait for a catastrophic incident to, to make replacements.
I, I agree with you. Because when it comes to cybersecurity, you always got to look to the next year, next day, the next minute. And when you have that fund there, it's time to get it now. Waiting could be disastrous. And thank you for saying that.
And also the, the equipment, I believe we pulled that out of our public building capital reserve fund. Did we not? Listen, the $200,000 plus in equipment. That, we pulled that out of your one-time expenditure. So we pulled that out of your public building capital reserve fund versus your, your ongoing recurring tax revenues.
Okay, good. Any more questions for anyone? You good, sir?
I am. And listen, you know, I'm always open, so if you need anything.
I believe any, I believe any other questions we would ask you. You've done very good at explaining what you, what the direction we're going for again and, and what we're looking for. So I, I appreciate it. I really do.
And Commissioner Swatkrusis here, I want to thank him for also being helpful in the movement of departments with veteran services that they move and also ITs move. They'll be moving from, from where they're at now over to B, building B. I'm going A, B, C, D, E. Yeah. So, so they're moving over that. But I do want to thank him and his staff for being very willing to cooperate so that we can get different spaces. That'll also put his employees in separate offices. And I think that as you move forward and you also have something like a help desk and things like that, you are competing with IT people. You're, you're competing with other counties getting IT people. So among those, among those people that it's hard to hire sometimes. It's hard to hire public health nurses. It's hard to hire deputies or detention officers because that's in a lot of competition. It's really hard to hire IT people. Right now, all of his IT people are in a bullpen. Over there, they'll have private offices, which will, it's not more, you know, it's not going to compete with $20,000 more money in another county, but it's a little bit nicer work environment that hopefully will help you also get some, some other IT people. So thank you, Chris.
Cool. And to add just to what Mr. Hudson was saying about hiring IT staff, that is a issue for local companies across the board. And I'll give you an example that I was given by one of our companies here locally. They said that, listen, when they put out an opening, a lot of times if one of the employees from either the school systems or the county government, city government applied, they will hire them because they know that they're invested here in the county. Oftentimes, when you get people that come from different places, they want to come in and leave. And we've got dedicated people that have been here numerous years that have now invested their lives here. So we want to continue to help encourage them as we move forward to keep working with us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
According to our agenda, we would be at lunch, but I know we're a little ahead of schedule.
Yes, sir, you're ahead of schedule and.
Could I ask that we take a, Ms. Ann, are you good to speak?
Yes, sir.
I would like to, I'd like to take five minutes for everyone, if that's okay. I've got a, not to throw anything, but I've got a sister-in-law that's going through something real quick and I need to make a phone call. And I am going to say a prayer with her and I'll be right back, if that's okay.
Recess, sir?
Recess. Take five and I'll be right back. If everybody's good to go, we're going to move right along with this process and we're going to go right into veteran service. And Ms. Ann, phone you, dear.
Well, the first thing I want to say is to thank all of you for the admin, the receptionist that you helped me get. You know, the state and we're in a big, the state now has issues because we don't have enough funds to do the scholarships like you got here. They're cutting out all of the competitive scholarships. So this, this came at the right time because I know it wouldn't happen had it just been a few weeks later. But I thank you. I don't know how to not answer the phone. The phone rings, I pick it up. So it has been a blessing to not have to, not have to stop a veteran and say, excuse me, and do that. So thank you to everyone that is behind me. Now, my budget's probably the litmus budget that you look at. And what we do is that this budget helps me every day. And Ms. Hope, who is our, also a veteran service officer, we help veterans every day. I was walking into this meeting and the widow, the widow and her mother were talking to Ray Jordan because they were trying to find me. And she, her husband was killed in front of her and she was injured severely. And now she has mental issues. And she was coming to, because we're getting her, we're trying to get help for her. So that's what I do every day. Veterans are walking in and we're taking care of their problems. We help get them into the hospital. If a veteran needs home healthcare, we work with the hospital, with the family to get it done. You know, we have, we still don't know how many veterans we have because if you, no matter which charts you look at, it's different. But we have in the neighborhood of 5,000 veterans. Veterans that are in the surround, that touch surrounding counties, that touch our county, they get the, they get all the accolades for those veterans, not us. As I said, how can that change? But where Hornet County hits in or Johnson County, that has the most. So anybody with a Johnson County name will go there, not with us. It may be Simpson County, but they live close to Johnson and they get credit for it.
Question while you're there. So everyone in my area that has a Dunn address.
They're going to get credit for it.
So Hornet County gets credit.
Even though they're, they're in our district.
But they had to, they're supposed to come here to get the services, but.
And they do.
That's what I know.
But their address, when the GDX starts doing it, gives it to Hornet County. Because that's the majority of the Dunn.
But we have tried to address that.
Yes, sir. And there's no way, they, they tell me that the address, the majority of the address is where it goes. But we still, even doing that, y'all look at $71 million that came into, no, 23. You've not seen 24 yet. 23, $71 million came in people's pockets because we don't have a hospital. We don't have an outpatient clinic. It came in pockets and it's spent in this county. Whether it's staying off of welfare, because if you're drawing VA, you don't qualify for welfare. You don't qualify for food stamps. So that's what we do. We, we serve the people. Ms. Lee Delu, her husband was a Vietnam veteran. He was service-connected, he passed away. We help her. Mr. Thaddeus, he served his country and he will be one that we serve. Commissioner Eric, he got his education because his daddy was a veteran. That's what we, you know, I don't have a lot of presentations. I just have. I just have what we do, who we serve. And that we make them, they are our priorities. You know, I have taken veterans with the Sheriff's Department, went with them to the hospital, and sent in the emergency room most of the night, waiting to get that veteran committed to the hospital because there was no help for him here. That's what we do. So does anybody have any questions? You see how my budget is. The only reason my budget has increased is my new daughter. And I do appreciate that.
That's good.
We gave him all the cuts that we could. I go to travel, the state travel, and the national travel. I've been the president of both of them and was on the ground floor of getting both of them started. This year, we gave our travel back because he needed it. I'm paying my own way because it's important that I stay up with the people that make the decisions to help our veterans get the best care.
We appreciate that, too.
Ms. Ann, on a personal note, I just want to thank you for all that you do for residents in Sampson County because just like you help me, I know that you help me, too.
Yes, sir.
And that makes a difference. You've been doing it for a long, long time.
But we're not going to say how long. They try to get rid of me.
It's been a while, but you continue doing--
As long as the good Lord gives me the ability, I will take care of veterans.
Don't go nowhere, stay right here. Keep on doing the good job that you're doing.
Well, I appreciate that.
Residents in Sampson County.
You know, I was, I'm asking every department head, how can you cut another 1% or 2%? You're the only department that I'm reserving that question from asking because we all agreed and we wanted to give a little more to our veterans. Because I think particularly, not that all veterans aren't important, but I have a particular fondness for Vietnam veterans.
Absolutely.
Because a lot of them had to go to a war that many people didn't support. And they came home, they didn't get celebrated the same way that World War II veterans or Korean War veterans or Cold War veterans were celebrated. Many of them were ridiculed early on. Of course, that's changed, and we are celebrating them now. But I still feel that that was an injustice done on the Vietnam generation.
Fifty years later.
Yeah. And, you know, they deserve their recognition and their support, so.
And those are the veterans that did not come in and file claims. There's a big gap in Vietnam veterans receiving the benefits because of how they came home. Now, some of them, like Eric's dad got sick. You know, some of them came in. But the majority, now I am doing some claims for them. And they said, well, when we got out, we didn't think that we were going to get anything, so we didn't come. So I really push hard for Vietnam veterans to come in because a lot of them have heart conditions, cancers. There's a lot of presumptives to the Agent Orange. And that's the ones that we're really reaching out because those veterans are my age. My high school friends are the ones that went into Vietnam.
So instead of asking you, what can you cut?
What can I get? How about that?
What can we do as a board to try to help you get more access to more funding that's outside of the county?
Well, I look at everything, and I haven't found any. Now, the American Legion, the Vet Council, and the VFW, and the American Legion are helping me go to my conference because it's that important. But there was nothing else that I could find. I don't know of any organizations because if y'all look at your military, your VFWs and your DAVs and all that, they are swindling. The young people are coming out of service with 100%. Four years of service, and they're coming out with 100%. They're not joining these organizations. They're not working with that. So there's, I haven't found any Commissioner Crutler that I can find funds from.
And there's just a company that's going to your conference?
Somewhere around $1,500. But, you know, they knew I was going to pay it because that's my passion. And I get to talk to Doug Collins, who's the new secretary. I met him in Washington. I was just in a meeting in Washington called the Leadership. And we'd go around and talk to our representatives. But they bring all the VA in there, and we get to do one-on-one. And he said, here's my autograph. I said, no, sir, I don't want your autograph. I want you for five minutes. I said, I'll get your autograph later, but I need to talk to you about veterans. He sat down with me, he said, I didn't know that. I was asking him things. He said, I don't know about that. I said, let me tell you how it's worked in the past. He said, I didn't know that. I will know more when you see me again. I said, yes, sir, and we'll talk more. But that's what these meetings mean is that I get to talk with the doctor that is in charge of the all-of-the-A exams, tell them what the veterans are saying, that the VA is now sending them out to contracts, and they're nurse practitioners or PAs, general practice. And they get paid by these four different agencies to do the exams for the veterans. Nine out of 10 of them come back denied. Denied. They say, oh, you don't have that. And they come back to me, and we appeal it, and we win it. But they're paid $800 for a 15-minute visit to say that they have looked at that veteran's records, and this is their decision. And a nurse practitioner can override a doctor out of Duke because the VA has to take the VA's rating. That's what we're fighting, is to get that done away with and get it back where the veteran's doctor gets to present the information. What you're saying is, I thank you for that, and I wish that there was someplace that we could find funds because our veterans do deserve more. I could have a lot more veterans in this county treated, but we don't have the staff. And this is a blessing, what y'all gave me, somebody to answer the telephone. Yesterday, I never ate lunch because I ran to get something from Walmart and picked up my lunch and brought it back, and there was three people sitting there. I put it on the table. They came in. I took my lunch home with me at 7:00.
Ms. Ann, I understand what you're talking about by having work. It's very important to go to those conferences. You gain so much knowledge and get so much help from other people that are working, doing the same job you're doing. And it's important, not only for the veteran department, but everybody. I mean, one trip is not going to hurt anybody because when you go to a conference, you're going to learn. It's not vacation. You have seminars sometime all day. I've been in workshops up to 9:00 at night sometime, learning and seeing what, you know, I can do to help somebody. And it's good training.
Well, and I appreciate that. And I thank this county for standing behind me all these years. Mr. Hudson has been a very good person to work with. He didn't ask me to cut out, but I listened to his presentation and where we were at. And veterans did everything they could to cut. And we cut as much as we could. And I don't think there was any problem with that.
Commissioner, with the finding of the extra vehicle that we cut out, we could afford to put $1,500 back in 53111 or 531100 travel if the board would like to do that. It's, we don't have tons of money, but $1,500 we could handle inside the cuts that we found at the places.
I think--
I got lotion on the floor.
But you don't even need a motion. If it's the consensus of the board, will it make the adjustment? But only if it's consensus of the board. Your vote happens with the budget order.
I got you.
But three of us are taking notes. Nancy will take notes on that. And I have an increase of $1,500 to travel line, 531100. Page 244 of your budget book, if you wanted to jot that down. Your organizations can still help with other incidentals because I know that $1,500 won't quite do all of it.
No, it's not the hotel room.
That would cover a lot of it.
That's right.
Well, this is a surprise, and I thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Sampson County has been good to me. And that's, I pay it back every day because veterans are what, if we didn't have these veterans, we wouldn't have this country.
That's right. That's right.
And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ann. But now, what I will encourage you is, if you run across something that we can help you with as far as generating a dollar here or there or whatever, or something just don't make sense, if we can help, don't be scared to reach out to us or whoever.
We've never done that before.
Well, like I said, I'm not scared to stand in front of the people in Raleigh and tell them that they're wrong, and it don't bother me a bit, so.
Well, I'm-- There's going to be a fight in Raleigh. And I've already left a message for our senator. Them, the VA, the state said that we're-- the state didn't give your parents anything, didn't give y'all anything when you come out of service. And we had the scholarship, and they're cutting all of the competitive scholarships. And the law doesn't say they can do it. And that's the reason I was calling Senator Jackson. The state tried to take our $2,000 away a couple of years ago. And I went and met with Senator Jackson and said, please look at this. And he said, you're right. Give it back. And I don't know if y'all have gotten that yet, the $2,000. $2,000 and some dollars. And I know, have you gotten the--
I've got $12,000. It should come back in July.
Okay. Okay, but I need to reach out to get that $2,000. Okay.
I've gotten $8,000 over $20,000.
All right.
I want to thank you for your help with the Veterans Council and making sure that we have somebody in our meetings to honor our veterans and our openings. We're appreciative of that.
They are so proud to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
They are so proud. And I encourage all of y'all to come out to our veterans program. Commissioner Godwin's always there, and Ms. Lita's always there. Commissioner Lita. But y'all come, you will see the veterans and how much they appreciate. And we put that on. Ray Jordan, sitting back there, has been the one for, from the first we started. Ray and-- Linda Williamson. We started that program. And Ray, this would be the first, the second year that you did not even see it.
Write the script.
He writes the script. He does everything. So, you know, this county has a lot to be proud of for our veterans.
Thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You go.
Is that the $2,273?
Yes, ma'am.
We need to--
Okay. You got $2,273 more than--
There's no state.
So we're fine.
It's buttoned.
Hey, do you want to get a recess for meal or just get--
Commissioner, the meals, the food's here. So the commissioners want to recess for a short lunch. If you want to do 15, 20 minutes, then I think we're ready. We're ready to go.
I'm good with it. Well, let's, we're going to recess for a short lunch, and then we'll come back and go again. Ready to go back at it. We've changed a little bit of the agenda and just for clarification, I only want to know that our Commissioner Godwin had a funeral and he had to excuse himself. He, I think he's speaking at the funeral and, or doing the funeral. So he'll be back with us and he said that he would definitely be looking at everything and if we had any questions for him or any comments, to make sure we reached out to him this afternoon. So with that said, we will proceed on. Yeah, you go ahead, I'll tell you later.
It's a good opening.
It was, I'm sorry.
You trying to qualify.
It was, it was good. You go ahead, Steve. What were you doing first? I'm sorry, Dan.
Either way, you want me to do senior services first?
Senior services.
Senior services.
Roll in.
So with aging services, has actually been suggested to change to senior services. So that'll be something that'll change as a department name, if that's something that we want to do moving forward. The reason that we kept it aging services is that's what all the programs from the state are listed. So that's why we had to change it in the past because usually when people come looking for you, they're looking for a state funded program. So with us, this year, we have two positions that we've given up. One was a position that we hadn't filled in the past couple of years. We basically, during COVID, it was very difficult to find in-home aid nurses. And at one point, we had a very large amount of in-home aid nurses and that was a source of revenue for the county. And so we hired a position that specifically worked with those nurses. Since COVID, it has been very difficult to find in-home aid nurses. They're a hot commodity, so we did not fill that position because we didn't have enough that I felt like mandated a full-time. And I do not see that need going forward, so that's where one of those physicians came from. The other one was a full-time RN that signs off on our paperwork for our CAT VA program. And the CAT VA program basically keeps people in their home. It gives nursing home level care, but it gives it in the home. So most of the people that receive this service, if they didn't receive it in-home, they'd be going to a nursing home on state funding or federal funding. It's something that we end up, they'd end up in the nursing home. So this is the way that the state is able to keep them in their home and also it reduces the funding a little bit. So that RN full-time position, the state has taken over some of the items that they used to have to take care of. And so I don't see a need for a full-time. I think we're going to be able to cover that through part-time RN or contracted. And then that'll eliminate some of the insurance and other items that you'd have to incur for a full-time. So that's where those two positions came from. So aging services, we receive a large portion of our budget from the state. It's through the Mid-Carolina handles our block grant service. And so our block grant, they come up with a formula from the state that's basically based off your population. So our population, our census is very important to all of our programs. That's how we receive the maximum amount of funding. Fortunately, our census was not great the last time it was done. So our money that we see, our refunding that we receive from them has not increased. We have not received the amount that we're actually going to have for the next year. So that's something that's always going to be difficult with some of the programs where you receive funding from the state is because you're basically going off of what last year's numbers were. So we're, we think we're going to be receiving about the same, that's the word we've gotten from the state, but we haven't actually had the exact numbers. The programs that we offer through senior services, our adult day services, that's over on Fisher Drive, nutrition sites, they're all throughout the county. We partner with the municipalities, they usually give us a building that we can use. And then we do congregate nutrition there and then we also, people can pick up or volunteers deliver home-delivered meals from those sites. We also have a home repairs program. Our home repairs doubles in getting a lot of other grant programs such as urgent repair. Right now, we have a choosing home grant. And then we have information and options counseling. That's where people call in and somebody talks them through what their options are or what their programs that could best suit them. And then in the past couple of years, we've gotten back our family caregiving program. That is something that's got a high need in our county. They offer workshops and counseling for dementia, people that are caregivers that are developing with a lot of it is dementia and other related. But we really have an influx of people that have dementia and Alzheimer's that we're really trying to help in that area. And then we have our senior sites. We have one full-time senior center in Garland and then we have a satellite site in Roseburg. So those are the programs we provide. Any questions that you guys have for me?
The senior center and the one in Roseburg, which account number is that?
So they're all lumped into one. So nutrition takes care of all of the meals that are delivered there. And then senior center specifically, which would be the O255 account.
O25.
O255-8680. That would be specifically senior center.
Is that page seven?
Oh. Yes.
Page seven.
Yes, sir. So for your senior centers, we allocate so much funding from block grant. And then because we are a senior center of excellence, we also receive increased funding that state appropriated to $14,855. That's for being a senior center of excellence. Now I know some of the questions we received from the public is about moving our senior centers so it could be of more use to more of our citizens. The issue of moving that is, we do not have a building that meets the requirements where we could continue to receive that $14,855. To be a senior center of excellence, the building that we have currently is grandfathered in. So if we wanted to move somewhere else, we could move somewhere else, but it would have to meet the requirements to continue to receive that funding.
Right.
Is Harrell's considered as a site?
Harrell's is a nutrition site.
Can't name that so well.
Yes, sir.
What about Ivanhoe? Is Ivanhoe eligible?
Ivanhoe is not a site. Of course, you know, at any point in time, the county can ask to put more nutrition sites. The issue is, the reason that our nutrition sites cost us so much money is because you've got to hire a part-time person to run all those sites. So the partnership that we have with those municipalities, they're paying the utilities and they're allowing us to use the building, but then we have to staff it. So that would be kind of the strain on your budget then, is being able to add another part-time salary. Our county's just so large, that's one of the issues that we face in every department.
It's sort of a burden on the people from Ivanhoe who comes to Harrell's and then go to God.
Right.
It's either one, God or Harrell's. And they have a building that they're continuing working on. I'm sure they would enhance the build. I see you saying, I think they sort of think that's what they are anyway, but they don't have the program.
Right. Yeah, that's one of the challenges. I mean, it's certainly not the only community that faces that challenge. We face the same thing in Clement and some of the Altriville. They're pretty far away from the sites. And, you know, a long time ago, we had some sites in those areas, but just because of reduced funding, we've had to decrease some of those sites and that was done, you know, before I took over, but that was the reason behind it. It's unfortunate, you know, you, we have a heart for it, but it's just, we don't have the funds to go behind it sometimes.
I don't think a lot of people understand what all goes into this department. I was fortunate to sit on the board and see what all you guys do and kind of work through some things in the year. I got to see a lot and I got a mother who is in a, in a center in Hope Mills with dementia. So I, I have a heart for what you're doing for our, and then I know we've got a growing need for it here in the county, so.
Yeah, because our aging population, that's, that's something that's going to be an increased need with Ms. Anne and veterans moving over with us. That's one of the things I think that we're going to be able to partner together to be able to do some things.
I like that.
Because as she mentioned, veterans don't receive a lot of extra things because they are receiving veteran service funding. So that's where the block grant kind of is the go-between. So block grant is mostly for people who cannot receive government funding. So that's kind of the in-between. Now, it's not a huge amount of funding, but there are some areas that we think we're going to be able to help. So that's going to be, that's going to be good that she can, I told her, we probably won't be able to help everybody, but anyone that we can help would be better than none, for sure.
So on the, on the sheet, the cheat sheet here, it says county match senior programs. There'll be an increase to $26,984. What exactly is the increase for again?
So the increase in senior services, and Melissa and Jeff are going to help me with this. Over the past years, it has come to my attention that transportation has actually been funding part of aging's budget. Now, it was not on any of my budget sheets, so I couldn't see that. But it was brought to my attention pretty much when we were doing this budget. So they may want to speak more on it and that's not going to continue because they're, you know, self-funded. So I think the purpose is not to continue putting a self-funded program into.
So this is Sampson County Transportation, the state taking seniors from their home to the senior center and nutrition feeding sites and then back home?
No. What this was, was in the past, so you have, you have, you've not actually made them enterprise fund departments in a way, but transportation is kind of like water in that it earns its own money through fees and charges and it supports itself. Well, in the past, the county has looked at, at that revenue stream and has said, well, we can also use it to support aging. So they took, just took $200,000 out of transportation and put it in aging. The problem I saw with that is, it's not really right, I think. I, I don't, I think the transportation, they get sources of funding from, from, well, through DSS and we have DSS here. And I thought that, that it may be that at some point in time, someone will have to answer a question. Why is money being paid for transportation that's being taken in by the transportation department ending up in another county department that has nothing to do with transportation?
Well, we will speak to it one time, aging and transportation in one department. And so we think that's probably where that's.
It may have been where it started, but that's been way in the past and the practice of still taking $200,000. So if you, you're only seeing a 20-some thousand dollar increase, it's because the rest of that 200 has already been cut, cut from the budget. And I saw our friends from DSS looking at each other a moment ago and doing this. So if, if y'all, with your permission, Commissioners, is this Medicare Medicaid funding? If, if they have an insight onto that practice?
Well, now we know that we, we've been, Medicaid pays for that. So that money has been paid for that service, it's spilled through, it's reimbursed and what happens after that?
We'd rather not know. Okay. Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot there, but it, it just seems, it just seems cleaner keeping transportation money inside transportation.
That makes sense.
Is there any way that we could find savings of $26,000 in senior center services in order to make it look cleaner on the budget?
Not without reducing services. And then to Ms. Lee's point, you'd have to, you'd have to choose which area that you're going to cut from.
Are there services currently being offered that are very low-demand services? More or less like a, for instance, just say a particular nutrition site that is throwing away a lot of food where seniors aren't going. I know that I've heard people in Roseburg complaining that not enough people go to the Charles E. Perry site. They go to a independent church feeding site instead that's in town and he's not related to the county. And so they're, but he is providing a ministry through his church and people go there. Instead of Charles E. Perry, it's a lot of food's getting thrown away. Would possibly closing the Charles E. Perry site save $26,000?
No. No, so it doesn't cost you. So the school system has a partnership with us where they don't charge us to use that facility. And so the way that all of aging's programs work is, you can only bill for the service that you provide. So we only get reimbursed if we provide that meal. So to say that we could order in bulk and then if nobody comes, we can just throw that away, that's not how it works. There's a check and balance. So whatever meal we order has to go for a person that's already signed up. They can't just show up. So you couldn't order bulk amount and then throw it away. So there's checks and balances with all the state programs to ensure that the person that's getting the meal is already signed up and is actually showing up to get those meals.
How many people are showing up to?
Roseburg.
The Roseburg senior site?
For Roseburg, you have 22 to 24 that are active. And the 24, two of those were hospitalized and so they're inactive right now, but usually about 22 people show up there.
And that's Saturday of the week, Monday through Friday?
That's how many people use it. On average, there's nine meals per day served. So there's other people that are using that facility that are not getting the meal. And most of the people that don't get the meal is just because we don't have the funding to sign any more people up. So like our home-delivered meal, there's 165 people on a waitlist right now that we just don't have the funding to provide any more meals.
That's a lot of questions. Any more questions?
I just believe that every dollar that seniors get is an investment for Sampson County because our seniors have given so much to us. Right now, you can ask for advice and they can give it to you. And it's just a place for them to go and unite with other people their age and, and talk and have fun. And I don't see anything wrong with that. If I had the money, I would fund it myself. I love it. In fact, my husband and I started the one in, in Harrell's. It was very dear to him because of his mother. His mother had Alzheimer's. And he felt like if she'd have had someplace to go to be with people, she wouldn't have gotten it. And it was possible that would have been true. But that was what laid on his heart to do and he, he didn't rest until it got started and got up and running. And you said, you know how it was and how it is now. I just think the county, the state and everybody for everything that they do for our seniors is a blessing.
And Harrell's would be a really good example of a real working partnership. So they received some funds to where we've worked together to help get that center back where it needed to be to meet the requirements. So really, they provided the funding, we did some in-kind work for them. So that's kind of how our partnerships work with the municipality. You know, we don't have the money to fix up their sites that they allow us to use, but a lot of times, we can offer some in-kind.
Do you see a way to reduce your budget another 2%?
Not without reducing services.
Thank you for that. Are you, are you willing to roll along with recreation? Keep getting them while you're sitting in the hot seat.
So for recreation, right now, our focus is currently on youth sports and that is much due to the fact that our budget is low for the amount of people that we're servicing in this county. You know, this is not unlike any other program that we have. When you're serving such a large area, just a lot of your funding goes into just having to have so many staff to cover that large landmass. In your summary here, you can kind of do a quick overview. We have eight total staff. One of our staff is actually shared with aging, so we share a front desk person. That is calculated in both Nancy's, so that's something that if, if you're totaling up, that may be where you see an overage. We did offer up some cuts this year and we couldn't cut but so much. So we cut a little over $10,000. But what we did, where I felt like we couldn't cut anymore without reducing our services drastically or choosing an area that we weren't going to be able to serve, is we did offer up for our maintenance department to take over lawn and landscaping for the county complex and the expo center. So that was another way that we felt like we could do something in-kind to help. So that, we'll be taking over that in July. Every year, our growth and participation has increased. This year, we're servicing over 1,700 youth. And then that doesn't really show, paint a picture of how many people we're actually servicing, what we're doing as far as partnerships with the schools. So I did want to mention briefly as to what we do with our schools. We do not have any of our own indoor facilities. So we, we have to have this partnership, a good relationship with the schools to be able to use their GMs. And then we also use a lot of their athletic fields too. So, you know, we don't, we're not at the luxury where we are able to keep up two systems that are separate. So a lot of times, we help them. So like Clement Elementary School, we purchased a volleyball system for there. We replaced a volleyball system at Hobton Middle School for them because we both use that. So that's something that we purchased. It's ours, but we both use it. Same thing for Roseburg-Salenburg Union, we replaced a scoreboard for them. Midway Middle School, last year, their football scoreboard wasn't working, so my maintenance guy went over there and helped them got it back working. So we try to do some in-kind stuff. We don't have a lot of extra funding. We maintain Clement ballparks solely. We've done a lot of work at Union Middle School. They've had a lot of turnover with their coaches and their athletic director. So we've helped them with their fields, redo them, helped replace some tin and stuff on some of their dugouts. But the full picture would be, we're almost done if it will stop raining with baseball, softball season. But our average attendance nightly is 519 people at our games. So if you're thinking about 1,700 people that we serve over the year, that may not sound like a large amount, but if you're thinking about 519 people a night, that's three nights a week because we usually don't play the Wednesday nights here and then Fridays are for rainouts. So that's, we're doing about 519 people a night. And with the amount of staff that I have, two of those are maintenance guys, so they're not working at night. They're just doing fields and cutting the grass during the way. Two admin or one and a half admin, myself and the lady that works at the front. And then the rest are your staff and they're scheduled, they're in actual school districts. It's how we break apart the county. So we have one Midway, Hobton, Union, Lakewood. So 519 people a night, they're responsible for managing and four of them are managing those at each site and are running at least three sites a night.
Dan, if you would, talk for a moment about your recreation fees. Because board, in addition to expenditures, when we hit some parts of the fee schedule, that's important. And also, we did just receive $7,500 from Monarch Bioleerrancy and they asked that that be earmarked to help reduce fees for, for some families that might not be able to afford it. So there's actually some budget amendment that we'll have to do to budget that $7,500 to help on the fee side. How you might be able to administer that to help?
Yes.
Multiple child families or low-income families, I don't know.
Yes, so we did increase our fees. We increased our fees from $30 a person to $50 a person. Before the cuts, at our meetings, we had already put in to raise them to $40 a family. And then with the need to increase, we went up to 50. So I have a major concern with that because I feel like there are areas of our county that can easily pay 50, but there are also a lot of our county that cannot, or they will not be able to pay for multiple children to participate at $50. So to offset that, we've reached out to some business, Monarch being the first one. They gave us $7,500 to offset that. So that wouldn't offer a free participation, that would offset the cost. So the family would still be paying the 30 and then they would offset that extra. So we're coming up with a scholarship program because what we don't want to happen is people to apply that really don't need that and use up that funding that we're graciously giving. And then something else that we've looked to, we're not sure how much money that we'll receive, is a sponsorship program. In the past, when I first got here, we looked into doing sponsorships for different businesses. The issue that we had is when I was going out and talking to these businesses, they would say, I already gave it to the school this year, but if you'll let me know at this time next year, I'll split it. And I just felt like splitting that between the school and us was really going to hurt our relationship with the schools. Because we were a partner with the schools, we were using their facilities and now we're going to be taking part of the money that they were depending on for their sports team. So that's why in the past, we haven't done it. But that's something that we're working with the schools with. We're very close with the athletic directors to make sure that we're not targeting the same businesses. So we're going to be doing that moving forward as well.
And what, you're talking about team sponsorship, season sponsorships?
So that'd be team sponsorship. So the program that we've kind of put together is it's $400 to sponsor a team or you can sponsor a team each sports season, which would be four times a year for $1,500. So basically, if you do it all year long, you get a $100 rebate. So you get $100 off. So you get a hundred dollars off. So that's what our thought is. And then larger businesses, we're going to try to keep that scholarship fund. So yes, we have seventy-five hundred dollars this year, but we want to keep that fund going because as it looks, this is going to be, you know, the budget that we're going to have to move with forward. So it may be a need to increase fees again next year, I'm not sure. But keeping that scholarship money will allow more kids to continue playing. Because what I don't want to see happen is we go from over seventeen hundred kids this year to a thousand. Because those kids are going to be doing something. And it's typically not going to be productive if they're left alone. Because if you stop by one of our games or practices, nine times out of ten, a lot of kids are getting dropped off. So the only supervision that they're under is that coach that's there with him and the staff that's there for that night. So if they're left with us alone, I just feel like they're going to be left somewhere else alone. And at least when they're with us, it's a productive environment.
Dana, I'm just so glad that you reached out to Monarch for that scholarship. Because we all know the reality, that there are some people and some families that cannot pay fifty dollars per child, especially if they have three children. That's one hundred and fifty dollars. And they want those children to participate in sport. It's important to them. So by you reaching out, getting that grant that's going to help families, that's commitment to me. I appreciate it. Because what we're here for is to help everybody that we can in Sampson County. And that's a good way to do it. Thank you.
And Jeff actually started that relationship by reaching out to them. So I want to make sure that he gets the credit that he deserves. He reached out to them.
Thank you.
And made that contact. So that seems like it's going to be a good working relationship for the future.
And they also contributed seventy-five hundred to the library.
Oh, wow.
So fifteen thousand total. But if the library and if Ms. Hall didn't have programs and wasn't able to justify things, they wouldn't have gotten the money.
That's right.
So I just put people in touch, and then they took it from there.
That's good. That's great.
But to your point, we do have households that reach out to us and say, "I don't have the money up front." And a lot of them are bus drivers that work in our school system, and they'll pay us five dollars a week until they can pay for their kids to play. So it's not that they don't want to pay it, it's just sometimes they can't pay it all up front.
On the maintenance, the grass matters, since you're going to be providing more, I guess, coverage of more acres, do you have to buy additional lawnmower?
Yes. So we're buying one additional small more. We're buying some hedge trimmers, a couple additional trimmers. But that's not something that has increased the budget. I think that's something that we were able to take out of this year.
We took it out of this year's budget. So we didn't put it in next year's. So they're ready to start mowing immediately.
Okay.
Because grass will keep growing in July.
And they're going to treat for fire ants, too, which is something that we've not had a contract in the past, so that's.
So I'm asking every department head, how can we cut another two percent? For you, that would be fifteen thousand dollars roughly.
I think you would be cutting out a sports season, or you'd be cutting out an area that you're going to offer that to.
Is there a particular sport that's very, that's less popular than others?
No.
Equally popular?
Yeah, the least participation that we have is for camps. But camps is actually where we receive the most revenue because we don't have to pay for uniforms or officials. So that's kind of the double-edged sword with us is what can you add that's really popular that's not going to cost a lot of money?
I think my wife's already planning on signing my son up for one of them.
Yeah.
So I better not cut that.
Well, if you need help on the camp side, as far as let's reach out and do a little more encouraging to grow that, I think we can help somewhere.
Okay.
We've got ways and means that we didn't have before that we can do that. So I just think we need to be a little bit more proactive as far as how we're getting out to everybody and letting them be informed is the biggest thing. But I think we've got some parents that still do not have the certain things they need to know what's going on. And sometimes, I know you do it through the school system, but sometimes the kids don't get it home. I just want to, I guess that's my challenge to you, is to find us a better way to communicate with some of the less that have.
Yeah, and that may be something that we can talk to Mr. King about. As in the past, when Mr. Johnson was here in a different capacity, we were able to use their all-call system to be able to reach. But there's been some changes over the years, and so that may be an area that we can talk to him about.
Yeah, we could. I think that would work great because I actually had a daughter who moved back home with me this year. And I was in the eighth grade this year, and she, I got her all-call. Every time I turned around, my phone was going off. And they use that now in schools. Use it. I can give them that. So I think that would be a great relationship to start at, too. I would let see it grow from seventeen to twenty-five, or, you know, who knows? Where it could go.
Yep.
I'll let see as many people involved as we possibly could get. I have a coach's background. I love kids, so this is my heart.
Yeah, we're not too far off from when the department actually started. We were in between twenty-five hundred and three thousand. So we're etching back up. Every year, we've grown.
I think we're good there. Thank you.
When you first started, is that due to COVID, or?
No, when the department started, so back in the early two thousands when the department started, there was a larger amount. Actually, during COVID, we did pretty good because we were about the only place in the state that Mr. Robinson worked with us to be able to continue. So we, as long as it was outside, and it met the requirements, and we met the requirements. So we were able to continue. I think a lot of what changed from the beginning of the department to now is that at the very beginning, they weren't taking into consideration the travel constraints. So they were having people drive from the Altria Hill area all the way to Harrells to play games or stuff like that. And then so people just kind of started dropping out and going to a different, if they were going to have to travel, they traveled closer to a neighboring county. So we don't do that anymore. We do neutral playing sites is what we call it. And so they meet at a different location. It's maybe not their home site, but they meet at a neutral playing site to do that. We've worked with Clinton sometimes to do it as well. So.
And that leads me to my final question. I'll leave you alone.
That's okay.
Is one, a Clinton resident in my district was complaining about the fact that the county and the city no longer interplay. Is there a possibility that we could re-approach that next year?
Yeah, I think there's always a possibility. My biggest issue is lowering our standard. Their coaches do not meet the same criteria for background checks as we do. Their code of ethics for their spectators is not the same as ours. And that's when you start having some issues, when the expectations are not the same. And then sometimes, even though they interplay with us, when they play at home against two Clinton teams, they play by one set of rules. But when they play us, we play by the set of rules we all agreed on to start with. So sometimes that kind of has an issue. However, they are under new leadership. Garrett Bryant's there. He actually worked for Sampson County Park and Recreation years ago. And so I think, you know, he's trying to address some of those issues so we can move back to that. But until those are addressed, I don't think it would be a very good, well, I just don't think it would be very good. I think you'd start receiving more complaints about the inconsistencies.
Thank you.
If you've ever worked a recreation game, there is nothing more vocal or violent than upset mom.
Yeah. And that's one of the things that's got me a little bit nervous about this budget, is we did cut out the security for games because that's one of our highest. That's one of the things that's more expensive, and so that does have us a little bit nervous. Sheriff Thornton's still going, he's going to try to make sure he has people in the area when we're playing games that were spread out so far. That's just something that is an area of concern for me because we do have people that sometimes can get out of hand at those games.
I'm sure the sheriff, if you call him, he'll get someone there pretty quick, so. Any other questions from the Board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Mr. Chairman, we have DSS in the room. If it would be possible to bring them up next, that'd be great.
Go along.
And we also have Q to Economic Development and the Health Department. Okay, Ben, come on up. Y'all are welcome to bring your chairs. Here's another chair. Commissioners, you're going to get an update and cover sheet.
Okay. Ms. Ross, when you go back, can you take Eric with you and give him a shot? But he's throwing germs over there everywhere.
I called Tellabout yesterday, but I was right eligible for it at the bottom of the sign.
Why don't you miss an opportunity there?
I know. I'm trying to get in there. Couldn't see us.
But before we see him, that's what you said, "Let's talk about the budget." Yeah, maybe you say, "We'll see about how we..." Yeah, how much is this penicillin worth to you?
There you go. Y'all got it?
Commissioners, on your cheat sheet, page fifty-three, middle of the page, County Match Social Services, you'll see they've gone down four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Tell everything you need. I think it's the same thing under it, so. You ready?
Yeah.
It's on you.
Great. Well, as Mr. Hudson said, we definitely have decreased. And I know the question is coming, and we're just going to go out there and say, "Can we cut more?" Y'all absolutely can. However, the service has got to be provided. Therefore, what's really being cut is the outcome. The outcome is what will change, and that will mean your timeliness reports, delay in services for the citizens, and mistakes that can be very costly. So it's either, you know, you save now, but you pay later. Any specific questions about line items or, I know we also got to talk about potentially the hiring freeze. One of the positions we cut was a supervisor two position. Those duties were absorbed by a supervisor three position, and we're still kind of playing that out just to ensure that that's going to work and kind of fine-tuning that process.
What goes into determining or deciding, I guess the previous boards are ultimately the ones to take the responsibility for the decision. But what goes into deciding, recommending why a discretionary program should be added? At some point, these discretionary programs like adult daycare was not provided by Sampson County. And at some point in time, the Board of Commissioners, upon the recommendation of the Department of Social Services, added that as a service.
That service is discretionary in that you may have citizens that are eligible to receive it. So those funds, but the majority of that is federally funded, and then you may have a person who can apply and benefit from it. But it's not a lot of people. And if we don't, sometimes we have the program that's being offered, but nobody to partake in the program. So it's discretionary because you're not always going to have people to, we don't always have to service it, but the money is there. It's, most of it is not county dollars. The county amount is very, very tiny. And again, you don't have a lot of citizens using those discretionary programs. The discretionary programs that we did have, we've closed those off, and those were like the hub where that was a customer service initiative, where we housed a lot of information, and we had somebody actually in the lobby, in that part of the lobby, that maintained the information. So if a person went in there and needed a resource, they knew exactly where to go to get the resource. So that person is no longer there. That was with temp service.
Another example, Mr. Crump, one of the programs that we've cut this year is service referrals for adults. That was more of like a preventative thing. We would get a referral from the community. For example, they might say, "I live next door to an elderly person. I've not seen them come out of their house in two weeks." So we would send an adult services social worker out to do like a welfare check on that person to ensure that they're safe. If unchecked, it could lead to an APHS report, which is mandated. But again, we've cut that. So those service referrals that are made to us now, we will not be checking on situations like that.
So that freed up an employee to do something else?
No, it, those, it didn't free up an employee.
Was it a workload, or?
A little bit, yeah. I mean, our adult services workers have other duties that they're handling. That was just an added task that they handled in addition to their mandated duties.
So it sounds like some of the reason for adding some discretionary funding or programs is because the funding is external funding that the county just has to match a little bit to get the funding for. My question, further question is if we, I see we have, I think, five programs, four programs that are more discretionary. If all of those were eliminated, would that free up your workers to carry more caseloads than the mandated programs?
Can you argue that? I'm sorry.
If you eliminated everything that was discretionary, would that free up workload for your mandated programs? So that?
We've eliminated.
We've eliminated them. They've been eliminated. But the amount of time that they, that task saved is very minimal.
Okay.
Have you cut anything that is mandated that we may be penalized?
No.
Thank God.
But Ms. Lee, I'd like to add that we can still be penalized when workers are doing two or three times the work that they're supposed to be doing because mistakes happen, and your employees will have a DAS or a payback. That's the consequence of our work. We don't, we don't have those scenarios.
And also, with the federal performance measures, if those are not met consecutively throughout, well, two months in a row or five, anyone's, I'm not making any sense. If the federal performance measures are not met, the state will initiate a cap process. And we just got off a cap. So.
For instance.
Yes. And those, again, are your timeliness reports. The, and medicated is.
Self-process.
The processing time, the processing time. So the apps are just sitting out there and not being processed. Which, again, we eliminated two income maintenance positions during this budget process. So, I mean, the work is the work, and it has to be spread among the people that are there.
Well, that's kind of why I was asking about the discretionary programs. Because we can't really afford to add more staff in order to carry these enormous workloads. And so if you eliminate some of the discretionary programs, theoretically, it should free up workload, available work, time to work for these other caseloads that are mandated so we don't get penalized for lagging response times.
And it just goes back to the discretionary program taking up, I mean, it might have been one, were it two cases for the individual and family adjustment. So two cases were closed that didn't require a lot of time to work.
It's such a slither of time that it was really not even, it didn't even touch.
I'm assuming that that part works like it did when I was over there. If you were late processing a case, you were penalized. And most of the workers, they had their own caseload. They don't have time to do my caseload or help my caseload because each person is responsible for their own cases. So I can't see taking away workers that's going to cause us to be impolite because we're going to pay either way. Because whether we pay through employing people or pay through penalizing. And I assume that that's still the case because fifty dollars adds up.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And then when we see somebody falling behind, it's all hands on deck and try to... And then when we see somebody falling behind, it's all hands on deck to try to get that work done, to reduce any penalty. But then you have people doing double work and.
Stressed out.
Stressed out, or we're having to ask for overtime to get the work done, which is still costly.
Right.
This in-home aid program, I'm assuming that's just, it's a program to help prevent people from going into long-term facilities, so it's more a cost-saving measure for those. I think a lot of people in this county don't realize, you know, when you think of social services, most people say welfare.
Yeah.
But they don't realize that everybody of any socioeconomic status utilizes social services along with term care options for seniors. And those with special needs. So you're looking at this, I just said the in-home aid program, I'm assuming that's a cost-saving measure to help prevent somebody from a long-term care facility, do some type of savings. Is that my solution correct?
Yes.
Do you see any cuts in long-term care? Because it's talking about administrations, talking about cutting Medicaid, Medicare.
So we are, we just had that conversation. They could bring about also work requirements. And with that comes a recertification of every six months instead of yearly. So if you're having to recertify somebody every six months, that's more work, because you're having to touch that case more often.
And then again, Ms. Lee, with the performance measures that she just mentioned, and I don't think we mentioned that those are, I guess ninety-five percent is the goal or better. Ninety-five percent is high.
It's very, very strenuous and very complicated. You have to be seen it and be in it to understand how it works and what goes on. I mean, it's just not a whole bunch of cases and everybody doing. Everybody is responsible for their own caseload. And if you're responsible for your own caseload, you don't have time to do mine. I worked in it, I know you just don't have time to do anything but yours. The day I walked out, I had a thousand cases, and that was way too many, way too many. So I don't know how many y'all got now, because I haven't even looked at it. But it's, it's not, it's very stressful, that's all I got to say. And when you're stressed out, you cannot function for your job, your work, or your family. And we don't want that to happen, because we want you to stay healthy. So you can do these jobs, because they're so hard to replace. People know how stressful they are.
Absolutely, and I fear that we're most likely going to lose even more people. I mean, we're not getting a COLA. Insurance is increasing. The workload is high, stress is high. Losing position just creates a higher workload. The scale back on the flex schedules really has dampened morale. So it's just like the perfect storm. It's not one thing, it's the perfect swarm of all of these things combined that will most likely lead to people leaving. You know, they can cross county lines and they can change jobs, the same stress for more money.
I sympathize with you. I can really sympathize with you.
What liabilities do you identify to the county?
I mean, the higher the caseload goes, the easier it is to make mistakes. So if there's two staff, but one's in training, one's got to kind of do the majority, timeframes are not going to be met, or you're going to make an easy mistake of, you know, I thought I could wait to do this, there's so many tasks I'd have to, all the tasks are important. So how do I prioritize the most important that are related to safety, to keeping children safe and adults safe?
So our CPS and APS is probably the highest liability areas in social services.
I would say, I would say. And for example, right now, we have the investigator, the CPS investigators who address abuse and neglect. We have nine positions. Of those nine positions, we currently have, two of those are in training, so that's just like a vacancy. Then we have two vacancies. So that's four, you have five workers who are assessing all of the abuse and neglect in our entire county. And one of those has decided recently, a couple of weeks ago, that she, she's not getting any more cases because she wants to be transferred to another section because of the stress and workload. So really, you have four workers right now in rotation getting all of the cases in our county.
What is the average, average amount of cases a year, child protective and APS?
Well, if you'll notice, the graph that I gave you, the chart, if you look, there's one for adult services and.
Should have also been in the budget message. I think they're the same calendar year, right?
Yes. If you'll notice, the one for children, this is child welfare. So these numbers include CPS as well as foster care. And you can see this goes from 2020 to 2024. The first column there is just number of reports made. The next column is the number of reports accepted, because we don't accept every report that's made. We have to go by what the statute and policy gives us jurisdiction over. And then you have the number of two are investigated. Let's just look at that. So you've got, you know, nine positions. Let's just say if all of our positions were filled, our nine CPS workers were investigated. They, last year, they investigated a thousand and ninety-three children. And the amount of requirements that the state has us doing, we just don't go in and address the abuse or neglect. We have to address, because it's not, say you get a family that has one child or five children, you've got to report on that one kid. You have five victims. So it's not just one kid, it's five kids that you're assessing. But you're not only assessing those five children, you have to assess all of the adults in the home. So you got a mom and dad and grandma. You're assessing all of their, the well-being, the mental health issues, the medical. There's so much information that those social workers have to, are required to gather. There's requirements on how often they have to be seen. If it's a nervous case, they have to see all five of those children each week. And sometimes more depending on what it is. They, thank goodness for our Child Advocacy Center that we started back in, I think it was 2011, because if we had a child sex abuse case or a physical abuse case, we were driving to Fayetteville, Chapel Hill, Greenville to take them to get a required child medical exam. You can't take a child to the ER or to their pediatrician. Those doctors are not certified to look at child abuse, medical child abuse cases or physical child abuse. It has to be a special kind of doctor. So there's just a lot that goes into our cases. We did home visits, we have to do body inventories. These workers are stressed. They are stressed, and it's hard to even take a vacation. Because when you come back, you've got two or three cases that have been added. You don't just not get cases because you're not here. So we, we want to talk about our turnover rates in social work.
Well, let me rephrase this.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask just a general question here. And I understand you've got the human resource aspect of it as far as the pay, the insurance system. I understand that. But moving forward in the next two to three years, what challenges do you perceive, and we're going to take into account the human resources stuff, the salary and all that stuff, that's a given. But what other challenges do you see at the Department of Social Services that we're going to have to end up addressing?
We are moving into PATHNC, which is a system that child worker programs use. Years ago, we piloted what was called NCFAST. I don't know if anybody remembers that. So we've been in this NCFAST system, and the state was gonna, we were going to do that all through one hundred counties. We were one of the first eleven counties. Issues with that system, they have now left that system alone and are moving to a new system called PATHNC. So they just started, I want to say this week, incorporating counties into that new system. We have not rolled into that new system, but when it does come to us, which is going to be fall of this year, it's going to be a learning curve. So not only do we have to do everything she just described, but we now have to work in a new system that we're not familiar with. And everything is, everything has to happen so fast. So it's like, I've got to key this, input this, read this, document this. And you're not even familiar in the setting that you're doing it in. So I'm concerned about that. And of course, it's going to come with hiccups, because it's a new system. So that changes, the administration changes are going to lead, I think, to policy changes. Also, the fact that we can't do any out-of-county travel outside of anything for certifications or licensure. So a lot of the social workers, yes, are going to their required training. But there are other trainings that are very helpful that are not required that we're not able to go to. So it's like, I'm in the dark because I'm not, I don't, I'm not exposed to things that I need to be exposed to. I have to work in a new system, and the work is stagnant.
I want to build on that. When I first started in 2022, I had heard that hiring a fully qualified, experienced social worker was common. Those days are over. There's a fourteen point oh eight reduction in enrollment in BSW programs across the state. We're not getting the candidates that we used to get. Not only that, when we get them, they're starting at complete zero. They're starting at ground zero, they know nothing. They're thrown into this world, they're sent to free service, and we have great people that they work with. We do, we have great people that they work with. But imagine not having been in a teacher education program and then just getting tossed into a classroom. Then throw child abuse on top of that, and scarring circumstances and trauma. It's going to get worse. It's going to be a challenge.
Another challenge, just what she said. How are we going to recruit to this county when we're surrounded by counties that pay more? They come here for a training ground. They might stay six months, a year, and then we've invested, when social workers come, they have to go through a seven-week free service. They can't even carry a caseload until they've been through this.
They cannot have direct client contact before this seven-week training.
They get trained, they might stick around for, you know, a few months. We have, I think our veteran worker in CPS ran an experience for two years.
Your average supervisor, how much, how many years of experience does an average supervisor have?
They've got to have at least two to be a supervisor. But most of ours are about five. Well, that might be senior management.
Senior management is about five, but the social work supervisors, about two.
Two point five.
So you're a young ageist.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Who are very career-driven.
I'm not just kidding.
Means that they might be likely to find regular bachelor's.
I can see where you're coming from with all of this, especially about the conferences and going out to see what other people with like-minded and liked jobs that you had. It's very important that you understand what they do, so you can come back and incorporate it into what you're doing here in Sampson County. That way, you know that you're on the right track. That's the only way.
And especially because the policymakers are sometimes out of touch. So if they don't, if you're not expressing the reality, you know, things are changing and policy is changing, and then it's too late to do anything about it. But if you're at the table and able to give input, that can be taken into consideration.
It's training within itself, that's what I used to call it, because it was, it's very important. And it's not to say that things are going to be this way always. Nothing is as it is always. The counties that I'm buying right now, and I know everybody that has seen the budget, seen things that are going on, understand that. Another year, it may be where everybody getting big raises like you did last year. But it's, it's hard to say that that's going to happen now because of where we are. It's not that you're not appreciated, because God knows I know what the work is. I know what you do, and I know how important the work is that you do. So that's not the case, it's just other circumstances.
Absolutely.
That's going to stop us from doing what we know is right to do. So you just ask that you just stick with us and hold tight until, till it come. Hopefully, it won't be that long down the road. I'm not promising. I'm not promising anything, I'm just saying I hope and pray that it's not wrong.
One of the things I've been asking every department is, because I'm aware that the COLA is an issue and that we need to, we don't provide one this year, which we're not planning on providing. We'll need to provide one next year. And we'd really need to provide a flat budget for the next three years in order to stabilize the county finances, so that would mean no COLA for three years. Only way to provide a COLA would be a broken tax base and continued reduction of spending in areas where we're competitive. So in an effort to help you get a COLA next year, have to make fifteen percent more out of your budget this year.
I honestly don't see an area that can be cut without increasing the liability. Can we cut? Yes. It might require us to come back to the table and ask for a budget amendment if we get an influx of children, if, you know, something goes awry. But that is going to come with a liability that's going to cost us way more.
Liability because.
Of a debt.
Risk workload and people fall through the cracks and negligence.
Absolutely. I mean, counties are being taken over. Grants County has been taken over by the state, and it happens when, all these home visitors are due. And I've got to do, they've got to do the best they can, but what if they miss that one child? The one child that hasn't been seen for a while, and then they had marks and bruises we were not aware of. And all it takes is one case to just kind of blow up.
Too late.
I know you don't want the state to come in, you don't want them to come in, because it's bad news for every department. So they look at everything.
I do appreciate what you're doing. I know it hurts to leave the COLA. So we understand, we're all in a bind, we're in the same boat together. Thank you for the pitch you've offered up and for the work you're doing.
Thank you. I know that decisions are going to be hard, so thank you.
Haven't even heard from these ladies. Y'all the I can't even do this. No, I do appreciate everything y'all have done, and I will, I'd appreciate what everybody in this county has done. I mean, the people who work in this county have done an outstanding job. And credit goes to you guys. I mean, we're really trying to make the numbers come together for everyone. And you're giving us the information and the ability to do some things. And please let your people know that we are, that we're in it with them, that it's not, they're not sending them to the wolves, that we're out here with them, and we're going to do everything we can to manage things going forward. So it gets, I'm hoping, I rode a road down twice, and I've underlined, I just underlined it two or three more times. It's called retention. I'm a big person on retention. I believe that we're better to keep the people we have. It's cheaper to pay them, less mistakes are made. I am a retention person. If you don't believe it, go to my office and look at all my old folks I'm working at my place of business. We're all old and we're out and don't care, we still go get it. That's what we do.
This is my twentieth year. I grew up in this community, I graduated from Clinton High School. I have, I was a CPS social worker for many years, Patty was, then we supervised. There's been many times when I wanted to go to another county because they paid more, but I want to do social work here, I want to do my, I want to serve this community. And I, I know that there are other workers at DSS who feel that way, but as you said, we're, I think you said it, Mr. Crump, but we're a young ageist, and a lot of workers don't feel that way, and where there's not loyalty. So that makes our recruitment and retention even more headless.
Mr. Pope, that's the young ageist.
And oddly enough, oddly enough, post-COVID, Gen Z, they're now seeking jobs in education, which I never thought I would see. I left education and came here and go back into human resources. But Gen Z is looking for the flexibility of education, the lower hours, the time off during the summer. That's something that we can't offer to them. We have long ways.
That time off in the summer stuff, it ain't working for me right now.
Never worked out for me either. But we're just not going to continue to get that same applicant pool.
Well, my sinus medication has kicked in, so I'm more vocal now. One thing, one thing that I would encourage you guys to do is the stigma associated with social services. We need to do a better job of educating our citizens on the programs and how it impacts all people. I don't think as service providers, you know, we do a good job of doing that and struggling what we do to the citizens. Because like I said, you know, you admit to social services and you know somebody, that's just welfare program. But I don't think they understand the various aspects. We need to do a better job recruiting the foster, I know we've got a serious issue with foster parents. But even with foster parents, just can't, we've got, we've got to come up with some solutions and advertising and doing those things to help to get services provided. I appreciate everything you guys have done, like I said. I woke up now, so.
I've got to ask one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I asked to share some. Because I asked to share some. And I told him then that I was going to ask other departments. In the past five years, how many likes of people of color have been promoted in your agency?
I do not have an exact number on that, but I can get one for you.
Okay.
And email that to you.
Okay.
But recently, quite a few actually.
Qualified, I meant. Qualified. I forgot to keep that in there. Qualified, yes, lots of people.
We can get that, absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
Because when the public asks us these type of questions, we need to have an answer. And I haven't been having any answers for anybody, and that's not good.
Well, I will put that together for you, absolutely.
You have more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Ms. Chairman, the Health Department's here and they're up on your budget or your timetable next. Also, if Ray can still hang out, just as soon as the Health Department's ever ready, we can do Economic Development if you like. Commissioners on the, on the Health Department budget. I just lost it.
You barked, you barked some updates.
Okay, great. We can go ahead and hand those out. You have new updated cover sheets for the Health Department. Overall, the county match for public health, it was originally $2,034,261. And it's $1,514,024. This is inclusive of reductions in personnel as well. It's about a $520,000 decrease. And thank you for bringing the new cover sheets. Manliest questions on the board, but yeah.
So do I need to, um, oh. I'm ready to get started.
Oh, you're it?
Yes, sir.
Well, you, you just, you proceed on. How's that? We're with you.
So I think you all have met Tamra and you all have met Cory. And they're here also to answer questions that I can't answer, so I wanted to show that we were going to do. This is our time, as Mr. Hudson told us before. This is our time, so we want to use it. And just as, I think Mr. Hudson has just told you what our difference is. We've been asked to cut and we've gone through and cut as much as we could. You'll see that right now we do, I did, there's a difference with three physicians that we've lost. And those physicians were, they were vacant, but it was two interpreters and my front desk person. So I, in my highlights, you'll see the first bullet is staff recruitment and retention. As DSS just talked about a few minutes ago. Very important to us to see that. We have had a lot of turnover, especially in my clinical department. And Mr. Colby, I talk about this all the time, is that I guess it's just the business is that we're going to have reservations and those kinds of things. So, but right now, I too, y'all, looking for a social worker too. I do have two social workers in the Health Department that do case management services. We have offered, it's been vacant for a while because it was a nurse position before. We reclassified thinking that we could get a social worker, but it has been just as difficult to get a social worker as it was a nurse. So that was one of our challenges. I do need two nurses, and you can see what that, those two positions, how long they've been vacant. And a billing clerk. We talked about this the last time we met in that, the physician's been open since January. And billing is our saving grace. If we can't bill for the services that we do, that's going to affect our revenue. So that is very, very important, and that position's been vacant since January. And other staff is having to take care of those duties. One, we've had a few offered, made offers to nurses and social workers. They've declined due to the uncompetitive rates. And it takes me about six to eight months to recruit and get somebody into my office. Most nurses have to give a six-week reservation if it's at the hospital, most other places. So it's usually from the time that somebody resigned, it's about six to eight months for me to get somebody in and get my physicians filled. And then in public health, we have to train them. Takes a good year to get a nurse trained to do what we do, and that's our issue. Clinical services, I'm not going to read all these to you, just give you an overview. Giving you some numbers, what we do and how we do them. We have a pretty good real services. We are a clinical service agency. We are looking at, just to throw out, the primary care right now, provided primary care. And that is something that we could offer also to the community, Ms. Nancy. Our, our help, our, our county, county employees. So I have two very good practitioners, just to throw that out there right now. OPIR funds, you've sold that for me. We will be, start that up in July one, hopefully. Environmental health, I'm not going to go through all that, just to, just to mention that. A challenge for us in the future is going to be, we have right now proposed developments in spaces of environmental health on the second page, last paragraph. Right now, we have 56 lots in Harrells, 54 lots in Clement, 45 in Dunn, and 160 Newton Grove, Newton Grove. Those are coming about as we speak. So that is something for us in environmental health. Right now, we're fully staffed, thank God, but just FYI. I do request, I am requesting a comprehensive, this is on my last page, review of our solid waste program. I think I saw something in the budget message. We do have a piece of that. And since 2021, the second bullet on the other items, we did receive ARCA funds from the state. And that was in the amount of about a million dollars that we had been able to use over the past couple of years. We've done things such as ordered, built and bought medicines and office supplies. We've done facility improvements such as painting, carpeting, and also helped with the air conditioner over there. This funding will be, will expire on June 30th. And our concern right now is that that funding was not reflected in our, in certain line items. So we're hoping that we're not going to have an issue moving forward. Because we could not, we just could not pull that piece out. And so, just some FYI. So, and going forward, main issues for us is we need to, we need to really continue to generate revenues, which we are going to work on in ecology and in environmental health. And hopefully, we can keep our staff so that we will be able to do that. So that's my talking point for now.
I'll take any questions.
Commissioner, one, one thing about the Health Department, and I think this is a great illustration. On the cover sheet that was just handed out, you'll see this is one of those departments with lots of different revenue sources. Federal, state, county, and they also have fee, fee sources. So they, they are really a mixture. But most of what they do, as you'll see from other pages, is mandatory. And the statute actually says that if, if we don't do it, we will cause it to happen. And so if they're not offering services in-house, they would have to find a provider in the community that would, would have to do that.
And just to, can I expand on that? Like my maternal health program, and I try to talk about that everywhere I go because we have a high maternal, non-insured group here in the county. And we work with the hospital very closely. If we don't provide that basic prenatal care, our folks are going to walk in and it's going to cost them a lot more money. So we do want to make sure we fund that program at what cost that we need to. So, and we're looking at our costs. We're looking at things in-house such as raising some fees. We're going to look at what we can do a little bit cheaper, such as ordering supplies. Looking at lab, lab, moving things out of the building and going to contract for those. So we are looking at things now that we can pull in some additional revenues for next year. So we did have a rural health grant that was $150,000 a year. That will end this year, so we are going to be actively looking for other ways to replace that. And that money was used to assist our clinic in providing care by helping us with supplies or whatever that we may have needed. So those are some of the things that we've done and hopefully we'll do over the course of the next year or so.
And how can we cut more out of your budget?
So we have a difference already of $458,000. If you tell me why do you need to cut it, we will go in and see what we can do. We, we will, but.
Well, I mean, I agree with you on the billing clerk, the need to have a billing clerk. We want to make sure you properly bill and get the bills out on time. My question is if you're currently able to maintain operations, but out of the social worker too and the two health nurses, would you not be able to continue?
We really have not been able to maintain. That social worker works with our case management program. And that's a fully fairly funded position. There's no county dollars in that position. And they are doing follow-up for children and pregnant women and those that are even having complicated pregnancies. So that is, that's not a county-funded position. Public health nurse, those two public health nurses also have some county dollars, but. But the majority of those funding, that funding comes from the state and that kind of thing, state funding. So that supports the majority of it.
One of them is at least 50% funded by the state and the other one.
Nurses, it's 50%.
The family planning one. And the maternal health one is about 35% state funding. And then the other revenues where we build insurance and Medicaid and that sort of thing, health as well.
And we're struggling right now because we have two practitioners, two nurse practitioners. And that's where my money comes in, is through my practitioners. If I don't keep my practitioners busy, I have to, you know, that's where my revenue comes in. And if I don't have the staff to support those practitioners, then I lose money. So I'm pulling other staff in there to help them in order for the practitioners to do what they need to do. So my nurses are very important, very important.
Do you have a lot, during the daytime, weekday, do you have any times that the nurse practitioners have downtime where they, a lull in service with them? Or do they stay pretty consistent?
We're trying to keep them consistent. Since my, my second one started in January, we had one provide, we had one position open until January this past year. So now I've got those two that we're looking at their schedules and beginning to look how we can get more, more folks in and do more things, so.
My point is, is there, is there like a time that you could designate during the day where like one hour or, you know, during this time, you know, county staff sit call. Not, not for me, of course, but.
Right. Oh, you can come too.
And they can go through and, you know, wait and do the, get, you know, signs and stuff like first thing in the morning. I think that's where most people come in. They feel the worst. If there's a time where we could get them in, we could do something to enhance that. Would that help us on our, our insurance costing with, you know, trying to do some of that stuff through them as far as? Help us out, any?
I'm not sure how the money would work now that we've got our telehealth. That's our cheapest way to go at the moment. But what they are doing is helping us with our yearly physicals and getting employees in so that they don't miss out a lot to.
I don't want to discuss the rest of the others.
Every, every option needs to be considered.
But we are there for that kind of thing, and we are looking at doing primary care more than what we've done because I have a practitioner that's pushing it, and I think it's a good thing for us to do primary care. I would be looking at, and that would be open for county departments. They could call us or come in. But we would like to make, well, we can do that. I mean, I don't think that people understand that what my two practitioners can do. I mean, they are certified, so.
See, I think it goes back to the same thing I told you about social services earlier. We've got to get better about advertising. You know, because it's just like, you know, yesterday I did telehealth for this little sinus infection thing. But I really didn't realize you're taking, I've been happy to go with everything. But the second thing that I have a question, the billing clerk. Is there a contract service that could do that for you guys where they collect receipts and they do the majority of the work and you just provide them all the data and they collect the bills and send it back to you? Or is that too much of an issue?
I, I did check with, after our last meeting, I did check with QMD to see what they offer. And they offer two different plans or service options. Both of, one is just mainly they're putting out claims and working the denials. But they would still have to have somebody in our office that was available to help them because we're actually in front of the patients and seeing them. There's another plan that was just very simple. But both of them did require some input from staff. And based on our current revenues, one of them was going to be almost $19,000 a year based on what, what they've seen, the percentage they would do. And the lesser one was about $8,000, but that, we would still need at the minimum a part-time person to help with that, you know, with that piece. The billing clerk doesn't only do billing though. Like intake eligibility, they back up that position as well, where people are checked in and checked out. Like for instance, I've got one going on vacation next week. My accounting tech too has to come out of her office from doing accounts payable and helping me with the claims and the billings and the denials and work the intake eligibility line all week because that leaves Abigail by herself. So that position would be the backup as well to that. And if we're running four clinics, that could be as much as 40 to 60 people a day. And intake eligibility staff touch each one of those people twice when they check in and when they check out. So they, I need a minimum of two up there all day long. And when I have one on vacation, I have to pull. So the billing clerk at the Health Department doesn't just do billing. They back up that as well.
And remember.
I did, I did go, I did call QMD and, and talk with him about what they offer.
I appreciate that.
Right. And remember, we don't have, we lost one about my, one of the positions that I've lost was my front desk person, the person that we agreed. So Tamra's position is actually going to help with that position now to help back up that front desk because we did lose that position up there.
That was my concern. What do you go and do to replace that customer service person? Because when I go to your window, I want some customer service.
Well, and the same thing will happen. Right now, there's two people that are assigned to do that. Right now, one of mine is helping during lunch if needed, which pulls her off the intake eligibility line. If we can get this billing clerk filled, then we can rotate that and make sure, you know, we've got coverage at the front desk the whole time, but other places may, may sacrifice service. Interior service, not that the camp, not that the public sees it, but it's, you know, interior.
How's everything at environmental health?
It's good. We're staying busy and I've been here four years and it's just, it was really busy when I got here and I was waiting for it to level back off like I'd always seen all the years I've been doing environmental health. But it's, it got to a point, it's just at a level that I would never thought I'd seen in a, would see in a rural county as far as the building because of, like Ms. Wanda pointed out, the subdivisions that are being built. And she just touched on the four big ones. It doesn't include the, the small four lots, seven lots, five lots here and there that people are doing throughout the county. And as far as the numbers, that's, we just want to show you what we had done in the past with the inspections that we do. And the thing about it is the permits, you see 892 permits, but there's some lots that we may go to four and five times because there's issues, you know. We were trying to, you know, you know, like I went to one before I came here. It was the second time I've been out there trying to figure it out, met the former out there looking at it. And then it'll be at least another two or three trips out there because of laying out the system, checking the system form when it's installed. So, you know, we're, as far as our staff, you know, we're, we can ideally, you know, because the reason we had asked for another staff member because we had gotten so busy. But it was able, I've gotten to the point where we can maintain a suitable or acceptable turnaround time. You know, shorter turnaround time is the, is better. But, you know, a lot of times, you know, when you're dealing. But, you know, a lot of times, you know, when you're dealing with environmental health, uh, you know, it runs up and down from time to time. And then so you'll have real places, times you're really busy and then once you get to that point over, then it drops back down to the normal level. Um, here right now, what I've seen come about is, is probably going to be normal from now on, you know, with the building going, going on. And trying to keep up and maintain a good turnaround time for, for the clients is, is like my main goal, um, set the permits. So with the three of us, myself and, uh, it's myself and two others that do the onsite and I have three that do the food and lodging for us. Um, and right now it's taken the three of us to try to keep up and maintain, we tell people thirty days, but right now we're, it's quicker than that for the most part. Some are pushed to thirty, some are like, we'll do some in two or three days because what I've trained my staff to do is if, if you have one that's three weeks old and needs to be done, look in your pile, look in the pile, folder and see, is there anything else close by, even though it's only four or five days old, do it when you go, you know, when you're in that area to try to maintain, you know, our timeframe as far as getting stuff turned around.
Cutting down on windshield down.
Yes, yes, because, because, because a lot of, a lot of people, I didn't realize until I got here, how actually large Sampson County is from one end to the other. You know, when you're down in Ivanhoe as far as you can go and you've got to go to, to Dunn or toward, up there above Newton Grove towards Dunn, it takes you an hour and fifteen to twenty minutes just to get there.
Yeah.
You know, and that, you know, sometimes that happens. Um, and then as far as the food and lodging program, it's, you know, and I know y'all see all the, the new little restaurants are coming popping up, everything, you know, that, we have to deal with every one of them. Um, even if you see one that's closed, there's a good chance there's going to be one coming back shortly. Um, so, and then, you know, and then sometimes what I've seen over the years is, a lot of times people don't realize exactly what all we touch as far as environmental health, you know, because we do nursing homes, school buildings, daycares, swimming pools, tattoo artists, adult, adult care homes, um, food, uh, restaurants, school cafeterias, school buildings...
Pools.
Pools, yes. Hotels, you know, just about anything that you or your family member has, you know, you know, interaction with, we're probably, at some point, sometime, we're, we're a part of it.
Commissioners, to follow up on what Mr. Harris said in an earlier version of the budget, I, they did ask for another environmental health specialist and I had approved it, uh, in, in the, before they reached like round two of cuts, there was another environmental health specialist in and I do believe, especially with the growth that you're having, the onsite is going to need another person. Uh, you're going to have, right now we know we've got a request for two hundred acres to be developed, another hundred and seventy-six lot to be developed, a forty-five or forty-six lot to be developed, so you're going to have...
This paper's three hundred and fifteen lot.
Yeah, you're going to have more of that. Uh, also unless you're able to expand your county water system so you're able to get more potable water, the only other choice is wells and when you have wells and it's going to be Mr. Harris' team back again, we're going to have wells. So, uh, and while, while we're on the subject of environmental health, I did want to thank Mr. Harris for one other idea that he had. Uh, we were talking about fees and there are fees throughout that have gone up, including environmental health fees, but he had the idea of something that the state of North Carolina has been real proud of, um, and that's an expedited fee. So he came up with that idea, it's voluntary, completely voluntary. You don't have to pay it, but if you do pay it, it's more money for the county and we'll do the best we can to get, get you sped up. So, um, so that was, I thought, a really good hit for that program.
Oh, and, and in that, um, you may cover on this in a minute, but what you just listed, I'd like to get that out somewhere where everyone sees it. You're exactly right. There's a lot of people don't know what all y'all touch and they think that, I mean, you know, I call you every year, I'm on in January because my farmers, they start and they want to know why we're not doing their wells and I know, I know the situation, but they think that's all, you know, you don't have anything else to do.
Right.
Well, I know for a fact how much you guys have to do. So I would like to have something that give a list, at least a list that can be told.
Well, I, you know, we're charged at least twice a year to come up with some type of article and I'm not sure where it goes. I, I sent it to Kelly and him, but, but it goes in a, a publication somewhere. And I did one when I got here that sort of lists the different things that we do in our department as far as what we touch, um, environmental health. And I'll be more than happy to, you know, update it and everything and get it to wherever, you know, put it on the website.
Get it out of homework, let everybody see it. Cause people take it for granted.
Just as an idea along those lines, it's not particular to environmental health of the health department, but you do have a, a water bill that goes out. Uh, when I was, when I was with Onwasa, uh, I wrote a one-page front and back newsletter every month. I wrote it myself. I didn't use AI either, but I wrote it myself and, uh, and there are a couple of rules for that. Number one, you always have a, a recipe. I took, I took my hint from the Electric Cooperative that I then went to work for, by the way, but people, people might not read a, a newsletter, but I tell you what, they'll read a recipe. And if, if you put a recipe on the back, you can put news, the other parts on that one page or insert in your water bill, but that might be something that, that your new county manager could think about doing along with the water department. You can use water department money to pay for it if it goes out in the water bill. You can talk generally about the county and it could be a place where what Mr. Harris is talking about could be highlighted. I mean, you could, you could highlight that. You have twelve months worth, so one month out of the year, um, at the right time, I would, normally I would reserve May for get ready for hurricane season, uh, but another time of the year, you could, you could certainly highlight all the services done by environmental health department. And Ms. Coe in the back of the room would also be, that's right, would also be, uh, perfect to help with that.
How you feel about videos?
Videos?
And December would be a good time for...
You're like videos.
But December would be a good time for migrant, migrant help.
Well, you can just watch, uh, what is it? Um, Health Inspector Laird Cable Guy.
But I, I will give credit, I've seen one of your employees, uh, early, early, early in the morning, I'm talking about six-thirty this early, I've seen her in a restaurant, I've seen her lay out the computers too, got everything and you see her mapping what she's going to do that day. She's methodical, I give her that, go break her train of thought.
So that's a good idea, making sure you kill two birds with one stone with their nearby lot. A sooner date on the ticket, go ahead and take care of it while you're there.
And, and when people are in, come into office apply and we tell them, you know, on average it's thirty days, but in the same conversation, they're told, go and get your flags and stuff out, what we've asked you to do, that way if we're in that area, you know, say four or five days from now, we can go and do it for you. Um, because there's certain things that the clients have to do for us. Um, and this is stuff that the state gets on us if we're not making sure it's done, um, that we ask them to do for us and it's put the flags out and, you know, mark the property line and stuff like that. Um, and we ask them to do that, that way if we're in the area, we can go ahead and knock it out.
Thank you all.
I do have one question for y'all. Had a farmer a while ago ask me, who would he need to talk to if he wants to look at maybe farming a piece of land that county owns?
Hit the contact.
Okay.
Yeah, contact call and we'll go.
Okay, okay, good, it was, it was, uh, it was wowers.
Okay.
He got us...
That question was a lease question, right?
Huh? Yes, lease, yes, yes, yeah. But he also said, I would also like to buy it for kids. Cause he told me, he told me he's going to, um, he's going to text me this afternoon. I told him I had a meeting that I'd, I'd ask that question for.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Didn't have the answer.
Thank you all so much.
So I'll tell him, contact him.
Move him and contact him.
Okay, I will. Thank you all.
Thank you all. Economic development is up.
Come on down, Mr. Jordan.
Yes, sir.
I can answer the question about, uh, selling a piece of land, you need to declare that property surplus? Well, you just went through that kind of actually.
Yeah. It may be even flood land.
That's what I was pointing, I was pointing that way.
Right. Earlier, earlier, uh, I believe it was Ms. Knowles that said she had the tiniest budget. She actually was incorrect about that. Um, I think that Mr. Jordan has had the greatest decrease in budget and he, his is, his is smaller than veteran services, in part because he did give up a position. He went from one vacancy and one filled position being him to him. Uh, so on the upside, it's really easy for him to have department meetings now. He, he can argue with himself, but other than that, um, last year, and, and he can explain this more because there's a lot in this, uh, economic development, one point three million last year, this year is six hundred and thirty-four thousand, but we did actually split up things and I'll let Ray talk to you about that. It was a, a little bit, um, difficult to understand how not, not all of that economic development money is going to be staying in his department, how we have incentive programs and how that works. So that's something, Ray, if you would talk about that.
Yes, sir.
You're okay, I'll need one today, as long as they're here.
Well, first I'd like to thank you for, uh, the opportunity to be here today and, uh, I'm, I'm one that likes to be at the front end rather than the back end, but I appreciate the time. I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Hudson for, uh, all his work during his time here and he's been very great to work with and I will tell you a quick story, when he walked down the hall one day and he looked like he'd lost his long best friend and I was thinking, what? And he just looked like he was, had been beaten. And he said, I'm here with some sad news. I said, what? He said, I've had to cut two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of your economic development reserve. So he took it in heart and pain, I did. Um, but I also like to thank Melissa, she's done a great job and, and had to do a lot, you know, with Nada as well as Nancy, and I'd like to welcome our new manager to come onboard and welcome her. Um, so you've got some handouts from me, but before we get into those, what I'd like to share with is how this budget was created. It actually started last year. As you know, I assumed the position last year, uh, around July and kind of inherited a budget prior year. So as we created the twenty-four, twenty-five budget that we're in now, basically I was having to go off of, uh, records and information from the previous director, Stevens, who don't, he'd been with us about four and a half years. So the first one, the one we're in now, is one that really didn't have hands around and know exactly what you need to do. So when Mr. Hudson asked us to create a balance, a budget from ground up, you know, my goal was to create a budget that would get us, move us forward and get us across lines and things we needed to do. So when you look at the initial budget request for this year, yes, it was high, but it was lower than last year and there's some things that we're going to mention in here, but I did want to share with you that. But when you start to craft a budget for, for, for your scope of work that you're planning to do, you need to think about what is it that you, that you really need to get worked done. And, you know, for us, we've got, we have one, today we have one building on the market and we have our two industrial sites, one has water and infrastructure, one does not. So in a lot of ways we're behind and not, and I'm not here to beat anything about that, it's just, it's the reality of where we are. So that's kind of where we, how we started this budget and where we got to. And, um, first, the, I, I know that you had your budget books and I printed extra pages that you don't probably need, but on the handout that's got the, the cover sheet, the first cover sheet is actually the, uh, is actually the budget as originally was presented and you can see on there, the last year's budget was one billion, three forty-four, three ninety-one. The thing that I'd like to point out about the budget that we're in currently is that three, uh, basically about eight hundred thousand dollars of that was money that I had no control over. So I just want to make sure you understand that. The second page shows and reflects the budget as we have worked on it, which now stands at six hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifteen, a reduction of seven hundred and ten thousand, one seventy-six, and as Mr. Hudson said, lost a position. Um, so with that said, I will call your attention to the second sheet I gave you. And I worked on this and I wanted to make sure that we separated out and had, had a clear understanding about the county's contribution versus the total budget. And, and you'll see here, and this is the top area shaded in yellow specifically related to the current year budget. The initial request of county contribution was eight sixty-one, five forty-five, three hundred thousand dollars in pass-through grants and fifty-six thousand dollars in other revenue that we, where we rent land, we, uh, have sponsors, um, and such as that. It's not a large, large amount, but it is twenty-four percent of our budget, um, excuse me, five percent. So as you can see, the initial request, and I do want to point out, in that request at that time included three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of money that I could not offset in revenue. I was used to creating a budget with revenue and expenses versus being more of a county-funded area because it kept coming from the expo center. But in that was our grant-back incentive money. And that grant-back incentive is related to the Enviva project located over on four oh three. Uh, we're in the eighth year of the, of the, uh, excuse me, the eighth year payment has been made and we've made reimbursement and, uh, we have two years remaining on that grant-back incentive agreement. And that amount of money was paid out of my budget, showing as an expense, but I mean, I really, really, there's nothing I had to do with it other than it being in my budget. So I asked Mr. Hudson, can we just take that out of my budget? And he said, I'll move it in, I think, industrial utility. I think that's where it wound up, correct, Mr. Hudson?
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure you're aware of that. So that, that was something we had no control over. But as I start, I do want to share with you just, and I know you know this, but I do want to say it, you know, when Mr. Hudson's budget presentation, which was great, um, we talked about, uh, all these different things affecting. Well, one thing is that when you do a market study reevaluation, what most often doesn't change is your commercial and your industrial market things because it's not many industries being sold, so it really doesn't change a lot. But just for comparison, uh, because I've got this one totally memorized, in two thousand twenty-three, the taxes paid by Enviva was one billion, six thousand dollars. After revow, after the tax reduction, that payment was seven hundred and nineteen thousand. I say that just to drive home the point of the, you know, that they're in those situations, those were benefits to those of reduction. So, uh, if you look now, continuing down on this sheet, but the thing, we went through our first round of cuts and that's where we met one-on-one with Mr. Hudson. The second round cuts, you can see dropped it significantly and that's where we were held hostage. Now, I'm just kidding. But we weren't held hostage. Uh, we, we had to have a pass to get out of the room, uh, at the nine-one-one center. And by the way, it was on the day before Good Friday. All day.
Figured you might need that.
Yeah, that was, that was, I wouldn't know if we'd call it Good Friday or Bad Friday at this one. But anyway, um, at that point, uh, I truly took to heart what his request was and we looked then through this budget and, and scheduled to eliminate. And I will tell you the items that we cut and were eliminated, you know, they're going to affect some of the things we can do. As an example, in our data processing, we had a, we were subscribing to, uh, we had a subscription to something called Jobs EQ. It's a database, uh, that provides statistical data, it's live, it's real time and we've used that throughout the time. Uh, I can, I've got a neighboring, uh, county that's going to help us with it, but the problem is going to be if, if Mr. McClan calls me up tomorrow and says, can you tell me the, I'm, I'm going to be at somebody else's mercy. But that was sixty-some hundred dollars just for data, that one item. And it was those kind of things that it went through and cut out. A lot of travel has been eliminated. Now, I understand the need, I mean, the, the, that, that's something, yes, you can go, people say, well, you don't need to go here or there, but economic development is about making relationships and, and, and trying to meet with people. And, um, so that's, that was severely cut. The other thing, the, the big line item in there that was cut was our line item with regard to the ability to have engineering services, um, professional engineering services for our new industrial park. Um, yes, we're going to continue, we're going to work toward grants. Oftentimes grants, as you know, will come with some sort of match, we don't know what that's going to be. Um, but, um, I really tried to take to heart what was, we were asked to do. But I really tried to take to heart what was, we were asked to do. This is a slim budget, as you can see, when you think back, if you look at somebody, at last year's budget or the current year's budget, we were 1,300,000 as budgeted. But again, take out 800,000 of that or close to 900,000, that was not even anything associated with county dollars. So as we get to this point, the first initial request, we were now, actually the first, when I presented the budget, we were 10%, roughly 10% less. Then we went to 28% after our first meeting, 53%, and you see it went to 52. But it went back up a little bit because there was a piece of software that I did not realize because Steven had paid for it before I got here. I had no record of it and it come to find out, it was the one that we list all the buildings on for our website and it was 4,120, we had to be added by. So that's the reason for that administration recommended is actually a little bit less or it changed a little bit by almost a percent. In anticipation of our meeting today, I listed down there 10% through 1% cuts. I have gone through this budget and I'll say this, I serve at your mercy and work where you are, but we need money for economic development to grow and our main focus is to grow the tax base. And so, you know, can we cut something out? I mean, do you tell me what to do, I'm going to do it because I'm a team player and that's why we're going to roll with it. But as we, I'm going to stop here and ask if there are any specific questions because there's a few things that I want to share with you as we close.
Well, Ray, I'm not going to ask if you can cut more because you've cut more than any other department. So I appreciate you for what you're doing because we definitely need to keep economic development going. We can't completely cut it and close it. We've got to grow the tax base. What can we do to try to get some of this money back for you through grants or outside state funding or maybe get some money from the state legislature? Is there any money that you're aware of that we could ask Senator Jackson and we in Briston for?
Yes, sir. Let me answer in this, in these remarks and it may address some of them. So my vision for what we're going to need to do for our counties, remember when we get, we now know we got to grow this tax base and we've all talked about all the subdivisions are coming today. And we know that if they have children in the schools, if they have more than two and don't live in a half million dollar house, we're upside down. So non-residential growth is extremely important. We've got to continue to develop sites and buildings. We've got, and I'm going to circle back, one of the things that approached Mr. Hudson about was entering to strategic plan. And y'all agreed to that, we're in, probably three quarters away, maybe a little bit further into receiving that and I thank you for that because it's going to reveal some things that we need to do. And one of those is, it's, I've had multiple conversations with our consultant is, and the one thing that she's identified through almost 400 contacts with different people is that we, we all have got to work more collaboratively to build relationships. That's one of the things she talked about. And to the point where we've got to develop champions and advocates for what we do and for economic development and that, and that really begins with you too. But to answer your question specifically, one of the things here that I've got is that we've got to approach the legislature collectively as a group, as a county, and to see if we can seek some funding like the other counties have. We need a game-changing allocation is what we need. You know, we're, we're lacking in infrastructure, water, you know, we've heard talk about the issues with water. Water is more, it's easier to obtain, and I'm not saying it's cheap, it's easier to get there, but water, but sewer is a tremendous thing. So one of the questions at the legislature level is they want to, how can you work regionally? So we've got to figure out that. But when you look at regionally from most of the sites that we have, there's no one nearest that, that, I mean, it's just such a long distance between, it's very hard to do. But I do think that we've got to seek out grant opportunities and we're going to work goldily. We're going to go back through the Department of Commerce. I anticipate if the legislature funds the North Carolina-Southeast Partnership as requested or some variation thereof, we should potentially be able to get a grant from that somewhere between 300 and 600,000 to help with site development. That will help us go a long way as getting started and you can grow. So I'm hopeful for that, but lobbying with our legislators, I can't, I cannot overstate how important that will be. And as a county, not just, not me going up there, but all of us going up there. Yeah. Anything you want to add to that?
Just on regionalization, so it, not for y'all, but for another client, I've been talking about regionalization and I actually got a call from the chairman of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners. I've gone to Johnston County twice in the last two years and talked to all of their, and they have a lot of municipalities in Johnston County, they've got a lot. But I went to Smithfield and I've talked to their county manager, who's a friend of mine, and their towns about how authorities are formed. So what, what a lot of, a lot of smaller jurisdictions are finding is that it's hard for a small town to pay for water and sewer. It's hard to hire the water and sewer operators that are necessary and keep them. So a lot of them are starting to look at banding together and the state is encouraging regionalization. And one of the primary ways you do that in North Carolina is the creation of an authority. So it's a, it's a separate unit of government and there are ways that, we did it, we did it successfully in Onslow County. In fact, for a long time, we were about the only ones that did it successfully, which is why we used to get, back when I, when I worked there, we would get invitations to go talk to other people. But it's since I've been retired that I, I got an invitation to go up to Johnston County. I think eventually, not talking specifically about Sampson, but I mean, I think all rural North Carolina is going to find that it's just costing more and more and more money. So it pays to pool your, your rate payers, the citizens, and, and put, put all the resources together to try to handle the expenditures. It's kind of like what I've also talked to you all about in terms of IT. IT is also getting hard, like for instance, the city of Clinton doesn't have any IT staff at all. So it's just for those, those kind of difficult problems and those problems don't care whether you're a city or you're a county, they don't care about political boundaries, it's everyone's got to flush and everybody needs water. So how do you go about doing that?
So other questions?
Do you think, knowing that your budget is so slim, do you think you're still going to be able to accomplish your mission?
That's my bottom remarks. The thing that I'm tired of in my position is working in reactionary mode where it's hard to be proactive. I do spend a great deal of my time on busy work that's got to be done, the bills have got to be paid, the phone calls that come in and things and, but to try to have the opportunity to build relationships, do business retention, expansion, attraction, a staff of one is very, will be very difficult. It will just simply slow things down. You know, one thing that, and I'm not sure if this, where this may lie in the budget or future budgets, but at some point, we really need assistance with a grant writing. See, I mean, these grant, these grant applications, everybody's like, write a grant, write a grant. That's why I hear it all the time from the public, they don't have any idea what all it takes to get one in. You know, just, just all the minutia detail that you've got to put in for one to, to get out and then not only once you get it, but then to monitor on the backside. So, you know, and that's not, I'm not asking for that, but I, I do see value in that being something for the county. But I think that's, you know, I'm, I'm not here asking you to reinstate the staff because I understand where we are. But I, I would hope and pray that we can get that back because that's going to pose a problem. I mean, just on the days that I try to get out and do a visit with someone, you know, I mean, when you get back, you got, I mean, it's just like your work, it's the same thing that you deal with. If you're out, you know what's going on, but I shared with Nancy last week, you know, I need to be out trying to build these relationships across the county. You know, if, I'm sure if you go to, you start in the center of this county and go out this way, there's going to be varying complaints, pluses or minuses about what we do or don't do collectively as far as economic development, whatever, you've heard it today. But, you know, what we're here to try to promote is, you know, economic growth and the, if we don't grow the tax base, I mean, that's the key to it. I mean, this, we have got to have effort into creating that tax base. And y'all know that better than anybody because you're, you're sitting here having to deal with it. But, you know, when you look at our tax rate and realize that it's going to take a million, I mean, a $125 million project to create one penny on the tax rate. And our last big announcement was Enviva nine years ago. I mean, we, you know, we can't, as Mr. Pope said Monday night, we can't kick the can down the road, we've got to have development. And, but it takes a lot of stuff. And these companies that come in, they know more about us than we know about ourselves and we're just trying, and to use what Steven you said, we're in the point, we've, we've got to set the table. We've got to get the things in place that's necessary to meet the needs of potential customers. I'm really anxious to see our draft strategic plan, once the steering committee has time to do it and then that be presented to you all for adoption as a plan that you support. Because, you know, if, if the five of you don't support it and your manager don't support it, we're not going to do anything.
I agree.
And I'm, I'm, I'm all this and that, with utmost respect and everything, but everybody here today that spoke, I've listened to and it was just alluded to, you asked Mr. Harrod a question about creating a document show what you do. We've got to tell our story and we've got to be better at telling our story. I think that's the, that's the best thing I can leave you with. And I mean, across the county, I'm not just economic development, in everything.
Mr. Jordan, I'm not sure how many of those housing developments are going down south. I know of one, but we don't have a grocery store that would accommodate another part of people. So that would be one area you might look in to see if somebody would, would come and put a grocery store down there. It's needed, whether we get another head or not, it's needed because we have to drive 14 or 25 miles to a grocery store. And the dollar stores are fine, but it's hard to find the best stores that people need. So that would be, to me, that would be a lot of money if they would come down. I mean, we could like push it and just tell them that we're looking for the people. We may not have all the people, but they're coming by the time they get the store built and the parking people.
Commissioner, I'd like to jump in here just because I, I want to make sure that, that the board has realistic expectations of what, what Ray can do. He can't do that. And I'll tell you why. I've been, I've been in that same spot, there's a food desert or two in Onslow County. The retail stores are going to follow housing. They're not going to go spend investment on the possibility of there being housing, but with enough people, they will come. The Dollar Generals are there, I saw a new Dollar General being built and I was there on Friday in Garland. Dollar Generals are everywhere, I think, but in terms of getting a grocery store, we've been trying to get any kind of grocery store other than a food line, because there is a food line kind of in southern Onslow County. And it, it has been until the housing and the Marine Corps built more and more and more housing departments till finally more options are coming in. But I, and the only reason I say that, and I'm not trying to contradict you or anything, it's just if, if today ended and, and the board expected that Ray could get a retail establishment, that's probably an unrealistic expectation on him. And so I don't want him to be held to task later on for something that he doesn't have the ability to do.
Well, another thing with grocery stores is they want to be able to sell alcohol and nobody's going to be able to grocery store in Alabama other than they can't sell alcohol. Besides, besides they're not, I mean, just for point, case in point, like Stedman, they built a food line outside of Stedman because Stedman doesn't allow alcohol sales and they do it in Vander.
All the stores in Harold sells beef and wine.
In Harold's, inside the city limits, they sell it maybe, but not, not outside the city limits.
You'd have to do a change in your alcohol sales for the unincorporated areas of the county, which you could do. But the other thing is where Ray could possibly help is that you do have an industrial park that you purchased and right now, there is not money in the budget to put in infrastructure in that industrial park. If you're looking at luring business in, business will not want to wait. Time, time is very important for business. So this, this has put you behind, there is maybe, was it $60,000 or so?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
Not sixty, fifty-nine thousand, that, that could be done, used to do some necessary studies, but it's not going to be a lot of money to put in roads, water, sewer to get sites ready for sale. And there's no money for shell building, so unless he has inventory, which I think you said there's one empty building now.
Yes, sir.
There's one empty building now and it doesn't have the high space, the high, the high ceilings that you really need. If you're doing a shell building, you need to make sure that shell building is really flexible, flex space, a flex building. So we built one and the way we did it, we leave a dirt floor, three walls and the fourth wall is expandable. So all of that means that for economic development, you're kind of treading water probably for at least a year, moving very slowly maybe with, with your, your strategic plan. And then other than the strategic plan, certainly Ray can continue to make contacts, return calls, but it's going to be difficult to, to land anything without product ready to go.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. And the last, since June 4th of last year through May 9th, yeah, May 9th, there've been a, we received a total of 114 inquiries that have come through North Carolina, Southeast in particular, some combination thereof. Nearly 65% are looking to exist in building. The average ceiling height is 29 feet. The one, the one building we have now is 16 foot. We do, the building in Garland, it's, it's sold, it's not, I'm not sure what the owner of the site is going to do yet, so we've not quote relisted. That building's got 11 foot ceilings and it was built in 19, I mean, it's just, and, but buildings and sites are important. We will continue to work, there are some folks and there's some creative ways for investment that I may bring to you as a, for consideration. I mean, it, but, and, but one thing that will be, just like a dream come true, if we could work with legislature where we could get enough money to have a spec shell building program that where, once they make allocation, we flip the building, we keep the money to build the next one. That would be huge for us. And with regard to the grants, there's, there are a lot and you got to figure out the order to put them and how to shape them. Because what I have found in the past year is you'll, you'll receive a grant for this and your logical process to do something is A through Z, right? Well, they're going to fund A and then D, but you can't do D, I mean, you're, it's almost like the old saying in construction, moving dirt twice. So you're going to move the dirt here, you're going to pay them to move it and seven months later, you're going to pay somebody to move it again. I mean, so we got to figure, it's got to be, and it costs twice as much. So, you know, but we, we're continuing to work, there, there's some folks that have expressed interest. expressed interest. Uh, but to Mr. Hudson's point, the water sewer infrastructure, and one of the things that, that I can assure you will be coming soon to approach you with, uh, is that we're gonna have to support Newton Grove. I mean, we're gonna have to really be the heavy lifters for them to enhance their sewer treatment. They're not, they're not gonna, they don't have the capacity to do it. I don't know if we can do, but we're gonna have to figure out a way, how do we work with them for grants and money and things to do that? Water is quicker, sewer is much longer process.
Yeah, water's, water's a whole lot easier than sewer. Water, water, you take it in, and you don't, you know, sewer, if you don't have a separate tank, the hard part is, what do you do with it? Where does it go? But, and, yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good way to sum it up.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ray.
You're welcome.
Did you get all that?
One thing, when Mr. Hudson handed it, handed it to press, or at least earlier, I saw their economic development, I said, yes. But anyway, thank you for all you do, thank you for your service at the county.
For your encouragement, I hope you come out here with a little, I know you've, you've strung over this, I did a while, but the whole time you were talking, just so you know, I went right on by Mr. Hudson, right over there. I looked at him about three or four times, and he smiled and nodded, so I think he understands your heart, and he understands what this county needs as we move forward, and I think that's the reason, one reason he sent me to this, so I think you'll be fine.
Yeah, we're gonna make-
Mr. Chairman, we had some good conversation at lunchtime, too.
Sure, thank you.
Sampson Community College has recently converted their criminal justice program to a public administration program, a two-year degree program there. I know it's not gonna be any substantial help, but it may be, we'll talk to them and see if we can get some interns to kind of help with some, relieve some of the menial stuff. I don't know if that isn't acceptable or not, but sep definitely with our regional universities, getting them in, maybe try to get somebody working on their doctor's or master's to help us with some of the grant stuff, I don't know if that's a possibility.
Well, sir, that's less attractive than a program that we do have access to, only because as an intern, I used to be an intern, and I don't know how they put up with me. But, but I can tell you that, and Commissioner Lee also knew about this, she talked to me about it very early on, but the North Carolina Association of Counties has people that have received their masters of public administration and are willing and able to help counties at no cost to the county. They're, they're paid through a combination of ARPA money and the, uh, grant from the North Carolina General Assembly. The problem is, we have not been able to have access to them because our ARPA reporting was not turned in since last April. So we were in violation of ARPA reporting. However, we have increasingly positive feedback, I would say, from the United States Treasury that Melissa's gotten, that, that we are correcting that, or that we will continue to have an opportunity to correct that. So as soon as it's completely corrected, and we're not on their naughty list, then we should be able to get somebody. In fact, I was, I met with the director of the program, and, and also Neil Emery, who you all probably know, and they said that, that they had at least three people that were interested, because you have to match someone who's interested in, and I pushed with them economic development. Because by that time, I knew that Ray definitely needed some help, and so we were pushing economic development.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have three more departments lined up for you, but if you want to take a five-minute restroom or bathroom break-
I'd like to do that, I'd like to take about a five-minute break. There you go.
I'm ready.
Get us out of recess, and we're gonna turn it over. Transportation, so.
I am. I'll take it. I gave everybody a new cover sheet, and I want to say, I did have one mistake on there when I submitted it with the FTEs, so you will see a, what looks like a drastic change on there. I did not include our drivers in my original numbers. So we have six in the office, we have six full-time drivers, and we have nineteen part-time driver positions. All of those part-time positions are not currently filled, we're trying to get them filled, but there are, there are nineteen part-time positions. And did everybody know that Sampson County has public transportation? Yeah? There's been a, a lot of people in the county don't know, they think we're for the senior citizens or the disadvantaged. We transport anybody and everybody, just like they do in the city. We don't have bus stops, we go right to the houses. So from FY22 to current year, we have increased our ridership from about thirty-one thousand rides a year to almost forty-five thousand rides a year. First drivers come in at 4:00 AM, last driver gets off about 7:30 PM. So they're, they're out there, and they're covering over a half a million miles a year, close to six hundred thousand miles a year. We are, have been, the department's self-sufficient, wherein we have not used any county dollars. I know there was a discussion about funding earlier. We did, I did make cuts, just like all the other departments did. I'm assuming the question is gonna be, can we cut another one to two percent?
What is the chair's enterprise fund, basically, so?
And I did look at it, when I went back across the street after being here this morning, and honestly, we could not, unless we did not get three new vehicles that will, we get, that we will be getting next year. Um, and that would be the county match, that would equal that two percent. That funding comes through the federal, through the state from the federal government. We are going-
Since you are enterprise fund, then I will ask you the question. I'm assuming that you operate with some form of a profit, you're-
We're not in the business to make a profit.
I know, but you do-
But we do generate revenue.
Yeah. But your revenue generally, your expenses generally are less than the revenue, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be basically a profit.
Correct.
That's not supposed to be a profit business or enterprise.
Yes, that is correct.
I, my technical question.
Okay.
Do you have cameras in buses?
We do. We do.
Are they inside and outside, or just outside?
They are inside and one that points the windshield out, but we do. Most of the vehicles have four cameras on them. I and Jeff, my operations manager, can look at a live feed, so if there's something going on, we can, you know, we can be right there, it's audio on it, we can hear it, the whole nine yards.
How about maintenance? Who does the maintenance of the bus?
Currently, Clinton Wheel and Alignment, Clinton Wheel and Alignment does most of it, we've used J and T, we have steered away from the Ford dealership because of the cost.
So we're looking at the cost and looking at maybe our contract.
And the turnaround time.
Okay, great. That, I mean, that, I mean, that's money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sir, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Where do you see yourself in five years?
Well, let me see.
Boy, I'm not talking about she personally.
Yes, the department, the department, gotcha.
What about your job interview?
Say, hey, say, sit him right here.
Right, that's right, no, no. He's not even paying attention. So if anybody has, one big thing on my list is our facility. It was funded in two thousand by federal dollars. Guidelines are, they have a forty-year life expectancy. It's a double wide, and it has some needs that, future needs, that will need to be addressed. However, I will be applying for a grant for a facility through a rural organization, whether it gets approved or not. It's a, it's a drawn-out process. Before, before I came to Sampson County, I was at Duplin County for fifteen years, seventeen years. Was successful in getting the grant for their new facility that they just, just completed, actually. I've been here for eight years. So I'm hoping for something like that. I had spoken to the previous county manager about that. A, a good selling point is having a piece of property that the building can be put on, that can also be used towards the match. He suggested a piece of property, whether the commissioners would agree to that, you know, but that, that is a big plus, is having a, a piece of property.
Immediately behind Public Works.
I know one thing, whatever grant you apply for, honey, you get, you are a grant runner.
Thank you, thank you. My fingers are crossed.
Commissioners, we've also informed our lobbyists that one of the various needs of Sampson County would be, if, if there is money, transportation, the transportation site is, is something we identify as one of the needs. We didn't put it, we didn't prioritize it as number one, but it was a smaller dollar amount, honestly, it wasn't like seventy-five million to do, to do the courthouse, so it was one of the things we identified.
We, we are growing, the department is growing, we do a lot of transportation to medical appointments, mainly for Medicaid recipients, but our second biggest, um, need that we provide is access to employment. The number of people that we take to employment has grown exponentially the past two years.
Who pays for the transportation to look for a job and to, you take a grocery shopping on the way?
We do, we do.
Shopping cents, who pays for that?
We get a grant, we get funds, the riders pay a fare, which currently in county is two dollars. So you can go from Ivanhoe to Salemburg for two dollars. There is a public hearing scheduled for next Monday. It is in the budget to increase those fare to four dollars. The only people that will not see a fare increases those going to dialysis treatments. They go three days a week, and twelve dollars a week is a lot of money.
And talk about out-of-county fees.
Out-of-county, um, so when we're taking Medicaid riders to medical appointments out-of-county, and we go out-of-county every single day, people from the general public can ride, so I could call in and say, I have an appointment at Duke, or, you know, my appointment's on Wednesday, and it is currently twenty dollars round trip, unless you're disabled or over the age of sixty, it's five dollars round trip. So we are doubling that, it's gonna go up to ten and forty. And I don't think that's unreasonable for, for either of them. We go to Fayetteville, we go to Raleigh, Durham, Chapel Hill, Hillsborough, Greenville, Kinston, Wilmington, Jacksonville, and everywhere in between.
Those people that own the Alice's, do they have to pay?
Two dollars. Unless they have Medicaid. If they have, right, the, the clients that have Medicaid and set it up through social services do not pay to ride to their medical appointments.
And our Medicaid reimbursement for that is what?
Through the, through the federal government, through the state, and it is, we, we simply send the bill over to DSS, and they submit it, they approve it, it gets submitted, and it comes back in.
So in your office, you're not only sending out a bill and to get back your money, you're doing all the logistics, putting your buses in the right place with the right people in the right time, and you got to make sure the drivers are there too, on schedule.
That's correct.
Get people there.
Yes.
And I do appreciate that.
Yeah.
Logistics is a big job there, boy.
It is, especially in a county this big.
And Commissioners, with, with the logistics being what they are, Roe had, had indicated that she needed more administrative help. We did move an individual from one of our county line departments over to Roe's department. That meant that her non-property tax money started paying that salary, and then we were able to cut the county tax-funded position in another department. So I want to thank Roe for her work with us and, and helping save that person's job, and that's how we helped get to twenty.
So other than stand out of your way, what can we do to help?
Well, if I ever come to the podium and say, we need a little money, because we're in a jam, then, but I hope we don't ever get there.
I just wonder, they take those jobs she's doing, I mean, it's, it's hard driving all the way from Harold's to Chapel Hill.
Our drivers work hard.
I know, they work really hard, I see them a lot out on the road.
They are-
Before I get, get out, good, they're on the road, and sometimes after I get home, they still hold the road.
And if it's pouring rain and somebody's using a wheelchair, they're in the pouring rain getting that person on that van.
You don't find many people that, that would be capable of even gonna do it.
When we interview somebody for a driving position, and I'll make this quick, I compare it to a bus driver, a school bus driver. I said, if you think this is an easy job, it's not. If you're a school bus driver, you pull up to the bus stop, and the children are there, and they hop on board. Well, our drivers go to your driveway, they pull as close to your back door as they can because they know you have mobility issues, they pull to your front door, they, you know, and honest scenario, they'll come to the door in their underwear and say, I need two minutes. And the driver's like, put your pants on. And that, that is, it's, it's happened.
For clarity, you mean that the person they're picking up?
Yes. Needs to put their pants on, yes, yes.
Okay.
The person we're picking up.
Just to be clear.
So it's, we actually had, we had hired somebody, and they lasted about three weeks because they didn't think they were gonna have to move out of that driver's seat, they thought it was gonna be like driving a school bus, and it's not. We expect them to get out of that seat if somebody has mobility issues, is elderly, just to be standing there to kind of guide them.
I made it a personal, I guess, thing of who I am now, to, when I see those buses somewhere, or someone's there, I speak to the driver, I spend time talking with them, and I've not met one yet that wasn't very cordial and very nice and very understanding anything, I didn't, I didn't tell them I was a commissioner, didn't want to.
Well, I appreciate hearing that.
Just a good conversation.
I appreciate that.
Best time I catch them out of somewhere getting gas, so.
I hear you.
They are really, really and truly nice, we got some nice people.
We do.
Because I see them a lot, they be helping people in vans and opening doors, and, and that's what, that's what it takes.
It's customer service. Thank you. All good?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I had a hot seat.
What's worse than this is in front of the podium. Don't say it, I'm being honest, I'm being honest.
Let's have this side of the table. Who's on your next?
Mr. Chairman, Jim is here with the tax office, and followed by the tax office will come Public Works.
I'll go to Jim first, okay?
Yes, sir. The tax man coming.
Tax man is here, almost that time again. And I've got some more cover sheets as well. I guess we can, I'll give him a pass around.
You go ahead, sit there.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for your time this afternoon. It's Jim Johnson, tax administrator here for the tax office. Briefly, you know, we're charged with, um, listing, assessing, and billing all property taxes for the county, with tax register, tax cash register for the county, basically, is what we are. We have four departments, listing, business listing, real estate, and collections. We got about a forty-five million dollar estimated levy coming up for the current fiscal year. We typically, you know, we're always over ninety-seven percent on the collection rate for eastern North Carolina, rural county, I think, that's, that's one of the best. You know, we have a challenge now with losing another employee, we've got a skeleton crew in each department, three or four people. Case in point, last week in collections, I had two people in there, and I had to bring people from another department just to get through lunchtime. There's times, you know, of the year that we're extremely heavy, phone ringing off the hook, you know, foot traffic, when the bills first go out, end of the year, January of the listing period, you know, it's a challenge. So, you know, we're gonna, as we face these times with one less person- we do the best we can with what we got to work with.
If you hit real behind Ericoff on some, you can probably get it.
We could use him. When you go back to school? August the first, I need you.
I know you should say.
Now, we'll be mailing the tax bills out typically last week in July, so we can have them in the mailboxes by August the first to give, you know, all the citizens the full thirty days to pay into two percent discount, take advantage of that. And typically, we'll collect half of the tax revenue in August during the discount period, so.
Well, I just want to tell you that I appreciate what you did by giving up a big position, because I know before this came out, we did a little talking, and one of y'all was one of them, we sit talking, and I know you're at a skeleton crew.
Yeah.
And again, I've said it before, but I appreciate what the people in this county have done to keep us through this. I'm just gonna call it like I feel like it is, I just think it's just a little bit of a crunch.
Yeah.
And we're gonna go through it, things are gonna get better, and we'll get there, but we've got a few things that we gotta make happen.
And then moving from an eight-year to a four-year reappraisal cycle. I mean, pretty much, we're in reappraisal mode at all times now. We're finishing up one, you know, we're getting ready to start the next one. You know, they'll be in the field no later than January. So, you know, that'll be due in twenty-eight, so it's, when you finish one cycle, now you're starting on the next one.
Yep, I know.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make one note about revaluation. This came up at one of the town hall meetings. And at the town hall meeting, a citizen talked about that, you know, with the proposed six-cent tax increase, that was one thing, but that with revaluation, that was also a tax increase. But actually, revaluation, the purpose of revaluation in North Carolina is just to make, it's a true-up with what market value is. So we tax based on what the value of property is, unless it's under present use value for agriculture, timber, which we talked all about that this year. So the fact is, though, with the tax rate dropping twenty cent for some people, and it varies person by person based on how much your revaluation was, it's not necessarily true that you would have paid more because of revaluation. Overall, the county went below revenue neutral. Whether a person paid more or not depended on their specific situation. And in fact, there are some instances, and we particularly found out most recently, and I shared with the board about there are some farms that actually paid less after revaluation than they did before revaluation, simply because of the amount of land in present use value. So that's something to think about. I just wanted to, once again, since we were in a budget workshop kind of on the record, just go back to say, it's not necessarily, revaluation does not mean a tax rate increase. So the last tax rate increase that you had, and I actually gave my sheet to the Sampson Independent, but we did have a sheet of, back to nineteen seventy-four, of every tax rate, and it was two thousand fifteen was the last, is that right?
Yeah, the last fiscal year, yeah.
The last fiscal year, fiscal year fifteen was the last tax rate increase in Sampson County. So you've, you know, you've been able to go through ten years, and I appreciate what tax has done to maintain a good collection rate as well.
Yeah, dude.
Jim, I've been asking everybody about if they could find an additional, and four percent of your budget, for all practical purposes, would be about seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And I know you can't do it by eliminating a position, but would you be able to save any additional money through advertising, data processing?
Well, you know, well, now, if you go back and look at some of these things, like professional services, we've got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted for tax foreclosures. That is offset by legal fees collected, so really, that's not a cost to the county. We don't even get billed by the attorney until we've actually collected the legal fees. Same thing with advertising costs. Advertising costs, you know, we reevaluate it every so often. When I started, it was about two dollars added to every parcel that was advertised, and then it went up to three dollars, and now we've got it at five dollars. So, you know, occasionally, we'll look at the cost of the advertising ad and add that cost to advertising back to that parcel, and we collect that fees when we collect taxes on it as well. So I really don't see anywhere else that we can, you know, get blood out of a turnip, so to speak.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, a lot of that we recoup, and, you know, what we're seeing now with postage, you know, postage is getting ready to go up again in July. It goes up twice a year now. And if you look at what we do with garnishments for years, ever since I've been there, the garnishment fee's been thirty dollars, but a school of government said you can charge sixty. Well, as long as we were covering our costs, we don't want to put no more burden on the taxpayer than we can. But this year, with the costs going up, up, and up, we've raised it to the maximum, sixty dollars. So that's gonna be in there to help offset some of the garnishment fee and the certified postage costs.
Mr. Johnson, I can honestly say, I believe you've been in that position ever since I was a little girl.
Actually, next month will be fourteen years, and I'm up for reapportments, so I kind of hope you let me stick around a few days.
You have been, you have been the same, ever since you've been there.
Yeah.
And that means you really know what you're doing, and you care about the people you do.
Well, you try to, you know, I told the board years ago when I started, you know, we never get any complaints on you. I said, "Well, the philosophy is you treat everybody the way you want to be treated, and you treat everybody equally."
That's true.
You know, the two words we hear in our business the most are fair and equitable.
That's right.
And that's what we try to, that's what we try to do.
That's what you do in so far, too, for everything you do.
Well, I appreciate it.
For all the citizens and for me, even though my taxes went up.
Mine went up too.
But you, you get stuff, we'll find you.
I appreciate it, I really do.
Please watch out for savings anywhere you can possibly find it, if it comes along.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So.
Yeah.
I think that's something, that's what you just said, I think we're gonna see some of that, Rose. I think we're in that mindset, everybody that's in, they see something that they can do, that they can do a little different.
Yeah, we're trying to offset those.
I think we've got the mindset there, that we're gonna see some of that going forward. I think that's gonna give us, the management needs to do some other things to help our employees, I really do.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel that way.
Yeah, I do too.
And I like the mindset that our department has right now, I really do. Any more questions, any thoughts?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. I appreciate you guys, thank you.
And as he leaves the table, I will say, I also appreciate Jim, I'll call him up and ask him for data. Hey, run this. Hey, look at that. Hey, give me this.
I should have never told him I was at McDonald's at five o'clock every morning.
Yeah.
He started texting me.
Because I'm on my drive in, and I know he's at McDonald's.
Sometimes I'll put my foot in my mouth.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
You heard that?
I sure did.
I heard that.
Aw, I love it.
Do that, do that again.
Thank you, take care.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, as much as it pains me to say it, Public Works is here, and I guess you gotta hear from her.
They're scheduled for Friday, they're here tonight, oh, bloody.
Good evening. Hold on just a minute, I gotta look at you boss.
Yeah, I see that, I see that.
I beat you to it, Ryan. Oh, okay. Good evening, how y'all doing?
Very good, sir.
I have three budgets I have to look after. I've got the airport, building budget, and water budget. If y'all don't mind, we'll look at the airport first. I brought Miss Ashley Holland with me today to, in case there's things I may forget or misspeak, so he may be talking a lot. The airport budget, it's, the original budget's usually a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. We have cut it back this year to eighty-nine thousand, five seventy-nine. Oh, there's, I've cut the pilot courtesy car out, cut some utilities back, some money for building maintenance back, and done some extreme cutting there, but I think we can live with it.
Well, I was out there, and I know that the, when you go up, everything looks fine. I know the lighting and the runway are gonna get the FFAA favor for all that, it's not fit to us. So whatever they do, the only thing I say that you might have in, in the sense that airport, might be something like, if you run in, if they mess up enough at airport, they get done. That might be something that could come as a surprise. I hope it doesn't, I hope you got everything figured in, but that's the one that's, that's the only thing bothering me. If they're out there working, thanks after.
Right, right, understood. Has anybody got any questions, concerns?
At airport, there is a conference room area out there.
That's correct.
For the sake of the new manager, how will they get access to use that, or will just contact you, or?
Oh, yes, he can contact me, and I can give him the code to get in.
And then also, if it's during the day, it should be open, and if not, we can make sure that happens.
It's usually open from seven in the morning to seven in the evening. Any questions on the airport? One note?
I was just gonna ask, I know that, I'm aware that the City of Clinton also provides some funding to the airport, too. What is their portion of the airport funding, do you know?
Uh, don't.
It was, at one time was five percent.
Five percent?
I don't know if that's one of the.
Five percent of what ours is, or five percent of total?
I think it's five percent total.
I believe it is. It's either five or ten. Ninety-ten is coming to my mind now, ninety percent of this.
And I said it probably.
Do you have any chance to number this?
No, I'm trying to think if I've seen a revenue source from City of Clinton contributing to the airport.
I know we take care of all the maintenance, at our expense, county's expense. I do know if we purchase land out there, they put a percentage in to buy the land because just bought a large parcel out there, and they help with a percentage. But to be honest with you, I don't know what percentage is.
I was under the assumption that we were doing everything on a fifty-fifty today. If you asked them, did I tell you that they don't have, and we don't have? Somewhere or another, I didn't see half, if you, I have not heard half there on your map yet. Is that wrong?
Uh, no, I mean, we do one percent of maintenance out there, and we fund.
That's just a good answer.
I had asked Jim, who just walked out, about the taxes paid on airplanes there, because that's a great source of revenue. And as I recall, and I can't find his email right now, but as I recall, we get about sixty-seven thousand dollars in taxes. One of the things that I would recommend that you do, and I mentioned this at a town hall meeting the other day, was if you are able to enter a public-private partnership so that a private developer gets a reasonable lease of land and will take on the cost of building new hangars, then they could get hangar rent from airplanes, but you'll get the taxes off the airplanes. And you'll get the taxes off the hangars, too. But, but, I mean, I would not necessarily suggest that the county or the city spend money building hangars, but you could do a lease deal and then get airplane taxes. There are at least two airplanes, I think, Ray, were you the one that told me that? There are two planes of people that are currently living or have businesses in Sampson County, and the planes are housed elsewhere because there's not hangar space available.
We've addressed that by being on the board, so everyone here knows, as far as our board goes, we have addressed that, we are looking at doing outside contract. I think I tested this too, there is, is in the process, and hopefully, we will enter that to where we can fix those situations that where, like you just said, the person who builds the hangar, not paying any, he gets to rent on the hangars, but we reassess or we regain the land back in, say, thirty, thirty-five years, that's what we talked about. But in the meantime, we do get the taxes, I'm booked a claim in there.
Right.
So I think it's a win-win, and I think it's the only way we're gonna grow the airport.
And there is no City of Clinton contribution line item going into the airport revenues. They do, like I said, when we purchase land or things like that, we'll contribute to it. Back in twenty-twenty, there was a parking lot, airport terminal, and a Rackley Airport subdivision that they contributed to, and then more recently than that was that piece of land that Mark was talking about.
Anything else about the airport? All right, we'll move the buildings now.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just found it, sorry. For twenty-twenty-four, we build thirty-seven aircraft at a total tax value of ten million eight hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. And at the current tax rate, that equates to sixty-seven thousand dollars, sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars a year. So you've got ten million dollars worth of airplanes sitting out there, and you could do more.
Tax revenue almost covers the county's expenditure for the airport.
It probably would cover this, I don't know, old taxation. They need to increase some of those planes.
Yeah.
But they got a twenty-cent tax rate.
Yeah.
To be honest, I can do that math in my head real quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not, the planes are not under present use value.
No, they're not, they're not. They don't go through revaluation like.
Like other things, maybe, yeah, just, you know, for thought, I mean, you look at the sixty-seven thousand now, and you go back one year when it was up where it was, and it was probably eighty-nine, ninety thousand.
Yeah.
I hadn't done the math, I'm just guessing. Heads up.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, there was one year a plane was bought, the first year taxes was eighty-nine thousand.
Just at one point.
For one year.
Right now, I.
We appreciate every time, but.
Yeah, they do appreciate it.
But if you could attract those type of planes, and just like you talked about, if they don't have babies and they don't.
And my understanding is, from what I understand about being on the board, that they are looking, there's some people who would love to be in Sampson County, we've extended the runway. We've done some things, the FFAA has really worked with us, and we got a very attractive place. And I think it's entertainable to say that we may do some things to develop the airport to bring some business in, I think it'll be a great deal. Sorry to get hung up on that.
That's all right. Moving to buildings now, just, the buildings is, I've got twenty-seven buildings in the county that we're in charge of maintenance on and keeping up. I've got five men that does that, four utility maintenance workers, and then one working supervisor that keeps up the county facilities, everything we own, and they do a great job of it. They're also in charge of putting up road signs. To be honest with you, road signs sometimes is on the back burner because we've got other more important things like air conditioners, heaters, and other things that we've got to get fixed. Just to give you a rough breakdown of what we have cut this year in buildings, we cut road signs back from fifty thousand to ten thousand. Travel, we cut back to zero. Telephone and postage, we dropped from eighty-five to eighty-two fifty. Utilities was five hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. We dropped that back to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Hope there's not a big rate increase this year for utilities. Contracted services, we cut that from four hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars to three hundred and thirty-nine dollars, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars and two hundred and forty dollars. Three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. I finally got it. A lot of that comes from our mowing, we've completely done away with our mowing contract. Our department does most of the mowing with parks and wrecks. Dana has agreed to help with the mowing to do this facility here, and we've been able to cut back and save some money of that. And the sheriff, the sheriff is gonna help with inmates also with that. And we've also cut most buildings back janitorial-wise from five days a week to three days a week. Any questions on buildings?
What's the, what's the biggest driver of your actual increase, though? Since you're actually having an increase since last year.
Right. We have got a lot of big-ticket items that have got to be replaced. Replacement of non-functional boiler and repairs to leaking water pumps, hundred and five thousand over at Department of Social Services. Boiler and chiller repair, sixty-five thousand over at Social. A boiler and chiller repair, sixty-five thousand over at Social Services. Roof restoration of several buildings, two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Generator project for a hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine forty-two. Lakewood High School, adding another two hundred thousand dollars for the new EMS building in Roseboro. Replacement of two HVACs, thirty-five thousand dollars, which I'm pretty sure that's not going to be enough, but we've got our fingers crossed. Usually five to six HVACs a year goes out on us. Garland EMS, replace a generator there. Twenty-five thousand for engineering services to go to the courthouse to see what we can do about the heating and air unit there. And the electrical, the electrical panel is maxed out at courthouse. Courthouse, as all of us know, is in bad shape. Very bad shape. And then putting a roof, hundred and fifty thousand dollars on Public Works, which is leaking. Sometimes when it rains, it rains more indoor apps than outside. It's pretty holy. That's where the increase is.
That's a fluid coat too. That's not a, that's not a roof replaced, that's just a patch. So in other words, that's a, that's a fluid coat going on there and all like that, just to make sure that, trying to cover up both ends.
What about some of the buildings the county no longer uses, or I should, I should also rephrase and say that possibly not using adequately. Like, for instance, the Charles E. Perry Building in Roseboro, I know that, I think Head Start uses part of it, and then the Agent Services, Senior Services uses part of it, and Recreation uses part of it too, but is that a building that the county really is getting?
We don't maintain, we don't maintain them.
You don't maintain that building at all?
Not at all.
Well, since it's no longer a school, I thought it might be able to work somehow.
Didn't tell him all about it. He didn't tell him all about it. County used to own it, but tell him all about all of his stuff.
We don't maintain any schools, new or old.
Not the school in Roseboro.
So there's no other buildings the county owns that, like the EMS building, we got rid of it, we sold it.
Yes, correct.
Is there another building that we need to look at selling that I'm not aware of?
No, everything we've got is packed full.
It's utilized, all, all the county buildings right now is utilized that we're currently looking at. And, and they're almost maxed out, so.
Courthouse is maxed out. We've got parole in the basement, which floods frequently. I mean, we've got them stuck everywhere. We've got some over here in the mobile building, next inspections. We've got all buildings that we maintain and own is in use.
Well, with the courthouse, for instance, with the electrical, if I get a call, or Jason gets called, whatever, and if it's from the state or the state IT or something other like that, and they ask me, okay, I need to come in and I need to put this amount in, in, in this part of the courthouse, or I need to put this in the courtroom, I said, okay, that's fine, but what are you taking away? And they're like, what you mean? I said, you've got to take away to put in. I said, because we're maxed out, we cannot keep adding to this, or we're gonna have a complete meltdown. So that, that, that's the point we're at right now. We're, we're to that point to where it's okay, you can put in, but what are we taking back? So we've got to account for what's going in there before we have a real problem.
Commissioners on the courthouse, I've done, I've done one historic Superior Courthouse renovation, a district court renovation, and I did the design work on the new courthouse, which is a four-story large building in downtown Jacksonville. It's a difficult process because court never stops. So when the renovation happens, you're going to have to find courtroom facilities and all offices to, to continue court operations for probably three years. So you'll be three years somewhere else doing that. But thankfully, your new county manager also has experience in doing courthouse renovations. You, you are maxed out. This is, this is actually the number one thing I, I told the lobbyists was the courthouse is probably the number one thing that you can't afford, that, that you are going to have to do something with. And at least in Jacksonville, there was a, a really big question about where the courthouse would be located. I understand that, that where it's currently at in Clinton, the courthouse is a historic building. It is a center of town and is literally like in the center of a traffic circle in town. But it's got two expansion buildings, the annex and the extension, and, and they're maxed out too. So it's, in fact, over the tax office is one courtroom, and that's not right next to the courthouse. So I, I definitely think that, that you have some, some difficulties ahead with that one. And I also don't think that seventy-five million dollars is going to do everything you need to have done. It, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty expensive. There's, is there moisture seepage?
Yes.
So, you know, we, we had to go through, we had to re-point all the brick. We basically disassembled the courthouse and put it back. And everything had to be kept. So we even went down to removing the pews that were in the courtrooms and refinishing them. So it, it's a, it's something else. That, that I think, your other facilities, according to a, a guy that we had come in, your other facilities are all generally in, in pretty good shape. You don't have a transportation building, it's a double-wide. Probation parole over here is a bricked-up double-wide. So some of your spacers are smaller, but in terms of, in terms of the number one building, you have no choice about providing, and that is in the worst shape, it is a hundred percent your courthouse.
Everybody realizes the courthouse is in need of some, needing some addressing, but one thing I want to address now in this setting is, I would like, personally, we'd like to see the courthouse stay in downtown Clinton. I don't ever want to see it moved, or like the didn't willing to move it from downtown out to after the age of town, it would basically ruin the downtown willing. I don't want to see Clinton ruined. Because the courthouse has moved to Fontana Street, somewhere like that. We need to keep it in downtown.
I agree.
Since, since we were talking about facilities, I know that Telamon, when they took over Head Start in Sampson County, they purchased those buildings that Head Start was kept in. They had one at Harrows, they had one at Garland, Roseboro, and they got one in Clinton. But if those buildings aren't maintained, they need to do something about it. Because they're responsible for them. They bought from the county. I don't know how much they paid for them, but the people that were working there, that worked for the county was sent home, and they put their people in. But the children are from Sampson County that built it. So they own those buildings, county owned, so they don't want to need to be responsible for maintaining. And the Garland was so messed up until they wouldn't even open it for the children to go in. But Harrows was in good shape until they made it set up for about five or six years, and now it's fallen. They need to, you know, need to contact them. They out of Charlotte, Telamon.
But we're not responding, we're not doing anything with those.
No, we, we don't have no jurisdiction over them.
They're in this county falling down. If they fall down on somebody, who's got jurisdiction on that?
I don't know, but it's not Public Works. We don't, we don't own the buildings, and we cannot do no maintenance on them.
I'm not talking about that. They need to know that. They need to, they probably don't even come down here to check the buildings, to see what condition they're in. It's somebody's responsibility. It's not ours. It's theirs.
It's the, it's the property owner's responsibility to maintain the facility, and if something happens, it's their liability too.
That's Telamon.
Mark, and actually, I've been asking everybody about how they can save one or two percent. And I realize with Public Works, the buildings are the buildings, and HVAC costs X amount of dollars with this county government or your personal business or home, so just please watch out for whatever you can save and try to save every time you can.
We will.
Thank you.
We will.
We're going to try to make sure, based on what we're buying, so I'm always trying to make sure I find the best thing.
Any more questions about buildings? All right, we'll move to water. As y'all know, water is an enterprise. We use no local tax dollars to fund or operate our water department. What we make is what we use to run our water department. Where we have got, we're projected this year to have a little over eight hundred thousand dollars after we do this budget, probably a little over eight hundred thousand in revenue that we can put in our, our fund. And we're doing real good. We've grown. I've been here thirteen years. When I come, we had between five thousand and fifty-five hundred customers. We're now a little over seven thousand customers. Plus, we've added on two big customers since I've been here. Johnson County buys fifty million gallons a month. And then Enviva buys anywhere from seven million to twelve, thirteen million a month. So water business is real good. We're making good revenue and there's, there's no issues with water. I mean, water's great. We have little discolored water every now and then, but that's due to hydrants being open, construction being done on the lines, and that'll cause discolored water. We've got construction going on now at Spivey's Corner with a new tank, a booster pump. At Bonnetville, a new booster pump. Roseboro, a new tank. We've got the big project going on at Ivanhoe with Forty Miles, a new water line. And we've got grant applications in for Warsaw Road, Mintz Highway. And we're looking grants all the time. That's about the only way we can put lines in is, or do any kind of work, is through grants. Right now, our biggest issue is water. We have maxed out on our water capacity, what DEQ requires us to have. I've had three subdivision developers, subdivision developers come to me in the last month wanting to build subdivisions, and I've had to tell them we've not got water capacity at this time. I have talked with Dunn, going to try to buy nine million a month more from them, which cuts into our profit when we do that. And I, I've not got nothing official, but somebody told me last night that the Dunn City Board did agree to sell us nine more million a month. So I hope that is true, because we need it.
If you got into buying, would you be able to reduce your amount you sell to Johnson County in order to keep it in Sampson County? Are you under contract to sell it?
We're under contract. We're in contract.
Well, another question I have is, we had talked in the past about, you know, that at one point you were buying water from Roseboro in Clinton, and then you just started buying from Clinton. And the reason to stop buying from Roseboro is because their water pressure wasn't sufficient enough. Knowing that we now have a need for more water, do you need to have conversation, or do we need to have conversation, or do the county manager have conversation with the town mayor and the town board about seeing what they need to do to get their water pressure fixed so that they can get back to selling the county water?
Well, I've got good news and bad news about that. The, the bad news is, is Roseboro Water dead ends at Ultra Ville. So that's as far as that goes. So that's not going to benefit us to get more water from them or build that or pressure it. The good news is, since I'm having this problem with water capacity, I am going to keep buying water from Roseboro and mix it with the Clinton water I'm buying. And that way I can keep the capacity that they guaranteed me with Roseboro, and I'll still be buying a little water from the, it'll just be mixing with the Clinton water. I have not talked to the mayor about that yet, but that's my intention.
My, my thought was, is, you know, you have that new water tower down from Bello Blue Diamond, there's no reason that the town of Roseboro shouldn't be able to keep that thing.
I, I intend to, to keep buying some water. It won't be as much as we are now. But with all this going on, I am going to keep buying some water from them just to keep their capacity. I need the capacity for DEQ's paperwork.
Are we going to have any increase in the new tanks coming online?
As far as increasing?
Water pressure works a lot.
The.
Is that going to be reassessed, is what I'm saying, every year?
When it was designed, the engineers designed Spivey's Corner to give more pressure west in the Clement area and back on Ultra Mill Road. So that should give more pressure to that area. And the same with the Roseboro tank. The tank and the booster pump should give more pressure to Ultra Ville and the homes between Roseboro and Ultra Ville. We are in the process now, in fact, it's going out to bid July the first. We had a parade bid conference yesterday for two new wells, one at King Road off seven oh one north, and one on Taylor's Bridge Highway at intersection of Edmond and Mathis, just before we get to the Old roadside park. We're going to put a well there at them two places. And then, once we get that done, we're going to put, we're going to see how much water we can get behind the tank in front of Hobden High School. So hopefully, within two years, I'm going to have three wells that will be producing out of, which will make us a total of six wells. And hopefully I can cut back on buying so much water at that time.
Well, I'm going to respectfully disagree, because what's going to happen in three years' time?
Growth.
You're going to have ten or twelve or fifteen more subdivisions that are going to come. So commissioners, I, I want to, I want to.
Industrial Park's lamp.
Yeah, well, hopefully, hopefully you do have that as a problem. That's right. And you don't have to turn here, but on page thirty is the Public Works proposed fees. There are no, there are no fee changes proposed for the water department. But I'm here to tell you that Sampson County is doing something that very few other systems do now. And that is, you, you do not have something called a system development fee. You have tap fees, you have connection fees, you've got, you know, your, your three-quarter tap, your one-inch tap, twelve hundred dollars. A lot of other places have a system development fee, which has to be calculated by a financial advisor after they do a rate study and take a look at what you need to build in the future. And that system development fee helps you earn money to develop the system that you're going to have to put in place to provide water for the county. So it's great if, if, if you got eight million dollars in grant money to put a water line down Old Mintz Highway and Old Warsaw Road. The water in that water line has to come from your current system. And right now, I think that you're, you, you need to invest, I, I believe, soon in, in a couple, three things. First of all, I think that you need to probably have, unless you have a new one, a model, a computer model of your water system for hydrology. So an engineering firm needs to come in, map out your system, and they can tell you where adding, if, if you add, well, you do, you call them up and say, hey, we've got a, we've got a request to add fifty new lots in a subdivision on Highway seven oh one at this address. Well, they'll plug in the water usage averaging five thousand gallons per day for, for fifty new houses. And they'll tell you, well, you're, you're going to see a pressure drop. And you're going to have pressure problems along this line of, of the county. You're going to need to move water from over here to over here. So number one, I think you need to have an engineering study done. Number two, I think that you need to have a fee study based on a, a capital improvement plan. So you do need, you do need to look ahead and see what you're going to be building. Those wells are great, fantastic, you need to be doing that, but you're going to need more wells. Or you're going to be buying way more water from someone else until they tell you, we can't sell you any more water, we're out. We're saving the rest of our water for us and our own growth. So, so I believe that you're going to need an analysis of what your, your future capital is going to be. And then I think that you need to have a rate study, and you have to have an analysis of your system development fee. The General Assembly, this was a huge controversy in North Carolina, because some, some towns and cities in particular, out towards Charlotte, Monroe comes to mind. I don't know if you remember Monroe, but they set a system development fee that was not in relation to what they planned on building. And the developers took them to court and won. So now, for you to do a system development fee, you have to know, well, this is what we're going to build. You can't just say, we're going to build, we're going to build fifty-five new two-hundred-thousand gallon water tanks. gallon water tanks, because that's crazy. But you design out the system, you know where your growth is probably coming, and then, after you design out the system, you know how much, well, engineering-wise, how much that's going to cost you? Is it going to be two-hundred million dollars for what you're going to need in the next ten years? Then you hire the people to come in, and they do an analysis of the debt that you'll have to go in for the water system to build the infrastructure you need, and then that will generate a number for your system development fee that's defensible to the state. So, I've emailed Mr. Van, a contact. I have nothing to do with this company. I just use them. I use them myself. So, it's Raftellus. Raftellus, they are one of the premier companies in North Carolina that help North Carolina utilities. So, the contact name is Elaine Conti, and Raftellus, they can come in, do a rate study, and do a system development fee study. But they can't do that unless you tell them what you plan on building in the future. So, the engineering has to come first. So, you would, you would study where growth is coming, do the engineering, then do the rate study and a system development fee. But I'm not aware of, I really am not aware of any other jurisdiction right now that doesn't charge any system development fee if they're as big as you are and are expecting growth coming in the future. And by the way, system development fee means that the cost for future growth isn't borne by your current water bill payers. So, a system development fee is, if a developer comes in and wants a hundred and fifty lots, the developer pays a system development fee for a hundred and fifty lots. You're not having to subsidize the well construction off of somebody that lives in Ivanhoe paying a water bill for a developer that's putting in lots that you need to well for. So, it puts the cost on the people that are doing the development.
Let me also add, our debt services in the water department is around a million dollars a year, and we're paying over six hundred thousand dollars a year to buy water. So, right there's one point six million dollars that we're paying out. As far as being in debt, we're probably as deep as we need to get in debt with the water department.
Any other questions? I think you're all good, sir.
Thank y'all. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, I want to...
Yes, sir.
Appreciate keeping it straight today.
Try my best.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Anyone else, sir? Except for you.
Well, I think, I think Wanda said she wanted to come back up. You didn't? Did you? No?
No way.
She said she'd been there one time, she would do it again.
Well, commissioners, according to our rough schedule, four o'clock was recap of the day. We're at three fifty, so now is a good time to recap the day. And we have moved people around, so it looks like on Friday, right now, we've already taken care of tax, we've taken care of Public Works, transportation, we've not taken care of lunch for Friday, so we hope that you still have lunch on Friday. The Expo Center, I've sent her an email, and I'll ask Stephanie to follow up with her to come at nine-thirty in the morning.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow morning, please. And then, I've gotten word from Sampson Community College, Clinton City Schools, and Sampson County Schools. All of them have asked if they could come at the same time at one P.M. on Friday, because they're all education, and you just kind of handle them all together. They said that they would like that, it would work with their schedule if they could all just show up at the same time at one o'clock. I told them I didn't care, as long as the board got to ask, ask all the questions they needed to ask, that was fine with me. So, they'll all just be in the same room at one o'clock. So, I believe we've taken care of the full morning on Friday morning. We do have a one, the one P.M. with education. And then tomorrow, we have everything that's on your sheet, planning and zoning, Agri Expo, emergency services, animal shelter, Rotary of Deeds, library, cooperative extension, soil water, and recap the day. Today, I only recorded one change, and I'll ask if Nancy or Melissa had anything else, and that was fifteen hundred dollars added to the travel for veteran services. That's the only change that I had today. I know that, sitting here through the day, just keeping track of emails, you, the board has received eight or ten, maybe, budget comments. So, we did set up, of course, the budget comments at Sampson County, NC.gov, and most of the budget comment feedback so far has been, most of it has been actually relative to the museum. And there's one scanned copy, and that scanned copy is from Mr. Barefoot, Sheila Barefoot, and Jimmy Barefoot, and their, their questions or comments were about, a little bit about the library, I believe.
We have one from Pat Usher about libraries.
Okay.
You realize that if we're getting, we're getting a lot of kickback, more kickback on the fact that the history museum, which is not even a department of county government, we're getting kickback on reduction in funding for it, more than we're getting a kickback on the proposed six cent tax increase. That means that the political will of the county for additional cuts throughout county government would be hard to come by. So, it would seem to indicate to me that the, that the will of the people would be more in favor of doing the six cent tax increase than further cuts in county services. It's just my takeaway from that. In fact, most of the emails we have received and the backlash that we have experienced has been more with regard to cuts in spending than increases in taxes, which is a little bit surprising.
I'm going to go ahead and tell you, I was surprised at a lot of the feedback from the library system. I think what it was, like I've told you just about two or three other day, one of the poorest jobs we do is to let the citizens know what we actually do and to give them a show of what we do. Just a story from the library the other night, you know, they actually helped people print out their medical histories and help them sign up for medical appointments for the elderly. I think we're missing a mark with our library system too on using them for additional outreach services for county agencies. You know, for instance, you know, somebody decided to get up for recreation, they can go to the Newton Grove Library or to the Garland Library or the Roseboro Library, fill out their stuff, and they had to work out some type of courier service where they pick up everything, redistribute it, or just straight transmit, just pay for electronic, electronic revenue. We've got to figure out a way to enhance government services for the citizens, but utilize the resources that we have. It was a very good meeting the other night. I'm just leaving that.
I do wish you, Mr. Pope, I do believe that our buildings, such as the library, can be used for multiple purposes, just like Friday, Mr. Hudson and I was in Garland. He was having his budget meeting, and we had a lot of people in there. And if there's something going on, like some training that the people needed or something they needed to know about, that would be some places that we could hold those meetings and not have to rent any place, just go into the libraries that are, you know, not having many people on the days that they, they're over. We could use the buildings. I wouldn't want to close them.
I've just gone through the rest of the emails, and all the emails that I can see are about the library or the museum. The one that, I guess, stood out to me was a scanned document from Mr. Barefoot, and that, that's where he said specifically, Commissioner Crumpler, to your point, and the board probably has all these already, I'm sure. So, it's in your emails as well. Jimmy and Sheila Barefoot, I'll skip, they were very kind in some of their comments. They say, I know much work has been put into meeting the budget. We're okay with the six cent increase. You all have a tough job for the next few weeks. Many thanks, Jimmy and Sheila Barefoot. I do know that we had a speaker the other day at the county commissioners meeting that did indicate, do not do any tax increase, rather go back and do cuts. Your cuts equivalent to a six cent tax increase are over four million dollars. So, I think what you heard today directly from the department heads is, they actually did cut, and, and you will impact services. If, and just for perspective, if the board said, we're going to put the library branches all back to where they were, and I'm not talking about the Garland fifty-one thousand, which three members of the Garland Town Council, I believe, were there, and even though they voted on it, at least the three that were there did indicate that they did not believe that, first of all, they said, do not call it a grant. It's not a grant. It's that we're, we're subsidizing the county's efforts, and that, and that they did not believe that, that they should be doing that. Your total savings for the library is a hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. The museum, the difference in what they were funded at last year and what they're funded at now is forty thousand dollars. And there's one other program that you may hear about. There is fifty thousand dollars in the budget for this, but last year's appropriation was one hundred thousand dollars, and that's the BMAT program, the Beaver Management Assistance Program. That's, that's another thing that I have heard contact, nothing in email. I've actually just had a person or two talk to me about if, unless you take care of the beavers, you're going to have flooding, and if you had flooding, you're going to have property damage. You have property damage, you have a lower tax base. So, the last year was a hundred thousand. If you did, did anything else with Beaver Management, I would say, put another twenty-five thousand dollars into it. But, you know, that, that altogether, twenty-five thousand were for Beaver Management, which would bring it to seventy-five, not a hundred. If you, if you just did thirty thousand for the museum, that would put them at fifty thousand, not sixty thousand. I mean, that is a cut, but I believe that at fifty thousand, they could probably continue to operate. And then, the library, it's, you know, the total refund of the library would be a hundred and twenty-one, eight eighty-five, which the board may not choose to do. If you, if you, we've got numbers for everyday reduction, what everyday reduction would be per branch. So, those are just some choices that the board might consider. I don't believe that there's another, there is no other revenue source other than purely donations. So, if there's another revenue source other than donations, like recurring revenue, it would mean going into your fund balance. I do believe that you have two or three things happening in the next year. Number one, you need a COLA next year, I believe. Number two, you have a situation where we have no GFL. If they, if you cannot negotiate another series of free convenience center sites, that's a, that's about one point two million dollars a year. And then, there was a third one, which escapes me at the moment, but there was another big one. I remember that. So, next year, next year, going down to one point three this year, it gives you latitude, more latitude for next year. I believe that you'll need to hit your fund balance more, because growth will not pick all that up. But you still have some flexibility. You're at one point three, you know, you still have flexibility this year in your fund balance. So, I want, I want you to know that.
We still don't have, I mean, we don't, I mean, I miss a lot of taking in. And I don't want to talk a lot about Commissioner Drow being here, but we really need to think about the direction we're going in to a point. I think I've looked over enough to know that I, and I've heard enough, I'd want you to meet you, to know that those are concerns of the majority of our citizens. I've heard all three mentioned in my district. Also, because I think I've mentioned here a little bit on this, if we did away with the two contingency plans that we have in our budget, I guess, on the buildings or whatever for a year, I'm going to ask you in open session, how bad is that going to hurt? It's just, that's a penny and a half. Is that going to just, I mean, do we need that going forward? I need, I need, I want you to be honest with people.
Yeah, you will need money going forward.
I know that.
I don't...
What worries me is if a building goes down or a shelter goes...
Right.
There you are with no money, you got to go get the money anyway. And that's what they got to understand. We're either going to tax the money back to us, or we're going to take it out of fund balance somehow going forward.
Yes.
Am I wrong?
That's...
It's somehow.
That's right. And I'm going to switch over, let me look this for a second.
I kind of forgot something, but anyway. If we don't do a COLA next year, we're going to be through the whole county.
Oh, I see that. That's one of the reasons we need to be careful not, I know we've added fifteen hundred back for veterans to go to the, to their annual convention, but we can't get them to have to divest and back into the budget like, you know, the library people want us to keep Roseboro and Newton Grove open four and two days a week. And when you, when you look at it from the total standpoint of the budget, it's not worth that much money, but when you go adding back here and there and you keep adding on, it's just going to diminish our ability to give a good COLA next year, so we have to be careful not to add back. That's why I wouldn't be in favor of starting to add too much back into the budget that's already been good. I would rather be trying to find additional savings.
So, there are a couple of things that, and I mentioned this at the very start of the day, there are a couple of things that we know that we need to add into the budget, honestly, because, because just very small things. But we've covered that with the truck that we found, and we also cover that, because in one place, we keyed the same twenty thousand dollar item twice, so we only need, meant to key it once, you know, things like that. So, right now, we're balanced with those things. Anything like this that we're talking about, the library, thirty thousand, forty thousand for the museum, twenty-five thousand for BMAT, we don't have savings for that. We haven't, we've got, not got, you know, found money because of a keying error that takes care of something like that. So, right now, the only place I know for you to get that is, instead of, it's either fund balance or instead of six point zero zero zero, it's six point zero zero one, you know, in terms, and I know, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, you only got two places to go. In terms of your, your six cent tax increase that's proposed, here are the things that I do not believe, under any circumstance, that you could get around without a lot of difficulty and possibly future liability. The first is your public education current expense funding, increasing that if you're at one oh four. I know that the school systems were concerned about that, especially Sampson County Schools was concerned about that. I think your two, two pennies for public education current expense, that, that just helps education. And, and it doesn't even get you into the fifties, it gets you into the mid-nineties. So, those two pennies, I think, are very important. I think that, right now, you do not have any money for two ambulances, and you don't have any money for two patrol cars. So, that is another two pennies, so that's four pennies.
Two patrol cars, thirteen?
Thirteen, thirteen. Yes, thirteen. So, and the sheriff, I understand, is paying for two patrol cars. Maybe that's what I was thinking about. He's, he's paying it out of his money. His, his non-county money. So, I think you're at four cent just to do education, public safety. Now, the other, the other two pennies, oh, and the other one is a half cent. So, I cut Sampson Community College. We've been giving them two hundred and fifty thousand a year to maintain their campus. I cut that and put it in the half cent for Sampson Community College. So, I believe that that half cent is absolutely necessary. If you don't do that half cent, then we have to find two fifty in fund balance, at least two fifty in fund balance to give them for their capital needs. So, you're at four and a half cent. The other penny and a half, one penny was for the public education capital fund, so that, that penny was not going to the school system. That penny is designated savings. So, we have a fund, the public school capital fund, which you're about to pull probably at least a million, and if the roof comes in at two million, you know, you might be doing two million, you're going to pull money out of that to fix Sampson Middle School roof, I would imagine. I don't think the state's coming down... I don't think the state's coming down to help on Sampson Middle School roof. I think they're going to say that, that schools are your responsibility statutorily. The roof is leaking, you should fix your own roofs. So, so that, that million's coming out, so you'll drop from 4 million to some lower number. To put money back in that, I had a penny. So, every, every year, when school, all the school buildings, when they start going downhill, that penny is to just save money for school construction. And the other half penny was what Mark talked about, and that was a half penny just to save money for county building construction. So, you will continue to have county building needs, like, like the courthouse, but a half a penny is not going to fix the courthouse. A half penny is just going to be putting money in aside for county buildings. Now, you do have $6 million in your county building capital reserve. So, you know, is it necessary for you to do a penny and a half because you've got to have it this year? No. Will you have to have it? Yes. You, you will have to have it, but could the Board say, "Well, we can do four and a half cent now and wait on that other penny and a half"? You could do that, or you could also just say, "Well, we're not going to save any more money for county buildings, and we're not going to save any more money for schools, and when something breaks, we're just going to hit fund balance, no matter what it is." So, you, you can do that. And, and since you have drawn the, through this budget, you've drawn the recurring revenues really close to recurring expenditures. If you hold the line, then, then you're, you're more likely to be able, at the end of the year, to have a slightly stronger fund balance. Right now, we started the day with the auditor. From the audit, from one page in the audit, your fund balance right now is about 21 million dollars. Okay? So, it, this is not ironically, it's not in the book he gave you. The book he gave you was available fund balance. Available fund balance is kind of a misnomer.
Cash flow.
Yeah. It's not, you don't have all your available fund balance available to you. You have the un- un-.
Unassigned.
Unassigned. Yeah. Undesignated, unassigned fund balance. So, you've got 21 million. If we save half of what, of what the county budgeted out of fund balance this year, then you'll have another five, five, six. We hope five. So, instead of 21, you'll be at 26. So, at 26 million, can you stand a hit of 4 million dollars when they get hob-? That, that's what the other one was, Hobden High School. Yeah, 4 million for Hobden High School. That's right, eight, well, they say 8 million, but 4 million's supposed to be athletic facilities, so y'all can have that argument. But, Hobden, Hobden High School was 4 million. Could you stand a hit for 4 million to meet the 60 million match? You could. You, you could at 26 million, you can do that. Now, you're also planning on taking 1.3 right now out of that 26 million. So, you start with 26 million on July 1, or June 30, maybe, at the end of this year. July 1, you'll immediately appropriate to balance this budget of at least 1.3, or 1.35, or whatever it is you settle on. And so, so then it'll go from 26 to, to 25. If something comes up, that's, that is where you got to go to it. If, if you have a hurricane, you don't have 10 or 20 million dollars sitting in a separate emergency or disaster fund, so you're going to go back to your fund, your fund balance. So, you, you can, I'm saying, you can go to 4.5, maintain the community college, meet your obligation to education, get two ambulances, 13 patrol cars, but you're not putting money aside for future capital, and you can do that and take it out of fund balance until you don't have it left in fund balance, in which case, you'll have to do something else. Now, you have a revaluation coming up in three years. So, at your revaluation in three years, could you get by without doing this for three years? Yes. Could you get by without doing this for seven years? I don't know. But if at your next revaluation cycle, whoever the Board is, if, if they, if they will, before they decide on a tax rate, if they will look ahead and see what's coming and what has to be done, set the tax rate based on that versus an automatic go-to-revenue-neutral. There's nothing in state law that says you have to go to revenue-neutral. I believe that it's right for you to reduce the tax rate if you've had an increase in values, but whether it's a revaluer or not, I would say you've got to look ahead at what the next thing is that you're going to be faced with, with funding, without, without going into your savings so bad.
You know, one of the things that you, in one of your emails, it said that you anticipated that the amount spent of the appropriated fund balance would only be about half of the appropriation. So, if we're only spending 5 million of the 11 and a half, or 6 million of the 11 and a half that is appropriated, that would indicate that the county actually is not spending 85 million dollars this year, it's only going to spend 79 million. This budget that you've done, you've said is tighter, so we're likely to spend the 82 million. So, that would, in a way, kind of indicate that we're actually having a budget increase because you're going from spending 79 million to 82 million. Does that make sense?
Well, 2 million, over 2 million of that was capital budget, capital expenditure, so. So, your recurring revenues is a 79 million dollar budget.
Yeah.
It was 79.9.
Yeah, well, that's true.
But the, the cuts are real. I think that, but you're right. If you, if you previously had under-reported your revenues, and you're over-report or make-fluffy, your, that's a technical term, by the way. If you make-fluffy your expenditure levels, and you, you take in more than you say you're going to get, and don't spend what you're going to get, that's how, at the end of the year, you don't use the fund balance that you had budgeted. So, I do think that you are much tighter, much, much tighter on your revenues, and your expenditures, the only place that I see you not doing these expenditures is if you have vacancies in employment, so you have lapped salary because you just weren't able to hire somebody. And then, then that's where you will regain some of that 1.3 million dollars in lapped salary. It's more, really, I, I view the 1.3 now as, a portion of that is nothing but cash flow.
Cash flow.
You have to budget it for all the positions, but then when someone isn't hired, or, or if there's a vacancy, you didn't actually spend it, but I budget, I budget your, your salaries at 100%. And I think I may have mentioned this, other managers sometimes budget at 95% because they're counting on vacancies, but I never felt comfortable enough to budget 95% because in my mind, you know, people, what if everyone, if you budget 95%, I would hate to be the manager that comes back and said, "Well, I need more money mid-year." Why? Because I didn't budget enough salary money. Well, you know how many positions there are, why didn't you budget enough salary money? So.
Can you, can you explain a little further about the difference between appropriated or unappropriated and available, because the auditor, they said you have 41 million dollars cash on hand, so it makes it sound like there's 41 million dollars sitting in the tourist bank.
That is, that's cash flow as well. That is what you have available for times in between where you're levying your taxes to operate on. That's your cash fund. It's not, I mean, it is cash that's available. Yes, you could spend it.
But a lot of it is assigned to go somewhere as we move forward into the.
If you're talking about fund balance, yes.
Yeah. The, the sheet out of his audit, which, which he didn't book for this, but it's, it's not in, in that audit. It's out of his actual audit book. Unassigned fund balance is 21,586,508, page 26. So, not, not of the budget book. We probably need, we need Commissioners to have, have that, too.
I have a question. As long as the tax money for this year that has not been paid, where will that money go? Have we budgeted for that? So, when it comes in, will it be part of this, this budget now? A lot of people have not paid their taxes.
You're talking about the taxes for fiscal year '25. Well, I, I guess we're booking them back. The fiscal year '25 taxes stay with 25. They were budgeted, so they would be, the county would take them, but they don't add to the amount of taxes you expect to collect for the next year.
They're this year's taxes, so they wouldn't go with this year's money?
Once the year is over, no. Once the fiscal year ends, once the fiscal year ends, whatever is left outstanding in taxes, if they are paid eventually next year, it would go to the next year. It's prior year taxes. And we, we do budget some of those. There isn't, there isn't an amount in the budget. I think it's maybe 800 and some thousand dollars.
So, we do take the money. We don't, we don't not take the money.
I would say that, so, I mean, we got, a lot of people have not paid their taxes for '25. There was about four sheets in the paper of people that had not paid. So, that should be a lot of money.
But your collection rate is still about the same. You're still averaging about 97.4, 5, 6, in terms of your collection rate. So, it's no different than what they've done in past years, although I did see from this morning that a couple of years ago, you did collect just a smidge more. You were about 97.8. But, so every year, yeah, that, that money still comes in, and it's, it's counted toward our revenues.
Jim said on May the 5th, he sends every month towards the end of the year, the tax collections, and we're at 96.36% for this year, like, so far.
For, I mean, Hornet County, I get identified for news, about nine or 10 pages, and I think they're listed 90% right at this time. So, we're above some people we're touching, but we're not bad, we're not bad on that. People just kind of do a very good job of making sure their taxes are paid and doing anything.
So, Commissioners, what, what we'll need, when, whenever you get through talking to everybody, we're going to need some guidance. Melissa and I will need guidance to produce a budget ordinance for you. So, the specific guidance is, 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 I'm not saying it's small stuff, but it is kind of small stuff, and like, 1,500 for travel in Veteran Services, that, you know, that's not a, that's not hundreds of thousands of dollars. But, but kind of the big questions are, where do you want to be on the tax rate? Where do you want to be on the services that you're being contacted about the most? Do we have, and you'll hear from a lot more tomorrow, remember, we've got a whole nother day for sure, and then you've got the school system on Friday. So, I, I believe that the best time would be on Friday, after you've heard about, heard all this stuff from everybody and had a chance to ask questions, is we, we're going to have to have guidance because we've got to, on Monday, produce a budget ordinance for you and true up the numbers, so that, so that if, if the Board elects to take action on Monday night, you have a budget ordinance that you can take action on, and if you elect not to, then we can simply recess Monday night's meeting to another time and, and play certain, and you can continue workshops. But, but the big questions are, you know, what, what are you getting contacted on? Do you want to make any changes with those things? And where do you want fund balance to be, and where do you want the tax rate to be as a Board? Because we're, we are not presenting you a budget ordinance that's from Melissa and myself. The budget ordinance is the ordinance that you want, it's the one you want, and that includes the fee schedule as well, the fee schedule that you want, because when you approve the budget ordinance, you're also approving a fee schedule. So, that, happy to answer all questions to the Board and defer the harder ones to Ray. That's our recap for the day. Please do not adjourn the meeting if, if the Board, if the Board likes, we're here just as long as you want us to be here. Otherwise, if, if you decide to recess, if you could recess to 9:00 AM tomorrow in this room, that would, that would be just right.
Recess to reconvene at 9:00 AM tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
I make the motion at recess to reconvene in this room tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM.
I have a motion in a second. I'm favorable.
Thank you.
We are recessed.